And welcome to the ordinary meeting of council. It's Monday the twenty fourth of March, twenty twenty five and it's now six thirty P M. I will start with an acknowledgement of country. Lithgow City Council acknowledges Weidry elders past and present of the Weidry nation, the original custodians of the land on which Lithgow communities reside. The council also extends our respects to our neighbouring nations. Declaration of webcasting. I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting is being webcast and that those in attendance should refrain from making any defamatory statements concerning any person, councillor or employee and refrain from discussing those matters subject to closed council proceeding as indicated in clause fourteen point one of the code of meeting practice. I note that all councillors are present. Is there any declarations of interest?
Um yes, um I've got a non significant pecuniary interest in item five point two, uh committee memberships. Um as president of the Lithgow District Chamber of Commerce, there is a um a member has been identified as one of the people that have been put onto one of the committees, but I'll be staying in the room.
Great, thank you. Is there any further? No, we'll move on. I have two minutes that, seven minutes that need to be confirmed. Like, so I need someone to move the confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held the twentieth of February twenty twenty five. Can I have that?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Councillor Ring? Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Is there any opposition? No, that's carried. And I need another set of minutes to be moved and confirmed. I have the confirmation of the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of council held the fifth of March twenty twenty five. Councillor Fredericks is moving them. Councillor Statham is seconding that. Is there any opposition to those? Then they're carried. Commemorations and announcements. On behalf of Lithgow City Council, the mayor, the mayor expressed sincere sympathy and condolences to the families who have loved, lost loved ones since the last council meeting. We're now up to public forum.
Ma- mayor, if I may, um I just wanted to um uh pass on my thanks from uh to the council senior staff and I think Ellie Sholton and I think Deborah McGrath might have had a hand in it. Uh they've released the cost of living hub on the council website today, absolutely magnificent. Um the fact that it was all done and put together in less than two months, uh if the general manager and yourself could pass on it, my congratulations and that of the community as well because it, the setup and everything was just fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tysus. That's appreciated, yes.
Ma- Mayor Coleman, before we move on to public gallery and speakers, could I move a procedural motion at this point?
Sure.
Uh could we move item five point one for uh to the committee meetings and deal with it as item six point four? It is effectively minutes from the emerging economy meetings and that's where it should be dealt with.
Sure. Is anybody opposed to that? No? Has anybody got any further items they'd like to move, councillor Tysus? I can see your finger.
I'll have a, after the public gallery speaks, I'll be having a procedural motion to list an order of uh to bring items forward for the benefit of the public gallery since it will probably be a long night. I think we've got over nine speakers, which is probably a record. Um so I'll just be moving, foreshadowing a procedural motion to bring forward uh what I believe are the six most um main uh speakers are from tonight.
Sure. Do you want to move it now?
Uh yeah, I can if I can.
Yeah, let's do it now.
Uh just to give the, the audience a heads up, uh number one will be three point one, the golf club. In the next order will be five point seven, the D A shed for Caroline Avenue. There's a speaker for that in the golf club. Number three will be five point nine, the events committee. I understand the ladies from the Wang Lidsale Progress Association here. Uh and standing up, I might add. Uh four, uh number four will be the recission motion at four point one. Number five will be two point eight, which is the wind farm. And number six uh will be five point eight, which is the energy to waste. They're the ones that I'm aware of at the moment in regards to the speakers. So I'll just foreshadow that if I, or move that if.
Just move it, councillor.
I'll second that.
It's a procedural motion, so we'll move that. If there's no opposition, that's carried. Thank you. That's done. All right, so now we'll move on to public forum. And the first person I have on my list is a Tex Stephens. If you'd like to please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor councillors. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Tex Stephens. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners of this land and pay respects to elders past and present. I live in Dark Corner. These are my views and the views of other residences impacted by the scarlet location of this development. Sunny Corner State Forest is crown land, public land owned by the people of New South Wales and set aside for forestry and recreational use and for conservation. This state forest is situated in a subalpine region with an average elevation of a thousand and sixty metres. Less than one percent of Australia's landmass is above a thousand metres. Our concerns follow bushfire risk. The Lithgow Bushfire Management Committee currently rates the bushfire risk in state forests as extreme. The likelihood of a fire is rated almost certain. Windfall, the wind farm will increase this risk. The towers are three hundred metres high and aligned in clusters. There are restricted aerial firefighting capacity and if the turbines catch fire, most likely in windy conditions, they cannot be extinguished. There is no recovery plan. The council will need to consider its position in the event of a catastrophic fire to turbines and/or the battery. The proximity of the turbines to residences and adjoining parklands will put all our lives at greater risk. This wind farm should be stopped. Biodiversity. The scope of biodiversity research is too narrow, the timeframe ridiculously short given the thirty five years planned for operation. The Windburn Dale Nature Reserve, set up in nineteen sixty seven as a protection area for fauna, adjoins the project area on the Bathurst side. It is a unique, pristine, subalpine area with diverse flora and fauna and a number of listed vulnerable and endangered species. There are twenty two turbines running from the north to the south along that border which will wipe out and kill birds and bats. Wind tower pollution and changes to microclimates will affect many more species. There is also another overlooked fauna protection district proclaimed in the nineteen sixties in the state forest near Dark Corner Creek, which requires review. Placing turbines in or near fauna protection districts is an environmental disaster. Flora will be also lost in construction activities. It is important to remember that all native animals are protected in New South Wales and should be protected for future generations. This wind farm needs to be stopped to protect our flora and fauna. Health. The National Health and Medical Research Council, a federal agency, is concerned with the health effects of wind farms, particularly for those living within fifteen hundred metres of a wind farm. Some of the turbines, turbines proposed are as close as seven hundred metres to residences and their health risks are greatly increased. Clearly evident, but not well documented, are mental health issues that arise from wind farms. Stress and anxiety and anxiety being the most prominent due to enforced change to rural lifestyle, community division, increased insurance cross costs, devaluation of properties and concern for future generations. The wind farm needs to be stopped to protect our community's health and wellbeing. Telecommunication. It has just come to my attention from a some EVA rep that our telecommunications are likely to be disrupted. I've done some research which shows that wind turbines can affect all types of communication.
Tex, can I just ask you to wait for two seconds because there's an information, there's something here that's happening and I can't give you my full attention while this is happening, so. Sorry, but I thought it was important that you had my full attention and that was happening behind me, so I apologise.
That's okay.
So we'll go back. You're moving an extentment, so yeah. So it's just about to happen. So do you want to do it councillor Tysus? So move an extension councillor Tysus, councillor Frederick second that. Is there any opposition? I'll consider that carried. Continue, please, sir.
I've done some research that shows that wind turbines can affect all types of communication such as radio, mobiles and T V. The wind farm needs to be stopped to ensure our rural communities stay connected and safe. Wind, wind turbine impacts, the visual impact quite simply is eighty Sydney Towers. Two hundred and eighty five metres high in clusters near residences and planned along existing transmission lines to access lower costs at the expense of our community. Within the sunny corner state forest, there will be extended periods of turbines in full view following harvest, for example. That will scar the rural landscape. This will significantly impact locals, visitors and tourists to this area. The wind farm needs to be stopped. Noise pollution from wind turbines is significant and four hundred and fifty eight residences are calculated to be impacted before applying mitigating strategies. In reality, there are probably more than this number. The noise pollution will be always evident twenty four seven and increase with wind speed. The level of concern throughout the community is very high and mitigating strategies are often not possible. Local visitors and tourists will not want to visit a recreational area that is noisy. This wind farm needs to be stopped. Light. This area has a night sky but eighty wind towers and a met mast with red lights at an elevation higher than Dark Corner Mountain may stop us seeing our night sky. We need to protect our night sky vantage points for locals, visitors and tourists. The wind farm needs to be stopped. Groundwater and springs. Many turbines will be erected over known underground water reserves. All footings are reinforced concrete cylinders, sixteen metres in diameter, eight metres deep. This is a two storey house going under the ground. There would be ground vibration and associated noise which can be felt as turbines rotate and sway and spin. This will cause groundwater stories weaknesses and add to personal stress mentioned earlier. It is expected that these cylinders will remain in situ at the end of the wind farm's life. Groundwater in subalpine regions is critical to maintain the health and environment of the environment, especially during drought. The streams in this region are headwaters and groundwater keeps them flowing. The wind farm needs to be stopped to preserve precious water resources. Soil and rivers. The blades that subject to leading edge weather erosion and fine particles will get into surrounding soil profiles and waterways. These particles may include B P A chemicals known to be toxic. The Windburn, the Windburn Dale Dam in the Windburn Dale Nature Reserve has ten turbines.
I'm sorry, I have, I have to ask you to wind up, please.
Okay. And that may affect catchment rivers, water quality. There is no decommissioning plan at the moment. Uh materials used are known to be unrecyclable and in reality, few jobs will be allocated to locals. Finally, we are, we as a united community need to act quickly to stop this wind farm. We need your council support to stop this wind farm. Our community understand that we're custodians of the land. We preserve it, we improve it. We have a love for country and we want to keep the rural landscape for future generations. The sunny, the sunny corner state forest is public land and we need to preserve the recreational areas for future generations so that they can connect with the nature and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, the next speaker is Samantha Boden, is that right? Well, no, sorry. Would you like to come forward?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Goodne- good evening, everybody. I'm Sam Bodnar. I'm a representative from the Warrarang Lidsale Progress Association. As the fireworks did not go ahead last year due to financial pressure, we are here tonight to seek monetary and in-kind assistance from Lithgow Council. Now we have a detailed, a detailed five year business and action plan which we aim to follow to revive the New Year's Eve community fireworks as an event that is open to all L G A people and beyond. Our plan is to raise thirty thousand dollars from community by fundraising, parking on the day, donations and sponsorship. We have listened to council and community feedback about alternate options. For example, a colour run on the day, colouring in competitions, create poster, crazy sock days, gold coin donations to get the schools involved. Um to get the shops involved, we could have decorating of their shop windows um to raise community awareness. So the breakdown of the fireworks. So the fireworks themselves are sixteen and a half thousand dollars. S E S is a thousand dollars, medics is a thousand dollars. Security on the night is one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Royal Fire Service is six hundred dollars. Toilets, the purchase of toilets from Portland is one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Lights is five hundred dollars, music is two thousand, insurance can be up to fifteen hundred. Council fee is seven hundred dollars. Promotion of the event is a thousand dollars. The, uh we have a contingency of three thousand dollars and that's excluding rides on the day. That's open to debate. So the total we foresee is thirty one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. We also plan to have stalls which we will raise the price from fifteen dollars to thirty dollars per stall holder. We're hoping to have at least thirty stalls to forty stalls. Um and that's it. So we're hopeful that the New Year's Eve Community Fireworks event will bring many travellers to our community and help promote tourism within our community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matilda Morgan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matilda Morgan and I'm so excited to be here today to introduce something truly special, the Young Mayor Programme. I spoke at council last year to encourage this programme and it's time to see the programme commence. I'm currently in year eleven at Lithgow High School and I'm representing all young people in our community, all students from Lithgow High, Portland Central and LaSalle Academy. I'm hoping that our council and all three principals can come together to make this programme a reality. This programme is designed to give students like me a real voice in our community. Not just, it's not just about leadership, it's about learning how to listen, solve problems and create real change. Throughout this programme, students will have a chance to select, to be selected by their school and work alongside our councillors to bring fresh ideas to, to give our fresh ideas alive and a chance for them to understand what our council does for our community. This will help us decide on who we want our community leaders to be. We are the next generation of leaders, the, the ones that will shape our fu- the future of Lithgow. And with, and with this, with programmes like this, we are taking the first steps towards the future. What's even more exciting, this experience is more than just a school initiative. It prepares us for real world leadership. And once we turn eighteen, we have to vote for our council and even be eligible to run in our council. This means the voices we develop here can one day shape our entire community. This trial of Young Mayor Programme is our chance to show that young people care that we have idea to show that we have ideas worth listening to and that we are ready to step up and I encourage you to get involved together. We can really make a difference in our community. Why is Young, the Young Mayor Programme important to me? Well, I'm, as I'm getting closer to finishing high school and start looking at my career options, it's becoming more and more obvious that many young people will have to leave our area to pursue their careers. It's disappointing to see our neighbouring communities like Bathurst and Mudgee rapidly growing and expanding while Lithgow remains dormant. Lithgow is only two hours away from Sydney. It doesn't make sense to me why we are not developing at the same rate as our neighbours. The voice of the younger people in our community should be important to you as if there is no real change, our voices may not be here in the future. Common sense tells you that the more young people that leave our, leave, the slower Lithgow will grow and develop. If you don't understand something, you need to ask questions. If you don't like something, you need to make real changes. You need to get involved. Thank you and I can't wait to see what we can achieve.
Thanks, Morgan. The next speaker is Philip Peace. And there's something. Is there a phone on or something somewhere?
No, it was just audience. Righto, go. I wish to thank the mayor and councillors for giving me the opportunity to put my site forward. I would also like to thank everybody that attended the site meeting at our house, including all my neighbours. Um two comments have come up regarding the application consideration um that each have to be merit based. And the second one has been that they don't want my shed to be create a um a precedent. As far as the precedent goes, um as you're aware, throughout our community, there's some large sheds on a lot smaller blocks than mine. All right, um quite often those sheds are set on or just behind the building line, not like ours. Quite often those sheds are set on a high block, making those sheds look very imposing. And when you look at them, they've not softened at all. Examples of these in the newer states are relatively new builds as well because I've not spoken to them personally and asked them. I'm not wanting anything more than not, that's already not out there already. In the report, our proposal was referred, was referred to as a commercial scale building. How did many of the recent builds on the smaller blocks go through with the sizes that they've got? Because I'm not nothing more. I feel our proposal is not setting a precedent because that's already been done time and time and time again. On merit, our block is in the gully on a left hand turn bend behind a busy bus stop. Buses co-past it all the time. You pass our house before you notice it unless you're looking for it. You drive down the street. If you look to the left, you'll see our rooftop, not the house, until you're in front of it. And again, the people that could be classed as affected are all behind this proposal. Our shed is set well back from the building line, unlike the existing small shed and many of the other large sheds in our area. A large tree is set behind the shed which covers the rear of that shed. Many shrubs, trees and gardens, including two trees, are placed either side of the, the roller door to soften the front appearance. Also, I have hedging all the way along the sixty five metre frontage of our property. So when they're developed, it takes the eye off the house and the shed. Unlike any other approved shed already that I've seen. All my neighbours are behind this proposal as is evident by the.
If Mr Pearce, if I could ask you to wind up, please, sorry then. One more minute? Okay, so councillor Tysus has moved a minute, councillor Statham has seconded that. If there's no opposition, that's carried. We've got, you've got a minute, sir.
Okay, the need for the shed was not only to store the R V but all my possessions and my cars and my hobbies. All right, but this process has drawn it out too far. The cars and everything need restoring again. I can't see myself ever using the R V, so it was sold today. All right, to a bloke who wanted it right from the start, as soon as I finished it anyway. But I also still have a six metre long boat, which is three point five metres tall. I have a, a lot of old cars and antiques. I have two car lifts that are there for the store. They are four metres high themselves. I, I've already got these, right, from when I moved up here. I have a collection of tools, machinery and vintage parts, old and new. I have automotive memorabilia that needs to be stored. I have a number of restored and unrestored furniture items as well. The emphasis on, is, was placed largely on our easement, not mentioning that I've got a forty tonne house sitting on top of it already, which has very little effect to it, all right? But, and I've been told that that's not concrete encased and I can understand that being a plumber because of its construction. So this forty tonne house is not crushing it. But the fact is, we don't need it anymore. Buses, gone.
Thank you, Mr Pearce.
Okay.
Thank you. Cheryl Moore-Mill?
As the owner of the adjoining property of one A Caroline Avenue, I would like to stipulate that I have no objections to the proposed shed being built. Thank you.
Thank you. Connor James Edwards?
Evening, everybody, councillors. Um, I live on Reed Street, oh, sorry, Reed Avenue. Um, I had a conversation with Matt today, um, about some sewerage issues that, uh, I've been having since I moved down here in twenty twenty three. Um, now, I'm on a common line, um, my common line is, um, split between six people. Now, the com- the, the actual line, uh, that goes from my place and everyone else's to the actual sewerage, um, line, i- is on my property. Now, um, everyone else feeds into me now during summer, let's say. Um, I'll have to call council three, about three times over summer, um, because it gets blocked. Now, the issue is, you guys changed the policy twenty twenty one, I believe, no, twenty twenty three. Um, that legislation changed, you guys changed the policy. Now, that means whoever the, um, owner of that common line is or whoever's property the common line is on and where it feeds to the main, um, is that owner has to pay the bill for the plumber, because council won't come and deal with it anymore. They won't come, um, jet the line, to clear the line anymore. Now, my issue is, um, who gets to foot the bill? Um, the plumber, um, who I talked to Friday, um, the real estate agent called me, um, or didn't call me, called the plumber, he knocked on my door. Um, he is confused as to where to send the bill. The, there's six houses on this, on this common line. You've got one to the, one, one side of me, concrete backyard and a shed. Um, the rest of them, mostly concrete backyards and sheds, they're all renters and some of them can't afford to get disconnected by themselves. Now, I guess I need to put, um, to council and to figure something out here. Um, what's the, what, what's the solution? Um, we need to get something in place, because it's not really working. Like, none of us have the money to call a plumber every, wh- whenever it happens, um.
Mister Edwards, would you like this, have you made contact with the staff? Yes, and have you made contact with the councillor?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so I'm assuming that that councillor will be bringing something forward?
It has been raised, I have raised through Eric. Um, and nothing, I was here the last time it was raised, um, but nothing has been raised since.
Alright, so if you're happy to allow councillor Martin to take carriage at this stage and he may be bringing something forward, I'm assuming, um, later in the meeting, are you happy with that? And, and you're happy for the staff? Because I understand that the staff have been assisting as well, is that correct?
Yes, I, 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 I guess I just thought of, that, I guess I thought of it as if I come before you guys and try and push the issue a bit more, because it's a, who, who's the plumber send the bill to? If there's six houses and he gets called to a rental and I have to foot the bill?
Yep.
That's not, that's not the acceptable part and not a position that anyone wants to be put in.
Yeah, I completely empathise. I think if, thank you for that, because I will leave it in the capable hands of councillor Martin. I'm assuming he's going to bring something forward and we'll go from there. Thank you. Mister Chris Neville?
Evening, Mayor, councillors, Chris Neville. Um, come here tonight to discuss obviously matters of the golf club. Um, as the thirty plus year member of the club and a, um, business owner in golf course management. Um, I'm seeking, you know, a meeting with, uh, with you guys privately at some point to discuss the ongoing leasing arrangements. Um, I.
You're welcome to meet with any councillor or myself at any time you like.
Yep.
So is that what you're inquiring about?
Um, well, ultimately, I'd like to meet with everyone and put forward a proposal that I believe is in, uh, a community's best interest.
Sure, I mean, you can make an appointment with, with, with the office and we can sort that out if that's what you want to do.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll just offer that.
Yep, um, you know, ul- ultimately, although it's, um, my own company, I have lack of vested interest in, like, growing up here. Um, to be perfectly honest, if I didn't, I probably wouldn't be so, um, invested in it. Um, the facility itself has so much going for it. And I think ultimately, um, the pressures that have been placed on it um, by the release of some financial numbers, um, can be improved and we can end up with a product that actually encourages more community engagement, um, more out of town visitors. Um, we actually have, if anyone noticed, but the main highway goes past the front gate um, to the central west, it seems to be pretty well facilitated in other regional areas. So, um, I, I guess, you know, I, I think we're sort of lacking at seeing what that facility actually offers this town, offers the people this town, offers a member of this, of this community, um.
Well, we're happy to arrange a meeting if that's what your desire.
Yeah, ul- ultimately, you know, I'm happy to put forward a business plan.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great if you could do that, um. So, yeah, I think you need to come forward, make an appointment and we'll go from there.
I will, I will mention though, Mayor, that I have been trying to, um, deal with this process for the last ten years.
Wow, that's interesting.
I've, I've had meetings with people in this room previously, um, to go nowhere.
Well, you can meet with myself, you can meet with any councillor in here, it's up to you.
Yep.
The doors open and the opti- the option's there.
And I'd like to thank, uh, councillor Tyseas for raising, um, the matters around the club, the mismanagement of, of what I see, the mismanagement of funds.
Thank you, miss, we'll leave it there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anne Thompson?
Good evening, Mayor, General Manager, Councillors and Directors.
Hang on, Anne, that, we can't quite hear you, can we please fix Anne's microphone? Oh, she'll do it herself.
Usually, everybody can hear me. Okay, Mayor, General Manager, Directors, Councillors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be short, to the point. I would like to firstly commend the new council for passing a resolution late last year opposing the establishment of any waste to energy facility within our local government area. However, it is evident that the resolution did not convey a strong enough message to the men's government, Minister Sharp or the E P A. This evening, I urge Lithgow Council to uphold its firm opposition to waste, to, for waste to energy incinerator within the region, explicitly encompassing gasification and pyrolysis technologies, both of which have demonstrated failures in multiple locations worldwide. Additionally, I respectfully request that the council submit, a formal submission to the government reaffirming its unequivocal opposition to any such pers- proposal. As elected representatives of this community, it is imperative that you advocate on behalf of the residents, making it clear that no form of cohesion or incentives will alter this stance. Finally, I call on council to convene a public meeting to invite the relevant New South Wales government departments to attend. This would provide the community with a platform to formally express its strong opposition and ensure concerns are acknowledged. Additionally, it would serve to demonstrate once and for all to both proponents and any residents who support this proposal that the majority of the community stands firmly against any form of waste to energy. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Sam Faraway?
Uh, well, thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, councillors, uh, for the opportunity, uh, to address you here tonight. For those in the public gallery, Sam Faraway, the Nationals candidate for the upcoming federal election. I'm here to speak to councillors, uh, tonight regarding item four point one and in particular, uh, item one of that recommendation. Over the past few, uh, weeks, um, in a lot of community engagement that you do as councillors, but I'm also doing as a federal candidate for the upcoming election, it is clearly evident that, uh, in that engagement, there is huge disappointment at the situation that Lithgow City Council has found itself in with regard to, uh, the former, well, the, the current, uh, federal government's grant being removed, um, or rescinded. Now, what I would, uh, say is that it is unfortunate council have found themselves in this position and it is quite unfortunate that we've had a federal government, uh, that couldn't find a solution with this council to extend that grant rather than taking it back. And I would hope that inquiries are being made internally within council, uh, to look at its processes with federal grants into the future. The reality is, you have an election, a federal election, eight weeks away. And, uh, as per the motion, I would also note that I'm the only federal candidate that has turned up here tonight in person to address this council at the request of this, uh, motion four point one. Um, and the reality is, this council needs to find solutions. Uh, it's not my role to lobby councillors about whether you wish to take a loan out or not, I'll leave that with you. Uh, it's not my role, it's inappropriate, but it is my role to turn up tonight and to advocate for Lithgow as a candidate for the National Party for the upcoming federal election. So it is with pleasure that I announce today that the New South Wales Nationals in coalition, if there was a change of government, uh, will deliver two point one million dollars to the Lithgow community for the reinstatement of that grant that was taken by the current Labor government and K P I is obviously not met by this council. Now, this is important because the community have raised with me, and I'm sure they've raised the concern, that they need action on those pavers, they are slippery, they are dangerous, we need action as a community, uh, to address that, but at what cost? Should the ratepayers, should the ratepayers of Lithgow have to face a six hundred thousand dollar interest bill on a loan this council needs to take because a solution wasn't found? I want to be part of the solution and tonight I've taken the leap to be able to put two point one million dollars on the table. My suggestion to councillors, and it is only a suggestion, and to the mayor, is that let's start the conversation with all the candidates. And in particular, now that this commitment is on the table from the opposition, the conversation should be had with federal Labor Party, with the current federal government to match it. Because the winner out of this doesn't need to be candidates or politicians, the winner needs to be Lithgow.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Just on that note, I did actually receive a letter from the current federal member, Entergy, matching the same promise. Thank you very much, I'd just like to mention that. So that was very generous of you. But before we go any further, is there any further other speakers on the agenda tonight? And, uh, Mister Edgeman wanted to speak just before Mister Leslie, before you come forward. Um, John, sorry, Mister Edgeman?
So I'd just like to read out a, a submission made by Miss Dale Phillips, uh, with respect to, um, the item number. Uh, it was five point one two. Uh, the transfer of Southern Crown Road to council for access to thirty five Honeysuckle Rawls Falls Road, Tarranar. Uh, the remedy sought is the transfer of Southern Crown Road to Lithgow Council. Lithgow City Council would seek funding from the Minister of Crown lands to develop the road to the requisite minimum standard.
They're actually in the room, so.
Yep.
Do you want to come, do you want to come forward or?
So, um, I was asked to read this out on their behalf?
Yep, that's fine.
Yep, uh, so legal issues. In nineteen ninety, building approval was provided by council based on two access points, both a southern and a northern crown road. The northern being the primary access. In two thousand and seven, Miss Phillips purchased the property with two legal access points being the northern and southern roads. In two thousand and eight, obstructions were placed on the northern road rendering it, uh, inaccessible. Miss Phillips contacted Crown lands, raising this concern, seeking the obstructions be removed. In two thousand and fourteen, a representative of Crown lands attended her property, however refused to inspect the road, Northern Crown Road, and hence issued an infringement notice. In the years that followed, Miss Phillips would continue to contact the Crown lands department, however her enquiries would not be actioned. In twenty twenty, Miss Phillips was advised by the Crown lands department that the Northern Crown Road had been sold in twenty seventeen. Despite Miss Phillips being an affected party with standing, she was not notified at the proposal to close the Northern Crown Road. Miss Phillips lodged a request under the GIPA Act and the documents obtained from this request verify Miss Phillips was not notified or consulted about the proposed closure. Throughout twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, Miss Phillips has been in constant contact with the Department of Crown lands, seeking remedy to this situation. Miss Phillips sought approval to conduct works on the Southern Crown Road in order to access her property. The Department of Crown lands representative advised approval would not be provided for the works to be undertaken to make the Southern Crown Road accessible and it does not fall within minor works. As a result, Miss Phillips has no access to her property, hence is landlocked. Throughout this time, Miss Phillips attended the Lithgow Council requesting an appointment to speak with the relevant persons to resolve the issue. On every occasion, her request was denied and was advised to speak with Crown lands. In twenty twenty three, Miss Phillips wrote to the minister who advised her this is a matter for Lithgow council, in particular, the transfer of the southern road to the council. In October twenty twenty four, Miss Phillips' legal representative wrote, wrote to the regional manager of Crown lands, who also advised they would not act on this matter, instead for Miss Phillips to negotiate illegal access with the adjoining landowners and again reaffirming the Crown lands department would not provide Miss Phillips with approval to conduct works on the Southern Crown Road. Upon receipt of this correspondence, Miss Phillips' legal representative wrote to the Minister of Crown lands advising of this situation and the remedies sought. The minister advised they would not take action as this was a matter for Lithgow City Council. On fifth of March twenty twenty five, Miss Phillips had a meeting with the mayor, Cassandra Coleman, and Mister Jonathan Edgeman, Director of Infrastructure. Mister Edgeman advised it would cost in the vicinity of two hundred and fifty thousand to develop the Southern Crown Road to a minimum standard. Through further discussions, Miss Coleman advised she would write to the minister and seek financial support for the transfer and development of this Southern Crown Road. Uh, second heading, emotional harm, harm suffered. Miss Phillips is an elderly woman and a full-time carer for her son Micah. Miss Phillips has poor health recently undergoing.
Hang on, Jonathan, I need to ask for an extension, so councillor Tyseas, councillor Statham, is no opposition that's carried continually?
Miss Phillips is an elderly woman and a full-time carer of her son Micah. Miss Phillips has poor health, recently undergoing an unsuccessful knee sur- replacement surgery. Miss Phillips' mobility is significantly restricted and she is in constant pain. The general practitioner and specialist have both advised, Miss Phillips requires the assistance of some help to assist with daily duties. However, given Miss Phillips has no access, these services are unable to be pro- provided. As a result, Miss Phillips has been denied the opportunity to access essential health, essential services. Miss Phillips' son, Micah, has significant health complications. These complications include being legally blind, the ongoing challenges associated with suffering two strokes in recent year, recent years and the rupture of stomach, stomach ulcers. Due to these ongoing complications, Micah often goes unconscious. On two occasions, Micah's been requi- has required an ambulance. However, on both occasions, the wait time for an ambulance has been in excess of three hours due to access issues to the property. This is deeply distressing for Miss Phillips as this has become a life or death situation and all she can do is wait, not knowing if the ambulance will arrive in time to provide her son with the essential medical treatment. The ambulance services have advised they are unable to access the property and for this access issue to be resolved immediately as it's a matter of urgency. The current situation is, Miss Phillips and her son are at times living in a caravan in a caravan park as their property remains landlocked and essential services are not able to access the property. Miss Phillips and her son have effectively been rendered homeless due to the actions on the minister and other governing bodies. When the area experiences rainfall, the property is completely inaccessible, therefore no access is available during the winter months. Third and final point, financial cost. The cost to construct the Southern Crown Road to access, to provide access should not be the responsibility of Miss Phillips. Miss Phillips is an elderly lady who is a full-time carer of her son. The financial cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is unreasonable, given this is not the result of Miss Phillips' actions but rather a failing of the minister and the other, other governing bodies who did not object to the proposed closure of the Northern Crown Road.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Is there any further speakers? Citizen Leslie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Coleman. I wish to speak to five point one, trial of Lithgow City Council merril ambassadors. I know it's fraught with danger for former councillors to speak about current matters, but I'll take the risk. Section two two six of the Local Government Act is this, the role of the mayor. There are fifteen points listed from A to O. I'll read out three. A, to be the leader of the council and leader of the community, local community. To be the principal member. C, to be the principal member and spokesperson of the governing body, including representing the views of council as to its local priorities. And L, to carry out the civic and ceremonial functions of the merril office. You, Madam Mayor, were no sooner elected as mayor of our city than a proposal was moved to undermine your role as leader of the council, designed to prevent you carrying out those very civic and ceremonial functions of the merril office. The original motion would have had you replaced by an unknown number of unknown unelected ambassadors. I have observed mayors of this city over many years, from Harold Coates, meeting the Queen. And yes, I was in Queen Elizabeth Park on that occasion, on my father's shoulders. But every one of the mayors, from then, since then, to yourself, has been gracious and dignified in their merril role. I would recommend that when this matter is debated by council later tonight, that the council carries a motion along the lines of, one, that the report be noted, and two, that no further action be taken on the implementation of merril ambassadors. Mayor, the concept of merril ambassadors is a joke and an insult to all mayors of Lithgow, past, present, and future, including mayors-elect.
Thank you, Mr Leslie. Any further speakers on any other agenda items?
G'day, my name's Brendan Wallace, and I live on Macmasay Road, Portland. I neighbour the Sunny Corner State Forest and propose Sunny Corner Wind Farm. After extensive research, I'm here tonight to express my objection and seek council support in rejecting this proposal in its current format. Firstly, these projects are proposed in completely the wrong location. And never before has a project of this scale proposed for such a densely populated area of New South Wales. The density ratio of twenty four persons per square kilometer, with other areas having a density ratio of less than one person per kilometer for these other wind farms. Does the council believe this proposal, the proposed location is appropriate, given the high density ratio and impact to residents? The scoping report has a false narrative and contains inaccuracy. I don't know if any of you read it, but I encourage you to do it. There are four thousand neighbours within eight kilometres of the project area that will be impacted. Portland has a population of two thousand four hundred and forty seven, as per the twenty twenty one census. Yet the Sumea's scoping document reports the population as one thousand eight hundred and forty, and states that Portland is located fifteen point five kilometres east of the project site. The nearest wind turbine is one point five eight kilometres from Ridge Street, Portland. This is a residential area, and is within the eighteen hundred metre setback zone. Based on figures provided in the project scaping report and conversations I've had with Portland residents, Sumea has not carried out sufficient community engagement about the development to inform the residents of potential impacts. I would argue that many residents do not understand the full impact and scale of this development due to the lack of information and consultation by the proponent. For example, I have a tower one thousand metres away and have not had one single contact with anyone from Sumea. The scaping report indicates that three hundred individuals have been engaged. Fifty of these in the Portland drop-in centre, excuse me, over six weeks. Fifty people over six weeks, seriously. So put that into the population, fifty out of two thousand four hundred and forty seven, or thirty out of four, three hundred out of four thousand neighbours. You can hardly say this is effective community engagement. There remains too many unanswered questions and unknowns to be able to support such a proposal. What is the greatest concern is the unknown health impacts of these wind towers, especially considering the proposed location and proximity to residential areas and homes. The latest advice from the National Health and Medical Research Council, NHMRC, information paper for evidence of wind farms and human health, it states, and I'm quoting, internationally, there is little research and evidence regarding the health effects of wind farms. The NHMRC noted that research into the health effects of wind farms was limited and of poor quality. Given the poor quality of evidence, there is a need for further high-quality research into the health effects of wind farms, particularly for people living within fifteen hundred metres. That's straight out of our federal report. That's a federal organisation. What will the effect be to me and my family, especially since the closest proposed wind tower is a thousand metres from my home, and I have four within fifteen hundred metres? I have six within two thousand metres. There are residents as close as seven hundred metres from a turbine. Sumea documentation states that the wind turbines would emit EMF.
I'm sorry, I need to.
An extension, thank you.
Councillor Statham, councillor Tassus, is there any opposition? No, that's carried, continue.
So, emit, and EMF, that will stimulate a household microwave when operation at a distance of eighteen hundred metres. Within my home, I might give my microwave an average of two minutes at a time, based on the above, ah, two minutes of time. Based on the above, I'll potentially have four microwaves running twenty four seven, with no research into long-term health effects. So I implore you to seriously consider the impacts and similar developments on our people and future of our community. I ask you to stand with the community and reject this proposal. Sumea has stated they're going to employ four hundred and seventy five people during construction. They might, they won't be locals. They're bringing in a concrete batch plant. You don't bring in a concrete batch plant without bringing in the labour to man it. So that's it, locals are out. You're not doing the concrete, you're not doing the steel, you're not doing any of that. You're going to bring in a tier one contractor. I know this because they've got a proposal that says that they want to employ, or sorry, they want to build accommodation. Where's the benefit for the community? There is none. But I implore you again, stick with the community, get with us. I'm happy to meet with any of you. I can give you the information. I've researched this heavily. But I implore you to stand with the community and reject this proposal. And I thank you for your time.
Any further speakers on any of the agenda items?
I did have a late submission from a candidate that they requested that I give to the public, if that is okay.
What, what is it?
It's in regards to four point one.
Did you want to bring it up? We'll get the staff to do it. Councillor Frederick?
If I can read it out, that would be great.
Sure.
Dear Councillor Fredericks, unfortunately, I won't be able to attend your council meeting this evening. I hope that you will be able to table and read the following statement in my absence. I, Jennifer Hughes.
All right, okay.
The One Nation candidate for Claire. In the twenty twenty five federal election, support and endorse Councillor Fredericks's proposal to regain or attain a new two million dollar federal grant to upgrade Lithgow CBD Main Street and to replace the pavers on the sidewalk that pose safety risks to pedestrians. Kind regards, Jen Hughes, One Nation.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Okay, thank you. The first item of business is actually a merril minute. One point one. The recommendation is that council support the national federal election funding priorities are gentrified by the Australian Local Government Association, supports and participates in the Put Our Communities First federal election campaign, rights to the local federal members of parliament, or known election candidates in local federal elections. And President of the Australian Local Government Association expressing support for Alga's federal election funding priorities. The next federal election must be held before seventeenth of May, twenty twenty five. Working in conjunction with a Member State and Territory Associations, the Australian Local Government Association has developed a framework that resources for national advocacy campaign, and that will run in the lead-up to this election. Based around the ten line of Put Our Communities First, the goal is to secure additional federal funding that will support every council to play a bigger role to bring local solutions to national priorities. All Australian councils have been asked to participate in this campaign to ensure a coordinated approach that will deliver the best possible outcomes. The Put Our Communities First campaign will advocate for new federal funding to distribute it to all councils on a formula base similar to the Commonwealth's Road to Recovery Programme, or the previous Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme. This will ensure that every council and community benefits and support local decision-making based on local needs. Alga has developed free campaign resources that can be adapted and used by all councils to ensure a consistent and effective approach. Participating in a national advocacy campaign does not preclude Lithgow council from advocating on additional local needs and issues, but it will strengthen the national campaign and support all five hundred and thirty seven Australian local governments. The five national funding priorities have been determined by the Alga Board and comprised of representatives from each of Australia's state and territory local government associations, aligned with key national priorities. These five funding priorities are: one point one billion per year for enabling infrastructure to unlock housing supply; five hundred million per year for community infrastructure; six hundred million per year for safer local roads; nine hundred million per year for increased local government emergency management capabilities and capacity; and four hundred million per year for climate change adaption. Further information on these priorities is listed below. Housing-enabled infrastructure. A lack of funding for enabled infrastructure, including roads and water and sewerage treatment, connections and facilities, is a significant barrier to increasing housing supply across the country. Research from Equity Economics found that forty percent of local governments have cut back on new infrastructure developments because of inadequate enabling infrastructure funding. This research all shows that achieving national housing accord housing targets would incur an additional five point seven billion funding shortfall on top of interest structure funding gaps and already being felt by councils and their communities. A five-year, one point one billion per annum programme would help, would fund the infrastructure that is essential to new housing developments and Australia reaching its housing targets. Alga's two thousand and twenty four National State of the Asset Report indicates that eight point three billion worth of local government buildings and two point nine billion worth of park and recreational abilities are in poor condition and need attention. Introduced in twenty twenty, the Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme supported all councils to build, maintain, and upgrade local facilities with three point two five billion allocated on a formula basis. This programme has a significant impact, driving almost one billion improvements in the condition of local government buildings and facilities. And a five hundred million per year replacement fund would support all councils to build, upgrade, and revitalise the community infrastructure all Australians rely on. Safer roads. Council manages more than seventy five Australian roads by length, and tragically, more than half of the fatal roads, crashes in Australia occurred on these roads. In twenty twenty three, the Australian Government announced that it would double roads to recovery funding over forward estimates, providing councils with an additional five hundred million per year. However, recent independent research by the Grattan Institute highlights a one billion local government road maintenance funding shortfall, meaning there's still significant funding gap. Providing local government with six hundred million per year to road safety programmes and infrastructure upgrades would support all councils to play a more effective role addressing Australia's unacceptable road toll. Climate adaption. Local governments are at the forefront of grappling with climate impacts of both asset managers and land users' decision-makers. However, funding and support from other levels of government have failed to keep pace, placing an inactible burden on councils and communities to fund this work locally. A four hundred million per year local government climate adaption fund would enable all councils to implement place-based approaches to adaption, delivering local solutions to this national challenge. Emergency management. Fire, floods, and cyclones currently cost Australia thirty eight billion per year, and this is predicted to rise to seventy three billion by twenty sixty. Australian councils play a key role preparing for, responding to, and recovering from national disasters, but aren't effectively funded to carry out these duties. The government's two hundred million per year disaster-ready fund is significantly oversubscribed, especially considering the scale and cost of disaster mitigation programmes. Numerous national reviews, including the Colin Review and Royal Commission International Disaster Arrangement, have identified the need for a significant uplift in local government emergency management capability and capacity. A nine hundred million per year fund would support all councils to better prepare their communities before national disasters and more effectively carry out the emergency management responsibilities that have been delegated to them. That is my recommendation. Is there any debate on that, councillors? Yes, councillor Marnie.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Yeah, I think it's a terrific platform for the local government sector, and obviously there will be local priorities. The only bit that I felt didn't appear to get a mention is the role that the federal assistance grants plays in supporting local government. We have been campaigning for some time to see that raised to one percent. I think across the sector, we have a problem in Australia that small regional councils' model is broken. It will not continue to exist if we don't address income needs for those local governments. We can't have situations where we turn to our community and raise the rates by twenty seven point seven percent as measures to address that. So I would ask that for particularly smaller population councils like ours, under twenty five thousand, as we start to see the first pages of the overdue asset management plans come in, we're looking at an eighty eight million dollar backlog, which dwarfs by anyone's standings. The two million dollars we're going to borrow for, for Main Street restoration. So I think that needs to be a central part of the advocacy from the Australian Local Government Association. And, but I thank you for what is, I think, a very strong foundation to put forward to both our candidates, but also the existing federal government to consider.
Thank you, councillor Marnie. If there are any further debate on this topic, I'll put that to you, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. The next item is two point one, notice to motion, councillor Evangelitis, council legal assistant.
If I may move a procedural motion to bring a number of matters forward, which I.
Oh, sorry, we'll go back to that.
Brought forward earlier.
Yep, can we get a list of that? So where are we at?
Three point one.
Right.
The first one is three point one, and Mayor, given what happened in the public gallery, I intend bringing the Hazel Grove Road issue up as well, straight after the golf club, because they've got to go back to Hazel Grove Road in the dark.
Three point one is a question on notice, councillor Tassus.
Yes, I get that, Mayor, so I'm just going to note that, but I wanted to ask about the advice that's in the report.
So, yeah, so we go to three point one, and it's been answered, and you're going to ask a question on the advice, is that correct?
Yes, I'm going to ask a question because I understand from the management comment, since that went through, that there has been some advice, that there has been, and the, was brought up in the public gallery, from Mr Neville in regards to that he'd already made some records or some meetings with some of the people in the room in the council. And I understand there's been a further approach recently that's now been a record.
Okay, so I believe there is a res- oh, sorry, councillor Tassus.
Can I get some clarification on what is, what is the story? Has there been records or has there not been records?
Let's get some answers for you. For you, Mr Gurney, or do you have someone you're going to delegate that to?
Through you, Mayor. I'll ask the Director of Finance and Governance, Mrs Browning, to speak on that.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Yes, that's correct. So subsequent to that paper being issued, we've tweaked the search and then located that Mr Neville did actually email each of the councillors in late February. Meetings might necessarily make it into council's records, however, that email has. So we issued a correction to councillors this morning and advised that we would be advising the public forum tonight of that correction.
Does that satisfy you, councillor Tassus? You mentioned five point. Twelve? So we just go to page sixty-six, please councillors.
I'll move the, uh, the recommendation.
No, second. Hang on, I need a second.
Yeah, I'd like to second it, but I've got another point I'd like to add to it.
Sure, can I just get to that page, please, sir? So councillor Tysus, you're moving the recommendation?
Yeah, before, before I, I'm, I'm moving it, but before we go any further, can I just ask that the, the, um, uh, the Phillips are both outside, I was wondering whether, I think it's the, if that could be brought back into the.
Yeah, we'll just hold that for a minute and then, because councillor Ring has a, an extra point he'd like to add before you accept him as a seconder, otherwise it'll, it could be an amendment. Yeah, it's a bit rude. I agree. Just for your information, we're discussing your item. Councillor Ring, you had an extra point?
Yeah, the extra point I'd like to add, um, is that the issue of Crown Road access is referred to the Infrastructure Committee for review and advice.
Are you happy with that councillor Tysus? All right, so councillor Tysus, you've moved that. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, and I, I will read the recommendation because they're, they're now in the room. Uh, the recommendation from the council, uh, given what was said by Mr Ed Scimelia, now from the, um, from the people at Hazel Grove Road, uh, the, the council want immediately advocate to the New South Wales Crown Lands to permit the owner of thirty-five Honeysuckle Falls Road, Tarranar, to conduct maintenance on the sole Crown Road access to their property, and if point two above is unsuccessful, immediately commence lobbying relevant ministers for their assistance in intervention regarding this matter, and there's a point three that councillor Ring just indicated.
Would you like?
Uh, I, I don't intend to speak too much to it, other than the fact that, um, uh, there is some substantive merit uh, for proceeding with this matter. It's, it's, if you read the report, it's clearly not theirs, their fault in any way, shape or form, and sometimes these things happen over a period of many, many decades and, uh, sadly it's come to this and hopefully we can come to some sort of resolution.
Thank you councillor Tysus. Councillor Ring, you second this?
Yes, I did. I, I agree with the first two points. I also concur with councillor Tysus that it is not Mr Phillips' fault. This is squarely with the Department of Lands. Now, we have a number of properties within our LGA that only have access via Crown Roads. Most are unformed. We have a current policy that says we won't maintain them. I understand why that was brought in. But we need to be looking at the approval process, how we manage these roads, we take rates off these people, and we need to come to some sort of compromise. We can't have residents in a landlocked, regardless of whose fault it is, we take their rates, we need to provide some level of service, and I think it needs to be frashed out again within the Infrastructure Committee. So it allows us to look at a bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate on this matter?
Just, just a right reply, though, mate.
Yeah.
Can we make sure that, uh, there's some sort of written form or email sent to them tomorrow to tell them what's going on? I think it might be a little bit above what they're talking about at the moment, but.
We'll make, would you like that in the recommendation or would you like it noted?
Just that it's guaranteed, Mr Ed Scimelia's indicated he's going to do it.
So that's noted, okay, thank you.
They could be just informed of that, what I've just said.
Absolutely. Oh, right now? Okay, so basically what the, I'll read the recommendation out. So what we're going to do is that we're going to immediately advocate to the New South Wales Crown Lands to permit the owner, which is your good self, of thirty-five Honeysuckle Falls Road, Tarranar, to conduct maintenance on the sole Crown Road access to your property. And point two, if that's not successful, we're going to immediately lobby relevant ministers for assistance and inter- intervene regarding this matter, so we're going to lobby on your behalf. We're also going to refer it to the Infrastructure Committee, I think that's how you say it. Infrastructure Committee, IC Committee as we call it short, we'll use that, shall we? Um, to understand and how further we can help you, okay? So that's the crux of it, but we will send out notification to you as well. There's no further debate unless, no, I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against? That's carried. Thank you. Where are we up to now?
Five point seven.
Thank you, I need a list. All right. All right, so we're up to five point seven?
Thank you, mayor. I move the recommend, uh, a recommendation slightly different to what's in the papers. Uh, that the development, development application DA double O seven slash twenty-four be approved, subject to conditions, and that such conditions be deferred for the administration to provide for councils' consideration at the twenty eighth April meeting. And number two, which is a legal requirement, a division be called in accordance with the requirements of section three seven five A three in brackets of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety-three. I move that recommendation, I seek a seconder.
Is there a seconder for that recommendation?
No, second.
So councillor Goodwin's seconding that. Would you like to speak to that? So councillor Tysus, councillor Tysus?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, mayor, um, we've heard from Mr Peace, uh, this is the second time that he's come to the council and spoke. Uh, we've had an onsite meeting with neighbours, uh, we've got his, um, Mrs Moore Mill here tonight to speak as well, she's got no objections, she's lived there for uh, many, many years, and, um, at, at the onsite meeting, there was, there's no objections. I mean, normally with these things that come, there's always somebody that objects and we have to listen to what's going on, but there's certainly no public objections. Uh, from where I sit and on the inspection, the home and the DA are on a larger than normal site. That's in a hollow, um, the pitch of, the highest pitch of the roof is somewhere near, um, a neighbour shed that on a, a block that rises out of the hollow, uh, and I don't see that being a problem. Uh, the bus, the bus was a, a major issue in the consideration of this DA, that's now not part of the process. It's been sold, was more of a, was only going to move once or twice a year, it wasn't sort of a, a shed that would cater for a bus depot. Um, it's, it's a shed with a lot of, um, and I think Mr Peace, uh, won't mind me saying, a lot of hobby and things that are still need to be done, and he's looking forward to getting on with them. Uh, if, if anything was the bus, if the shed's not built, it's going to be on the property on the road, which is more dangerous. In my opinion, uh, the DA has merit and should, should not be judged here tonight against any other possible similar DA applications that may in the future come before this council. At the moment, those DA's don't exist, so we're, we're not comparing it with anything. And like every, every DA that we see or consider, uh, they're all judged on their own individual merit. And in my opinion, um, uh, the individual merit here is with an approval with conditions uh, that are, Mr Peace indicated, some of them there tonight, the, uh, the hedge and the site distance and all that sort of thing, uh, the easement and all that sort of stuff. It's, it's a very old area of town. In those days, you wouldn't think those sort of sheds would be going on there, but there's not, it's, it's a huge block uh, with a shed to go in it, that's still going to make it a huge block anyway, with plenty of, um, uh, part of the parcel of land that's not even going to have anything on it, so. Uh, in the public interest and on merit, uh, I believe it's appropriate that the council, uh, approves the recommendation tonight with conditions as set out.
Thank you councillor Tysus. Councillor Goodwin?
Uh, Mayor Coleman, no, in, on merit, in support of, um, councillor Tysus and the, uh, I'm happy to approve.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Statham?
I think the most important thing, uh, with this item, without any doubt, is the neighbours have not objected. That's what's got me over the line, because it is a bigger shed than normal. However, if you've got neighbours that will accept that, I think that's great. Thank you.
Any further debate?
Yes, um, Mayor Coleman, if I may, no, I don't support the amendment. I support the original recommendation. I did go out onsite, I did look at it, I did move to site inspection. We did, a number of us did training last week uh, with a planning professional on the planning system. What was stressed at that training was the Development Control Plan, although it is not a legislative document. It's a very important document for councils when assessing developments. If you change or ignore them on a regular basis, when we do have a serious issue and we refer to the DCP, we go to court, it's going to be thrown out. We have a development control plan, it doesn't meet the requirements, therefore I cannot support it. That's the, the, the basic thrust of it, it's sets a precedent, regardless of something built in the past, a development control plan was in fact brought in to avoid, to avoid inappropriate developments. I consider this to be too large for the size, regardless of whether or not the bus is there or not, the size is too large for the area, so I won't be supporting it.
Thank you councillor time, uh, Ring, sorry, trip of the tongue. Any further debate on this? Councillor Marnie?
Can I ask a question, the staff, um, Mr Peace raised, uh, examples whilst not specifically, but examples of where sheds of this scale have been built in similar zonings. Can I get some clarification on that?
Yes.
And that, and I understand that's a contemporary issue, not a historic issue.
Who can, who can, Mr Eldwood, can you answer that, please?
Uh, through yourself, Mayor Coleman. Uh, yes, we'll take, uh, some of that on question notice and refer as well. The, there have also been some indications of, uh, similar or sheds that may have exceeded. Uh, now, some of those may have been constructed illegally, and it's also, uh, for those to be referred to council, uh, for council investigation. So that is a consideration as well.
Councillor Marnie?
Uh, thank you for your answer. It, it throws my thoughts into some doubt at this point. If there is, as Mr Peace says, um, and I appreciate he would like to give me some additional information, but unfortunately I can't receive that, so, um, I am uncomfortable making a decision if there already sits a precedent out there, and I accept what councillor Ring has said. Uh, because neighbours change, and when you move into a neighbourhood and there's a development that is inappropriate and it's proved by us, it's there regardless of who the current, uh, landowners are. But the point raised that there are sheds of this scale currently being accepted in developments, uh, creates a bit of doubt in my mind about, uh, refusing this development.
Okay, further debate on this matter? So we have a, a motion in front of us to approve the, the current DA. There's nothing against that, so that's the motion that we carry, we, you want to write a reply? There's no further debate, I'll give right a reply across to councillor Tysus.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Clearly, I mean, if, if one person speaks against it, um, that's fine, but the reality is that, um, it can be approved with conditions, um, to mitigate everything that's there. Uh, the report, uh, was fairly comprehensive, um, uh, it talks about insufficient justification and then, um, be refused on the, on the following grounds, it far exceeds the development standards under the DCP. Well, I think the word far has been stretched, and it means the word stretched, but reality is, some of, some of the points here are so minor, um, but if this was a flat block of land, you probably wouldn't get away with it, I wouldn't be supporting it, but it's in a, it's in a complete hollow, um, right down the bottom of Caroline Avenue, uh, it's not on, and, uh, uh, when, when you looked at it, there's a tree behind it, um, and you're looking, you're actually looking up at the, the pitch line of the roof, and there are places next door that have got a higher pitch on their roof, uh, because the lane goes up further. It's actually sitting, sitting in this hollow, I, I, uh, there's no reason why council cannot approve something if it has merit, and that's why it's come back to us. The staff have, the staff, uh, said that it's got to come back to us, and we're making a decision. So we make a judgment call on merit. Uh, there's a lot of DA's, contentious DA's that come before council. This is a shed, the neighbours are all happy, there's nothing contentious, no one's objected. We're just saying it's, it's just a little bit out on the edge of where the DCP is. So I, I'd ask, uh, it can be done with conditions, we're not saying it, he can do whatever he likes. There will be conditions that will mitigate everything.
So can I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you're saying with conditions, does that mean that it comes back to council again?
No, because from what I understand, Mr, uh, I asked the council to provide me with conditions if it was to be approved. In other words, I've got the report to say refused, and I asked for a set of conditions, and now they're going to be drafted in the next four weeks. What they are, that's up to the council to do.
Right, okay, so.
It is, all we're doing tonight is approving it, the staff will set the conditions to make sure it complies, is my understanding.
I would, I would like some clarification before I vote, because it's really important for me to understand in regards to conditions. I acknowledge that this issue is important to the resident, I acknowledge that his neighbours have said that yes, but I also acknowledge that councillor Marnie is also, has his reservations, and councillor Ring has his reservations. So I would like to get, if, I know that you'll write a reply and I apologise, but.
Can I also say that what councillor Marnie's talking about has got nothing to do with this, because there are other, there are other things that are supposedly illegal. That's not something that we need to take into consideration here.
Yeah, I, I understand that councillor, but for my own benefit, if, if I can ask in regards to the conditions, what would be the conditions this would come with, if I can get an answer?
Uh, through yourself, mayor. So some of the conditions we would have to, we'd work through, I wouldn't want to specify those today in case some of the detail changed, and a lot of it will come down, uh, to dealing with aesthetics and access issues. Some of the, uh, information that Mr Pearce has, uh, provided today, uh, may also change some of the thinking about conditions in regards to the use of the building.
That doesn't really answer my question, but anyway, thank you. Anyway, back to you councillor Tysus, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, well, the bus, the bus is not an issue now, so that sort of takes it out of the equation with the consideration uh, of the council staff, but, uh, as I said, this is, you know, the, you, you approve things or you refuse things, but it's all judged on merit. And clearly there is merit abounds in this particular DA. Um, the bus has gone missing now, that's not an issue. It's a shed and it's in a hollow, uh, there's no public objections, there's nothing at all, it's just uh, minor issues in regards to DCP and, uh, it comes back to us to judge whether those issues are minor or major. To me, they're very, very minor, and they can be overcome with a set of conditions which the council staff are going to put together, so I, I move the recommendation and I hope that council support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against? Division, all those in favour? Councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Tysus, all those against, councillor Coleman and councillor Ring. The matter's been carried. Five point nine?
And this is, this is brought forward for the, just for the information, the ladies from the, uh, Wolleroing Lid Soul Progress Association.
Yeah, I'd like to move it. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you councillor Ring. Is there a seconder?
Second.
Seconder? There's a seconder. Councillor Statham, councillor Ring?
As with a number of, small number of councils have involved in the Events Working Party, which has developed this, the, the purposes of this plan is to ensure that this funding is secured in the budget moving forward so that staff can start planning now. It allows also ample opportunity to seek sponsorship for some of these events. It does not preclude events such as Iron Fest, putting their hand up again if they put in for money. There is funding in there for the fireworks at Lake Wallace. So the main projects that the communities appear to want are there. We have a limited budget of two hundred and fifty thousand, and we need to stick to it. I think this gives us and the staff and the community some surety moving forward of what can be done. I think it, uh, to be commended in the short time it's been put together, and in the Events Working Party, it was asked if the funding that is available for developers, for proposals, for sponsorship, isn't used, we can actually move in open council a recommendation to quarantine those funds, put them into a special account so that the funds could be carried over to subsequent financial use. I think this year gives us a chance to test this strategy, to see if it works. And then moving forward, we can adopt it over a longer period if need be, or modify it as necessary. Most of the projects will be done by January, we should have some answer then on success or otherwise, and then we've got a couple of months to move forward. So I feel I commend the, the plan.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Statham?
I've thought about this, but there's not much to think about. I think the Wolleroing.
I've thought about this, but there's not much to think about, I think the Welleroing people have worked very hard to gather a new committee together. I applaud that, we miss our New Year's Eve fireworks and I, I guess we are on a very tight budget, we all understand that as well. However, last year on the community development, um, financial assistance meeting. I recommended they get ten thousand dollars after a lot of them were lobbying me and doing advocacy work. And I can't see why they have got that, they now didn't use that. So that ten thousand dollars can go ahead to the next community development meeting so that we can attain that, which will be a twenty thousand dollar over two year.
Can I just interrupt you, um, can please councillor Statham? Because my understanding is that they've still got the ten thousand dollars. But I need that, I need that clarified if you wouldn't mind, so.
They do, Mayor.
Yeah, I just need to get that from the staff if that's okay, can we have that clarified, please?
Uh, through yourself, uh, Mayor, uh, that is correct, so the intention is that. Uh, through the events proposal, uh, that is up this evening, uh, which has an allocation of ten thousand dollars in it. Uh, that is in addition to the ten thousand dollars that has already been approved under the financial assistance grant. Uh, for, uh, the fireworks, uh, in this financial year as well. So, uh, that, that process is ten thousand this year, ten thousand next, uh, financial year. Uh, which is a total of twenty thousand dollars, uh, for allocation to the fireworks.
Is that okay, councillor Statham?
I realise that's all, um, very difficult for some people to handle or to know what's been, uh, adopted. I think the main thing to remember is that we need this to go ahead and we need to find other sponsors to assist in this. Uh, these people are all getting older, they've got a new group together and I have to say, we've lost so many, we've lost Lithgow. We've lost the Beatles, we've lost a lot of different things, we can't lose this for goodness sake, thank you.
Thank you councillor Statham, any further debate councillor Evangelitis?
Yeah, um, I'm definitely gonna support it, I, I'm very, um, happy that the, um, staff has. Uh, listened to the, uh, working group and, um. Having cut events that are very important to the community and we're gonna make it work, so yeah. I wanna, um, congratulate the staff on this.
Oh, thank you councillor Evangelitis, any further debate on this matter?
Yes, please.
Oh, councillor Goodwin, sorry, councillor Goodwin, no, councillor Goodwin had his hand up first, sorry, and then I'll come to you councillor Marnie.
Wanted to ask a question, it's, it's in relation to the money, the ten thousand from the previous year. The ten thousand that, that I'm very happy to support them with and in the notes it says a further ten thousand may be provided. Through council's financial assistance programme as well, so would that make it thirty thousand dollars if, if we decided to give them another ten thousand?
Can we get a response to that, Mister Eldwood?
Uh, yes, through yourself, Mayor, the, uh, in. Reference is to the financial assistance grants of this current financial year. If, uh, the committee, the, uh, organising committee was to, uh, put forward. A, uh, grand application for next financial year's, uh, financial assistance grant program. Uh, then that would be a consideration, uh, at that time, but at this stage. Uh, it is the allocation of ten thousand this financial year under the grants process to be combined with. Uh, the proposed ten thousand, which would be twenty thousand, uh, allocated at this stage for, uh, ne- this coming New Year's Eve.
Fantastic, thank you, I, I, um, understand and I hope they put in a, an allocation for next year as well.
Thank you councillor Goodwin, councillor Marnie?
Uh, councillor Goodwin dealt with one of the questions I wanted to pose, so thank you. Um, that's clarified that for me, I'm assuming the eleven thou- uh, eleven thousand and ninety dollars. Uh, looking to see that generated through the organisations pathways or sponsorships, because I. I may have misheard, but that's, that's what I heard as a figure to run, it was thirty one thousand and ninety. So we as a council are allocating twenty thousand through received money in the additional team. Um, I also want to ask a question and just to be very clear, I know, uh, councillor Ring, uh, spoke to this. Uh, the forty five remaining, which is still open to E I S's, uh, sorry, expressions of interest. Um, that funding is still available if, for consideration, if, if I N F S twenty twenty six was to come forward. They would still be a, uh, a eligible party to apply for that money.
That's a great question, because I'd like that answer to that, if we could get that answer, please.
Through yourself, Mayor, uh, that is correct, uh, councillor Marnie. And the expressions of interest will be called, uh, in, uh, by, uh, mid April. For, uh, potential events of a wide, uh, nature.
Okay, I'll just speak briefly to it, Mayor. Um, that provides certainty to parties to come together to bring forward projects. Or events out of the community as, as this is the case with the people from Welleroang. They have some certainty over their base funding, they can now go and have conversations with sponsors and so on to. To flesh out the remaining parts, but similarly if I invest or another venture is to come forward. There's a clear understanding that forty five thousand hasn't been pre-allocated. It sits there as an offer to a party coming forward and I think that's important that, that's understood. Um, for anyone to run any sort of event without a significant amount of notice and confidence of. The possibility of gaining support, uh, really weakens that, that opportunity to be realised, so thank you for your answer. Uh, can I also thank the councillors, I know there's been a lot of energy going into this in a very short time. And I know a few of the councillors, uh, councillor Fredericks and councillor Evangelitis and councillor Goodwin and. Councillor Ring, um, I've sat in meetings, even if I'm coming in from the edge, I think there's a genuine desire from the councillor group. To make this work, um, there's, there's a, a clear two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. And we need to be disciplined with our money. And, um, and I think what the work that's been done in a very short time, um, I, I think is really good, so thank you.
Thank you councillor Marnie, any further debate on this matter? I'd write a reply councillor Ring, but there's not really any opposition.
No, there's not, I'd just like to clarify the forty five thousand, there was discussion during it about whether or not it was broken up to ten thousand lots, twenty thousand lots. And as a group, we decided to keep it as an open amount, so we could hopefully attract someone with a great idea. But we might get five people with smaller amounts, we just have to wait and see, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, I'll put that, all those in favour, all those again, declare that carried, thank you, uh, we're up to four point one. Councillor Tassus, councillor Fredericks and councillor Statham.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are you all moving that way?
Yeah, so I'll move, I'll move the recommendations, a slight change to number two. And before we start, I just wanted to get, um, I was wondering whether we could roll the tape back and see whether, uh, Mister Faraway said two million or two point one million. Uh, is that, can I get some clarification?
Ask him, we're not, there's no tape here, can we just ask, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
I just made another hundred thousand dollars.
So you're, I need a second to councillor, councillor.
I haven't read that yet.
Yeah, but I still need a second before you, councillor Fredericks is seconding that, all right.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, the recommendation is that council seeks in writing the full public support from. All of the major political parties and all of the various calera electorate candidates towards the urgent reinstatement of the previously approved and then removed. Commonwealth Labor Government's, uh, Building Better Regions Fund Infrastructure Project Stream. Round five B B R F providing one million nine hundred and thirty eight thousand nine eleven dollars to enable the completion of the remaining unfunded top end section of the Main Street C B D. Stage two re- footpath revitalisation program. And number two, seek an updated administration report on this issue. Uh, coming back to the ordinary meeting of the Lithgow City Council on Monday the thirtieth of June twenty five. I've put that, uh, date back a month because elbows have been a bit slow, uh, running the, uh, the date for the election, I was assuming it would. Was possibly going to be yesterday, so that's the recommendation and, uh, second is made. I'll speak to the recommendation.
Councillor Fredericks, she seconded this.
Thank you, I'll, I'll speak to it. Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, I table, uh, all the, the councillors already see the information from Mister G, Mister Faraway is here. Councillor Fredericks has indicated that Jennifer Hughes is also on board, so it's great to see that, um. Uh, publicising the, the recommendations, uh, that it's, uh, all the, at least three of the main candidates. Have all signed off on or given us an, some sort of a tick of approval that they will pursue the matter for this council. I take you back, Mayor, to the mayoral minute on pages six and seven, which outlined your, um, uh, your, in your report, um. That, uh, on page six, that, uh, the five national funding priorities have been determined by the, uh, the Alga Board. And they comprise, including one of them, five hundred million dollars per year for community infrastructure. Uh, this was introduced in twenty twenty and the local roads and community infrastructure program. Supported all councils to build, maintain and upgrade local facilities with three point, uh, three point two five being allocated on a formula basis. Uh, it indicates, or you indicated that the program has a significant impact, driving almost. One billion dollars improvement in the condition of local government buildings and facilities. And there's a five hundred million dollar per year replacement fund would support all councils to build, upgrade. And revitalize the community infrastructure all Australians rely on. And we, and we all unanimously supported that recommendation, which was fantastic, um. Additionally tonight on five point thirteen, the main, there is a report on Main Street Slip Resistance Treatment Options on page seventy. Where there's a recommendation, and I believe it will be unanimous, uh, not preempting anything, that council approved the reallocation of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And eighty six dollars of local roads and community infrastructure funding. Source from the federal government, not council money, for the purpose of conducting slip resistance works. On the footpaths of Main Street Lithgow between Lith, uh, Espenke Street and Lithgow Street. Uh, now, I, I do point out that that's not road money, that's, uh, the money that we're going to look at from that is coming from a. Um, a tourism project that, that has not yet commenced. Now, in regards to the loan, uh, the actual cost in the report that came before the council, I think it was on the fifth of, uh. The fifth of March, uh, indicated that the actual cost, uh, at that stage was two million dollars and fifty seven thousand. Uh, thereabouts and the bank, bank interest was six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. A total of two, two point seven two three million dollars. The reality is, Mayor and councillors, is that, um, that's the final, that's not yet the final cost, it could be more, it could be less. But the reality is that we, um, there's over six hundred thousand dollars in interest. Uh, we, we don't have six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, given our financials, to do that. Uh, the other issue is that in that report on the fifth of March, we've telegraphed what the future costs. To be, so no doubt all tenders will come somewhere around the mark or up to that, depending on what happens. I'm a bit concerned that we, you know, it's not really a, a thing that we, you, you really should be telegraphing how much you're going to borrow to do that section of footpath. Uh, because, um, you know, it's quite easy for contractors to work out what's going on. Um, the other issue is that, um, I'm, I'm not sure whether, and I sort of got the inference in the report on the fifth of March. That we were looking at, possibly looking at using the current contractor to sort of, uh, get, get the job. Uh, so that there'd be some financial savings, so the loan would be available as soon as possible, so that we can negotiate with him. By, by the time he gets around to finishing that job, he would be in a position to on. Have some sort of synergies with, uh, coming across the road and some cost savings, I'd be concerned about that. I refer councillors and the council to, uh, five point five finance and governance investment report for February twenty five on page forty three tonight. Where there is a quote, uh, from, um, uh, Vanessa Browning. A key aspect of the report is that while council has total investments in cash of seventy point five million. Most of this amount is restricted internally and externally. Therefore, those funds are not available for any purpose beyond for which they are restricted. And further that, the council's working capital position used to fund outgoing payments. Was three point eight, six eight million at twenty eight February twenty five, the increase in working capital from. Uh, from six nine eight thousand at the end of January, so it was only six nine eight thousand at the end of January. For the monthly figure and now it's gone up to three eight six eight at the end of February, is due to the timing of cash flow, February has standard. Cash out flows with an increase of cash due to rates instalments, which has increased the working capital balance. We've got to find somewhere in all that mix, uh, two hundred and eighty odd thousand dollars for each year over the next ten years. In all likelihood, um, it needs to be financially recognized that the council's current total investments in cash of seventy point five. Much of which is restricted either internally or externally, may or will in future require some form of either major or minor financial top ups. Of the council's own income, as in ratepayers' income. That is funding, funding from our residential business and farming ratepayers. In sep- finally, in simple language, the financial question here tonight for the, this council and our struggling financial Lithgow City Council ratepayers is this. Is this Lithgow City Council currently in a sound financial position? Without any prospect of incurring any future special rate variations. To approve the taking out of a bank loan of a proposed two point oh five seven million dollars, incurring bank interests that have proposed. Six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars over the next ten years, totaling a repayment figure of two point seven two three million. Which amounts to a loan payment of some proposed two hun- two hundred and eighty one thousand each year for the next ten years. In my opinion, and that of the three signatures to this notice of rescission here tonight, no, it cannot, we must not go ahead with that. We've got three offers on the table tonight and we get a report back in Ju- at the end of June. To say yea or nay whether we're going to pursue it with one of those three candidates. So I'd ask that, uh, the councillors all consider our financial position. Don't put us in a position where we have to consider a financial special rate variation that comes on top of whatever. Because something else happens in the future and this comes back to bite us.
Councillor Tassus, before I move on to councillor Fredericks, we need to do some housekeeping. So in regards to your notice of motion, you've put the recommendation up, but because it's a rescission motion, you need to go through the rescission motion and move that. As part of your recommendation. So the notice of motion to rescind as resolved, you need to go through that as well. And then the recommendations underneath, so if we can have that up, please. Because you need to go rescission first and then we need to do. And then the recommendation, so if you can just have a look at that, I apologize, but that's what I've been advised, we need to do some housekeeping. Is that okay? I think we need to put, I think we need to put the whole thing up, can we put up the notice of motion of. Like, the whole thing needs to go up, notice of motion to rescind the whole resolution and then the recommendation underneath. So that, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so you're moving, so it's the second one, so you're doing a rescission motion first and then the next notice of motion is what you're moving. That's the second one, so you're doing the rescind, you've got to move the rescind, rescission motion first. Yeah, you've got to do that first, so I'm sorry to bring you back, but it's important we get this right. Can microphone, please?
Here, I move, I, I move in accordance with the provisions of section three seven two of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three and the Lithgow City Council's. Currently adopted model code of meeting practice for local councils in New South Wales. We, the undersigned three councils hereby provide notice of motion to rescind resolution with respect to agenda item one point one. Notice of motion on the fifth of March twenty five, Main Street Footpath, that was carried at Lithgow City Council's extraordinary meeting. Held on the Wednesday the fifth of March twenty twenty five, which resolved in part as follows. That the council administration seek a loan not exceeding two point one million dollars. To complete the remaining Main Street C B D stage two footpath revitalization program works. One, administration table, the costing for undertaking the upgrade. Of footpath on the southern side of Main Street between Brid Street and Espenke Streets. Uh, I've got no two there, what was the story there, I think that fell out, I think, didn't it? Number three. The council authorized as the general manager to negotiate a price for the additional work to seek, a loan not exceeding two point one million dollars. Uh, that the finance infrastructure committees develop a borrowing strategy. For capital works for inclusion in the council's long term financial plan and that a grant register be established. And individual projects be reported bi-monthly to the infrastructure finance and or other relevant committees. And, uh, as I indicated before, we further move that the following motion be put before the next ordinary. Meeting of the Lithgow City Council on today, Monday the twenty fourth of March. With that recommendation that I read out earlier, with the change in number two to the thirtieth of June.
Thank you councillor Tassus, I'm sorry to do that to you, but it's important we get that right and both Vanessa and I have had training recently, so. Sorry to call you Vanessa, but, yeah, so is that, are we right with that housekeeping? Very good, I apologize, councillor Fredericks, you've now seconded up. You speak to it, please.
All right, let's face facts, we wouldn't be in this position if we hadn't lost that branch to begin with, unfortunately. Now, I'm not just here for Lithgow C B D, I'm here for every single rate payer. I don't see how it is fair for. I don't see how it is fair for Wogan ratepayers who haven't even got a proper road to get their cattle out, to get them to sail, have to pay for Lithgow CBD footpath. I do not agree that Tarana residents who have a chop suey road heading into town have to pay for Lithgow CBD's footpath. And I sure as hell do not agree with Portland residents whose roads are full of potholes having to pay for Lithgow CBD's footpath. It's as simple as that. This LGA is made up of more than just Lithgow. Now with now, in regards to all this, because it was through the funding loss, I do have two questions I would like to put through Mayor Coleman to the general manager or whoever will answer.
Councillor Fredericks, your questions, please.
All right, the first one, because things need to be cleared up. Is it correct that with respect to the loss on the eighth of June last year of the federal government Building Better Regions Fund grant of nearly two million dollars for the Main Street footpath upgrades, that councillor's senior management did not inform the then mayor councillor Marie Statham of this grant loss until much later on the twenty first of August twenty twenty four?
Councillor Fredericks has asked that question, Mr Gurney, would you like to respond or not?
Uh, through you, Mayor. Uh, I can't be certain of the date without checking records, but yes, it was before the, uh, matter went to the August council meeting um, on our, uh, I think it was our return trip from Canberra, um, when I became aware of it and immediately informed the mayor at that, of that time.
Councillor Fredericks?
And the second question with respect to the loss of the eighth of June grant last year of nearly two million dollars for the Main Street footpath upgrades, can the council senior management advise this meeting now if any other then-elected Lithgow City councillors were informed of this loss grant of the, the grant loss prior to the then Marie Statham mayor on the twenty first of August twenty twenty four, and if so, which then-elected Lithgow City councillor or councillors were informed?
Mr Gurney?
Uh, through you, Mayor. To my knowledge, and, um, well, speaking as the general manager at, at that time in August, um, I certainly didn't inform other, um, councillors, it was just before the business, as the business paper was coming out.
So that concludes that. Do you have any further thing to say?
I would just like to thank you for answering those questions. I'm sure the community will be thankful for having those questions answered now as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further debate on this, councillor Statham, you, third person on this? Sorry, councillor, hang on councillor Statham, Mr Gurney?
Uh, through you, Mayor. Sorry, just to add, um, there, there was a resolution that goes, uh, back to I think that the August meeting where the matter was to be referred to the Audit Risk and Improvement Committee. So that is proceeding and it will be discussed as far as the scope of our review. So, um, all of the, that, that will, um, go through our audit committee on Wednesday of this week.
Yes, so that's going through the audit committee on Wednesday, that was moved by councillor Ring and councillor Marnie at the time, actually, yeah.
Just quickly to follow up on that, that is an independent reviewer.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, yeah. Is it independent? We should get that clarified.
Uh, through you, Mayor. That, that will be determined by the audit committee. The audit committee has three independent members on that committee.
Thank you. Councillor Statham, I'm
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Uh, just to correct the general manager, it was on the way to Canberra. You were not going to give me any documents, you said you had some notes, I had to actually nearly beg for them at least three times. It's cost me dearly my mental health. I've had enough. I think it's pathetic what happened to think it's, you know, Building Better Regions Fund, uh, funding of number five. We should not be here tonight having this conversation. It is an absolutely outrageous, unrespectful thing that they're me, I'm getting all sorts of emails and all sorts of letters. And Mr Edgcombe, I've had a lot to do with you over the last twelve years and I'm very disappointed.
Councillor Statham, please be aware of the act of disorder.
Councillor Coleman, don't tell me what to do.
I, I'm councillor Statham, I understand and I empathise with your concerns, I truly, truly do. But please, please, please tread lightly, please tread lightly.
Of course, your reputation can't be tarnished.
Um, that's an act of disorder. Please, please do not create chaos. Please speak to the motion.
I will, I'll delightful, I'll be very delighted to speak to the motion. We cannot afford six hundred thousand dollars in interest. What are you thinking of? So we want to go into receivership, we want to go into amalgamation, I mean, wonder what the choices are going to be. It's only over three years, not three decades, and I don't get cranky very often, but I'm disappointed in the no support I've had. Ca-, Facebookers thinks that I'm, you know, stealing, and I've got a new Mercedes. Well, no, I've had a Mercedes since two thousand and nine, and I changed it the year I thought I wouldn't be mayor. So anybody listening to this tonight, get a life and leave me alone. And I'm, I ha-, I did everything I could in my power as mayor to be at every meeting, every inquiry, but the main one, Canberra, I was told I have to meet with Minister King again. What a load of garbage. I'm sorry I'm this angry, but I have been absolutely overwhelmed today with support. So I must say that, and tomorrow afternoon I will meet you, and Jonathan Edgcombe, I will meet you accompanied by councillor Ring to sort out exonerating my name, and please, this is so important.
Councillor Ring?
Um, why am I being dragged into this?
Oh, sorry, Mister, councillor Goodwin. Um, I think this is imperative, that we do not put in for that millions of dollars worth of funding. I think it's absolutely outrightly ridiculous. We've got a chance of Mister Sam Faraway and we've got three, two other people that are willing to give us that money. Four weeks is nothing. We waited how many weeks before I actually was told about it? I should have known weeks ago. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Statham. Any further debate, councillor Ring and then councillor Evangelitis?
Will fancy a candidate for a federal election saying they would commit money. They're all gonna do it. No disrespect to Sam, but every candidate's gonna say it. They've got to get elected, they've got to get there. The bottom line is, we've had serious accidents on this footpath, it's not safe. The top ends, the southern side from Bridge Street to Espenke Street, has serious issues with drains going under the footpath. Forget about MBN, I know for a fact, speaking of the shop owners, that there are downpipes going under those pavers that are damaged. They get cleaned, the pavers get put back, the water washes them out again. It's a problem, it's ongoing. SRV. That's a nice scare tactic, but seriously, we just had a massive rate increase. This council is in a sound financial position. Actually, it's in a very good financial position. In twenty fourteen, I've looked at the, the figures for our borrowings, twenty fourteen, this council had debts of seventeen million. It went up to twenty one point three million in twenty fifteen. Currently, at the end of the last financial year, we have debts totaling ten point eight eight four million. Sounds like a lot of money. Ten point zero seven three million dollars of that is in the water and sewerage areas. That is not paid back with ratepayers' money, that is paid back with years of fees from those servitors. They, the services are fee for service, they have to cover their costs. It's not coming out of a current. When we borrow money as a council, it goes against the rate base. So at the moment, we've got eight hundred thousand. I'm not prepared to see someone die, and it has been alleged to me that someone has died on these pavers slipping on them. Person allegedly was a drunk.
What's your point of order?
Really? Mate, you, you, you've got
What's your point of order? Excuse me, councillors, councillors, councillors.
You've got to have evidence to put that statement in the public domain.
What's, what's your point of order, councillor?
My point of order is it's absolutely untrue unless he's got evidence to the contrary.
So let's keep the
No, you need to take it back.
Can you please withdraw more?
Then it's out of order.
Unless you can reference the code of meeting practice where it says I can't put up an allegation. I'm not accusing anyone.
Not an allegation.
It was.
Not an allegation. That leaves the council open to any public liability.
Too bad.
He's putting the council in jeopardy, Mayor.
Let me just take a minute, please. The acts of ado-, acts of disorder are very clear. It's fifteen eleven. So there is acts of disorder.
It's not an act of disorder, it's an untruth. It puts council's liability at, at liability. I mean, goodness me, someone died, someone died.
Saying it's going to increase the SRV.
Let's, let's take this down a notch, councillor, councillors, let's take this down a notch. Mr Gurney?
I ask you to be withdrawn, Mayor, it needs to be withdrawn. Goodness me.
I'll second that definitely.
Well, it's not a motion to be second.
Mayor, whatever you rule, I'll abide by it.
Okay, look, I'm calling it out for the moment, act of disorder, please withdraw for the moment and
All right, I'll withdraw that for the moment.
And we'll move on from there.
Not a problem. So we won't talk about that, but we have had serious accidents where people have broken the shoulder, older people, the potential for death is there. We have talked about it, it's in the public arena. Councillor Goodwin dealt with an elderly woman down near Super Chief. I believe it was a shoulder she broke, possibly a hip, I can't remember. He was off duty, but he dealt with her. We can't afford to have that liability on us. At the end of the day, this council is in a good position, the debt level is the lowest it's ever been. I don't know why from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen, we, we increased debt by four or five million. But under Mr Gurney, uh, he is very conservative in his financial management. We cannot afford the risk, it needs to be fixed. The rest of the street is going to cost ten to fourteen million dollars. Are we going to get grants for it? No. Grants in the real world are drying up. Governments and oppositions will promise you the world going into the election, but at the end of the day, we need to deal with our ratepayers. Yes. There's more to the rest of this community. I know that I go out and visit Cape Town, Eglon Hales, all those areas on a regular basis, well aware of it. But at the end of the day, Main Street was hit with a special parking levy for decades, after it had been paid for. These pavers were built, put in in nineteen ninety one, they were seconds when they were purchased. If you read the financial report, the life expectancy of a footpath is thirty two to eighty years. These pavers are well past the use by date. They need to be replaced. Can't replace all of them, it's a massive cost. But by doing the top edge section, which is the worst, and then doing the remainder of the street with asset exiting, gives us an option to seek grants.
Can I just, hang on councillor, please, can we have some calm on the other side? Out of respect, thank you. Continue.
Um, speaking to Mister Faraway earlier today, if the, the money does come through either this government or the opposition, if they get up, the money comes through, we can use up some other section of Main Street. It's not a problem. I have no problem with that. But at this point in time, we need to take decisive action. When I was on this council in twenty sixteen, there was nothing but talk. You go back further, nothing but talk. This idea that we can do everything on grants is really a naive attitude. We have seven hundred and forty four million dollars worth of infrastructure assets. We're not going to get grants to replace all those. We are going to have to go for grants when they're available, we are going to have to borrow money. It will not lead to an increase in rates. That is a fallacy. That is a fallacy. The bottom line is, we need to be responsible moving forward, we need to resolve this problem. As for Eric, I've written the terms of, for them to discuss, as being the non-voting member. The management of this council have not seen the terms for the set, uh, review of the project. That was at the Eric Committee's request, so that'll be discussed on Wednesday afternoon. That will be brought back to council. I'm not going to hang anyone out to dry until, or even if we get the report, we need a report. The bottom line is governance processes need to be looked at. And at the end of the day, I keep saying it in this chamber, I'll continue to say it, the buck stops with the elected representatives. We need to ensure that there are proper governance places, governance processes in place. Bottom line. All councillors own the problems, regardless if they're today or a hundred years ago. Thank you.
Councillor Evangelitis?
Um, I won't support the rescission motion. I, I don't want to wait any longer, um, especially on election promise, but as councillor Ring said, I mean, we've got so much to spend, so I hope Mister Faraday, if he gets elected, will give us the money regardless, because we've got a lot to spend it on. Um, but I, I, I feel this has been a problem for a long time, and I want to be part of the council that acts, not postpones.
Thank you, councillor Evangelit-. Councillor Smith?
I've got to support the same issue there. I believe that there shouldn't be a rescission on this issue. I've actually put a fair bit of work into this particular thing, and I, first of all, I was very reluctant to be part of taking out a loan for this council. But after discussion with council people and with, uh, administration and other councillors, I believe that this council is in a reasonable position to take out a loan to do it. I did believe that maybe they could have done it in a different way and probably even treated the stuff in a different way. But after looking at it in its all its terms and my experience with these pavers is one that I only know to well that had very dire circumstances. And I won't make any accusations, strong accusations that could put the council in a liable situation. But that is my main reasoning for seeing these pavers repaired and done properly. Because I do believe that the words beautification, rejuvenation and all the fancy words under the sun does not save you from the most important paramount thing, safety. And I believe these pavers should be replaced as quick as possible. And if we have to borrow a bit of money, it appears that we are in a fairly reasonable financial position, and I think they should be started immediately. And with the support of the slip treatment for the rest of the pathways all the way down the Main Street to Lithgow Street. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Any further debate? Councillor Marnie?
Uh, having had some involvement in grant writing, uh, co-contributions particularly matched dollar to dollar should be on all occasions seen very favourably by federal and state governments. If Mister Faraway was to get elected and a, and a, and the opposition formed government, he could talk to the partnership of a four point two million dollar revitalisation project. Why isn't this at the top of the list of, of regional projects of a similar nature? I know councillor Rings, um, look into our loans history. I think most people in the community may not be aware that in the last term we borrowed four million dollars. It got next to no conversation started. We borrowed it because the way the grant bodies had set up then, the previous state government had set up, was that you did the work, then you got paid for it. In the meantime, contractors are sitting waiting to be paid. So we took that important step, but we were very judicious with our budgets. I think we have taken this decision very conservatively to borrow this money because we see a genuine safety issue. I think it's important that we also honour commitments we made to our community. We lost the money out of a grant funding. We have a reputational damage there. That's the reality. Um, we're going to have to bridge that issue. Possibly the way forward is a combination of the loan and the approach. I'll wait on what else we hear. I'm interested whether the staff have approached or anyone else has approached any other candidates. Okay. Okay, thank, I know.
Councillor Marnie, continue.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, though. Um, so, my, like councillor Smith, and I know that councillor Ring also has strong concerns about safety issues, we have a governance role, we're not, we're not here only to make decisions, we've got to assess the risks. If we're seeing a risk out there and it's being made visual to us, we need to take care in how we respond to this, this process. I don't believe the, the, um, the paving is fit for use. In other areas, assets will be closed until they're deemed fit for use. I don't think we can continue to ask people to wait for this to happen. There may well be a change of government, there may not. If we find ourselves six, eight months down the track still having, having addressed this safety issue, um, that concerns me. So I agree with councillor Ring, I think we've got a, a limited amount of borrowing sitting up there at the moment. I'm happy to move forward and meet the commitment I'm happy to move forward and meet the commitment I believe this council made to the community in a timely fashion. If Mister Faraway or any other candidate is able to secure two point one million, we'll continue. With the, um, the, uh, the completion of the works on the, on Main Street. Um, yes, I, I think it's important and I accept what councillor Fredericks has said, that Lithgow council isn't all about Lithgow. But I note the comment that councillor Ring made, we've got to understand that those business owners paid a significant rate. Increase in a very volatile, volatile time for them. They also paid the special parking levy. So, those things haven't been amalgamated and those, those fees taken away, and I know councillor. Ring has spoken to it and, and so has myself, um, we need to do what we said we were doing. That's the principle I've been, I believe I've been elected on, I'm happy to stand that test. I made a commitment that, that this would happen and, and I'm going to see it through, so I'm not supporting the rescission motion.
Thank you, any further debate, councillor Goodman?
Thank you Mayor Coleman, um, I wanna thank Sam Faraway for attending tonight and, uh, for his offer of, uh, two point one million dollars. Um, and I wanna know really the details of the pledge first, timings. Um, is it important, is it going to be within the first hundred days of being elected? Um, and also, if I vote for this, Mister Faraway and the other candidates, if they get elected. Guarantee that, uh, they will assist Lithgow council, not only in the top half of the street, but also. Assist the centre and the eastern part of the street, and if I vote no, is this promise still on the table for another part of the footpath? We've put this off for ten years since I've been on council, um, or close to. And we've been told, constantly been told we're doing it and then it's taken off the table and then it's been told over and over again. Um, and I get very sceptical of these promises, so I don't really wanna put it off and wait again or wait anymore. So I'm sure if any of the federal government candidates get in, they will support our community and the future development of the streets. Um, I'm also going, not voting for the rescission motion.
Thank you councillor Goodwin, I'd like to speak before I give you a right of reply, councillor Statham, uh, councillor Tyseus. Look, residents' safety has to be a priority, I think residents have waited long enough for a commitment to action. The pavers actually were put down in the early nineties, my understanding, and they've been an issue ever since. The federal election hasn't even been called yet, my understanding, has it actually been called? Does anybody know? We don't even know when the date is. I believe we don't have an option but to take matters into our hands, our own hands, a promise given is not funding delivered. And at the moment, we need to make sure we're delivering, I won't be supporting the rescission motion any, as well. Um, councillor Tyseus, you have your right of reply.
Thank you Mayor. Um, I, I just reiterate that this. What we're chasing and what the commitment was, was to get the grant that council lost back, it's not a new grant. It's an old grant that we lost, it was given to us through Andrew G and then through no fault of. Any of the clear candidates or the, the federal member, or the state member for that matter. Uh, we lost the grant, it was our fault and our fault alone, there's no doubt about that. This is to get the grant back. I've got three, three, um, uh, commitments here from, uh, Mister Faraway, uh, Andrew G and, and the Jennifer Hughes. Um, rip them up because if it doesn't, if, if you go to a loan now, three months before we can get it back to the meeting in June. There's no commitment for them to do anything. And one would assume that one, possibly one of these three are earmarked to get in. So, we've got a, we've got a public commitment in writing from the three of them, two of them, the, the current member and the new. And the, uh, the nationals member that's going to stand against, uh, for which it was a national seat anyway, so the reality is. We've got, you know, two of the main ones that are gonna do it. The reality is, you're not prepared, i- is this council not prepared to wait three months to get this back where it should be? Uh, and on the numbers that I'm looking at the moment, we're not, we're, we're quite happy to sign up a bank loan. For two point, uh, one million dollars. And instead of waiting three months to fix a footpath that's been in existence for thirty years. The mayor just indicated that, and if I stand corrected, but she indicated that was a problem right from the start. So if it's been like that for thirty years, even three years, eh, why are we, watch the hurry. Watch the hurry that we can't wait three months. I, I, I just, honestly, I don't get it, and when, when we come back after the election and somebody here is the federal member. Sure, they'll look after Lithgow, but hang on, I gave you a commitment before the election. It's now after the election and you didn't want it then, why would they go out of their way to help Lithgow? They'd be looking after Bathurst, Orange and every other town that wanted to have a go, this is what we're looking at. Why would he, that commitment is ripped up, it's gone, that's what you're going to do tonight because you're not prepared to wait three months. Really? I, I'm, I'm astounded, and if, and I think the community tomorrow and from here on are gonna be going. What went on last night? Because the reality is you gave up a commitment in writing, media releases, the whole bit. The usual story that happens at a federal election, and you're gonna give it up, and you're gonna go with a bank loan. For more than six hundred thousand dollars in bank interest. Because you can't wait three months, I'm absolutely astounded, absolutely astounded, and I'm sure the community will be too.
I'll put the rescission motion, all those in favour? All those against, declare that lost. Division, a, a division has been called, all those in favour? Councillor Statham, councillor Tyseus and councillor Fredericks, all those against. Councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie and councillor Coleman. The matter's been lost, we move on, thank you. We've got two point eight.
Thank you Mayor.
Councillor Tyseus?
Uh, thank you Mayor.
Uh, what are you moving and do you have a second, uh? Is there a second or what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is, in regards to two point eight wind turbine projects in the Lithgow City Council O G A. That Lithgow City Council oppose any wind turbine farm projects within the, within our local government area. Number two, that the Lithgow City Council requests the incoming new federal government to hold an urgent, open and transparent. Royal commission into the current electricity and gas systems and markets across Australia. So as in, ensure Australians in future have access to affordable, secure and reliable energy, and I move that recommendation.
Uh, sec, the second of?
I'll second it.
Councillor Statham, back to you councillor Tyseus.
Thank you Mayor, uh, Mayor, the, the, um, I just. You, you can't believe what's going on in Australia, in New South Wales, in the central west and in now in Lithgow. We have been now, this council has been subject to. Uh, we're a dumping ground for everything that happens in regards to power, we've got, uh, on the horizon wind farms. Uh, we've had two, two wind turbines out at Hampton that have never caused a problem, so you can't say we haven't embraced them. Uh, we're looking at a pumped hydro, uh, we're looking at battery stories out at Mount Piper, we're looking at other things at, at Green Spot. Uh, we have become, in my words, a dumping ground of energy renewables. Why and we're going to subsidise and we're going to suffer the consequences as we go forward into the future. Uh, quite clearly the federal and state governments think that we are, uh, because of our coal industry, our power industry. And, uh, that it's on the way out because of coal, dirty old coal, that we're not going to go anywhere. And the reality is that we've got to do something about it, and we need to tell the, the, um. The state and federal governments, we need to get a royal commission into where these companies are coming out of, where they're coming from. Because at the end of the day, it's not their money that they're doing these projects with, they're doing it with our money. Our community money, our Australian dollars, so, and that's why they keep coming up. Uh, I drove up through Wellington, uh, last week, uh, wind towers up there, I didn't see any jobs. I saw wind towers, I didn't see any jobs, there's no one in a, there's no one in a wind turbine. Whereas there is a one person in a coastal lighthouse, I mean, it's absolutely bizarre that you can have forty turbines. And, and you've got contractors that are looking after them, probably no more than half a dozen people periodically going in to inspect them. If there's any issues, and that's the reason we need to do this. I, I, and in just closing, and can I bring up a, a, an A B C report into the Hay Shire council down there? They've got, they're gonna get a whole lot of wind farms and a whole lot of solar. And get this, the, the proponent is suggesting that they're going to give. Uh, everyone that lives within twenty kilometres, which is the whole town of Hay, a thousand bucks a year for thirty years. They're gonna get, if they, if they agree to it, they're gonna get, you know, thirty thousand dollars, now, a two dollar company goes under. Once it's all built, it transfers to another company, someone takes it over, who's responsible for providing a thousand dollars? The reality is, the electricity over the next fight, in the last fight, three or four years here has gone up over a thousand dollars anyway. So they'll be getting, and the, and the thousand dollars is actually their own money, and they're all suckers for it, I, I just cannot believe it, so. I, I think it's a, a quite simple motion, I think we, somewhere down the track, and now's the right time to ask the federal government, put it out there through the election. The federal election coming forward, that we need to have a royal commission into what's going on. When the banks were all playing up, we had one into the misconduct of banks, let's have one into what's going on in the power industry. Um, and I'm sick and tired of seeing particularly all the pensioners that have got bills of more than a thousand dollars trying to keep themselves warm. Something's going on in, in the background and we need to find out where the truth lies and where all these companies are coming from, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tyseus, councillor Statham.
Thank you Mayor. I condone everything that councillor Tyseus has, um, spoken about, commend. But I also actually, um, it's not just commending, it just means that you are having a conversation. With the truth involved, uh, I think the people that are going to these regular meetings. Uh, mesmerized because we're getting lots of different answers to different questions. But the one thing I can tell you tonight is, um, I, I think it was Minister Bowen, but I, I. It appears it could be Minister Bowen, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, you know, there's no recyclables in these, um, turbines. It is absolutely unbelievable to think that people think they can make surfboards out of them, how many surfboards a year are they going to make, I wonder? The other thing is recycling, that's the only thing they've come up with so far, is making surfboards. Now, I'll just briefly touch on the decommissioning, because I think the speakers tonight, uh, spoke very well about the, um. Highs and lows of wind farms, and there's not many highs, I can tell you, there are only five full-time positions. At each wood, uh, winfa, sorry, each wind farm, so it's going to cost all those millions of dollars to get it started. And there's only five people that's going to be at each wind farm, so we're going to get absolutely no support financially. From that at all, and I don't think a lot of people know that, so that's important to think about. The decommissioning is an absolute disgrace, I, uh, met with the, uh, quite by chance. Uh, in Portland just recently with the C E O of Savina, now, what a disgrace. He knew where I lived, he knew how many children I had, he knew so much about me that most of my friends wouldn't know. But anyway, I spoke to him completely impartial. And then he said to me, I said to him, how will the decommissioning go, what's, what's going to be occurring? He said, we're going to get a war chest of money and we will eventually pay out. All of those people that are going to be having to look at re, uh, the decommissioning of it probably in fifteen to twenty to twenty five years' time. Now, that's okay for a lot of people because they won't be here, uh, to actually have to worry about that as people age. But the new people coming through and the young families that I've spoken to over the last two months. Are absolutely horrified to think they spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on their homes and had backyards for their children to play. And now, from Ridge Street, as was stated earlier this morning, right down from Dark Corner to, uh, right the end of Ridge Street. Down near the Willie Wall Creek, it is absolutely pathetic, and then you go over to, um, uh, Mount Lambie. And what are they going to do there? They're going to go right down to as far as Curly Dick Road. And then down through that beautiful, beautiful area, the pristine area, right down through the Valley of Tarranar. Then we go over to, um, Ben Bullen. And we're going to see wind farms, Cape Town, Ben Bullen, Cullen Bullen, Portland people will see them, there's no doubt in the world about that. Then I believe, of course, none of these are at council yet, but then I believe there's also going to be two others come to council. Uh, within a couple of months, uh, so we have to think strategically, long term. To have a vibrant area, even in Little Portland, Portland township, how are they going to sell a hundred and sixty houses that, um. The foundations, how are they going to send, uh, uh, sell a hundred and sixty houses at, um, Green Spot? I've spoken to both owners recently, they're horrified, um, they didn't know about it of course because they're not local people. But I think we have to start to think about what is best for our health, the people that have purchased those houses or built those homes. Through, we, would, uh, uh, through a forestry where apparently if the oil drops off the leaves, they're going to automatically. Uh, go up in flames, now our wonderful local fire brigades are not going to attend any of those fires. So where would the owners be and the people on a waiting list in the event that they can't get out of Dark Corner? Or they can't get out of Sunny Corner, or they can't get out of Portland or Cullen Bullen or Meadow Flot or Mount Lambie? None of this has been discussed, they need to come and do a lot of consultation. Uh, no, they're not going to, they just want us to think that, well, so what, we're out in regional New South Wales, nobody really cares, we do care. We do care, and, uh, I believe strongly that everyone here tonight, from the Cullen Bullen, Mount Lambie. Wherever it is, it doesn't matter, and I've got no intention of saying I've got a conflict of interest because I was lobbying for it for three months before I actually knew where it was. Where it was going to go, I'm not too worried, I don't, I won't, I won't see them, I might see them, but it's not going to worry me because there's. But, um, gardens and farming in between, but for the people that came in tonight, thank you for doing that. And Portland and Malera Wang and Lithgow need to join together with Bathurst Council and be one. And go to a fight to get Minister Scully and Minister, um, Penny Sharp up here. To have a look at the beautiful areas they are going to desecrate, thank you.
Any further debate on this matter, councillor Evangelitis?
Yeah, um, I mean, we had one information meeting with the, um, people that wanna put the wind turbines up. And, um, they suggested, suggested it was, you know, this is very, very early days, this is what we're thinking. What do you think, okay? I, I mean, they're not going near me, so don't bother me, okay? I'm against nuclear, I'm against incineration, um, is it a matter of? The people that don't want them don't want any, anywhere, or is it where they are? That, that's what I'm, there's so much more that I need to know, but for me to vote to say no. Would be crazy because I, I've still got so much more information to gather, now, I, I won't.
If I could have some shush please.
I don't accept the, the visual impact, okay, I don't accept the renewable impact, I mean. When was anyone concerned about if their cars will renew, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, but I will listen and accept noise pollution. That's real, I will listen and accept E M F, these are things that affect people, okay? I've seen wind turbine on the way to Palm Springs, magnificent, driving by, they're not, they're not where I live. If there's a consideration where they can put them somewhere where it doesn't affect thousands of people or hundreds of people, that's where they need to do it. But to say no, we don't want them, the first thing I did was ring up someone I know, a friend at Tarranar. Also, yeah, that's where the wind turbines are, Tarranar, isn't it?
Uh, no.
Uh, Ha- Hampton, Hampton? It's okay guys, I've been here four years, I'm still learning.
Anyway, back to the.
Okay, so the first thing I did was I rang her up, she's three hundred. Yeah, she's three hundred metres away, I was one, went and saw a property, I said, gee, that's close, I said, does it bother you? She said, no. Okay, but she also said it's not as big as the ones they wanna build. And maybe it's not bothering her because it's not moving much, I have no idea, but the fact is. If it's affecting people's lives, their ability to sleep, this is a problem. I won't support anything that impacts people's lives like that. So, I, I don't know, I mean, do the people that don't want them, do they also want nuclear? Do they also want incineration? I mean, you know, Green Spot are up and arms about, um, turbines and they wanna build an incinerator. I mean, you know, Greenspot are up and announced about, um, turbines and they want to build an incinerator there. I'm like, it's, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know who to support. I don't want the hydro, I don't want incineration, I don't want nuclear. Renewables, wind turbines, if it's not affecting people and whether, you know, well positioned, then I don't have a problem with that. But we have to listen to those real concerns. Now, the impression I got after the information meeting, this is just so early days. So this is what we want to do? No, we don't like that. Can we get rid of them? Okay, you can put a few there, that's okay. That's, that's all I want to hear. So, I mean, you know, I, I want to support the community, but I'd be silly to say, no, I don't want any, no matter where they are. So I simply don't have the information.
Thank you. Any further debate? Uh, councillor Ring was up first, sorry.
Yeah, look, I'd, I'd like to move an amendment.
Sure, what's your amendment, please?
That the Lithgow City Council work with the community when an environmental impact statement is submitted to the New South Wales Government to ensure the views of all residents are taken into consideration in the council submission.
Is there a second for that? Oh, councillor Evangelitis is going to second that? Okay, would you like to speak to your own amendment?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the amendment.
Thank you.
At, at the moment, Lithgow's got six to nine billion dollars worth of projects that are in the planning stages. Some will impact on people, some won't, it's the nature of development. Some will create jobs, others will have flow-on effects, um, people will stay. But seriously, if I had one of these projects here and this councillor said, we're going to put a blanket ban on every wind farm proposal, then if I was this company, it's already state significant proposal, I'd be lobbying the government to go, this should be critical. Now, people won't like it, but the reality is there are people that oppose to this, there are people that support it. My position on all of these issues, be it the pumped hydro, incineration, is I need to see the information in front of me to make an informed decision. And I need to take into consideration all views, those for, those against. As councillor Evangelitis said, this is early days. They have indicated that there's change and I've seen in other areas where they have reduced or modified their things. If, when it comes in, and we haven't got a blanket ban and we don't support it, and they haven't moved the critical, then the reality is if we object to it, that will cause it to go to a planning commission. It adds another twelve months on the project. That means there'll be further discussion with the community. But as it stands, pumped hydro, critical state significance. We need to be careful with this. I think we need to take an informed point of view. And that includes those for and against. We need all the information. As councillor Evangelitis said, if there are significant health problems, and personally, I don't like wind turbines, I think there's new models being done over in Europe which are probably more effective. But we need to consider the facts and we need to see what's there. And if they push this ahead for state significant programs, we need to make sure that the community's views are heard. Royal Commission, this project could be well and truly done before a royal commission is ever acted on. And how, how many royal commissions actually result in governments taking on board everything? Electricity in this country is a disaster because of the failure of successive governments. The last government, state government, changed the forestry act to allow wind turbines in state forests. It's permissible. We need to look at and help work with community members to mitigate effects. That's it.
Thank you, councillor Ring. Councillor Evangelitis, you second the amendment?
Um, yeah, no, exactly what councillor Ring said. I mean, we, we need to be across this well and truly. So I support the amendment.
Can I just have some, sorry, clear? Yep, thank you. Councillor Evangelitis, continue, I didn't hear you.
Oh, no, I finished. I just said we need to support councillor Ring's amendment.
Righto. Is there any further debate? Councillor Smith?
I find it hard with a lot of this debate that, um, this area was never even classified into a, a, a energy zone, renewable energy zone. Yet we seem to be getting slammed with just about every possible project that, um, basically no one else wants. And especially some of these projects, you talk about, councillor Statham said, um, lack of information. I just heard the wind farm people proponents here in forums say, lack of information. Everywhere you go, it's lack of information. Why should we accept any project at all unless we find out the true finer detail of every project that's being proposed before we can even consider it? But we see here now with the waste burner, the German in the submission that's got to be in by the eighth of April. Everybody realizes, only about probably a week, they're over a week away. Now, I find it remarkable that we get jammed so hard so quick and we don't get the information. So everybody here is saying, oh, yeah, we want to find out more, we want to find out this, we want to find out that. Now, if I do declare an interest, yes, I do have an interest against the pump, against the pumped hydro. I have been attempting to find out details of the pumped hydro now for probably three or four years. And I still can't get the proper detail. And I actually put in a motion there to council to even ask into Australia for the detail. We don't get any response. How can you expect anybody in this area to accept any of these things, especially a waste burner? Like, we seen a information session only the other week where the proponents look like, you know, guys that would sell, suppose any, to anybody. They look like anything that would probably make them money. Then the woman steps up who was against the waste burners and said the complete opposite. So that was an information session where we had two contrasts of views. So we're less informed than what we really hope. And every time we do even get information, it's so conflicting, it's not funny. Personally, I will back anybody who does not want something in their backyard or any other backyard, and especially things that have been cast on us by some, by big companies and areas that don't want these things. And this waste burner has already been declared as not healthy to have down in city. But they'll bring it up here. So we've got to really seriously look at all these projects and really get the information. And if they aren't forthcoming with the information, then put a blanket ban on them.
Further debate, councillor Fredericks?
Look, let's just get to the new degree of it, yeah? We are the dumping ground. Whether we want to admit it or not, we are the dumping ground. Why? Because we have over two thousand miners. And they are on salaries from twelve hundred to two thousand after tax per week, depending on their qualifications. And the ones that are pushing all these renewable schemes are the ones that are screaming, shut their mines. Now, until all these renewables that they want to put here can compensate for the two thousand miners we have in this area and compensate for their wages. They are ten percent of our employment and they make up nearly sixty-seven percent of our local economy. When Springvale Mine was in limbo, that first week saw Coles lose a hundred thousand dollars. And that was just when they were in limbo. In nineteen ninety-seven, when one of the mines shut down, half the workers flew on out. They went to Mackay, they went to Perth, they took their families. This is the future Lithgow is looking at. These renewable schemes cannot offer en masse ways to integrate our miners into them. Our miners, many who have been in this industry for decades, should not be forced to go get reeducated to be employed. These men and women have built this LGA on blood, sweat and tears. And yes, mining is in my blood and so is farming. And it was my family who did it. They did it out at Toolsie and other areas that no longer exist. And all I am seeing is people who are not born here, who are not raised here, who do not bleed here, coming here and saying, you need to cut mining and you need to add this. I am done with it. Unless they have a solution where they can integrate two thousand miners, getting the same salary and wages they currently are, you're going to kill this area. You're going to absolutely destroy our economy. And as far as I'm concerned, just look at what's been on Facebook recently. Oh, my partner's coming up to shut down Mount Piper, is there anywhere he can stay? I'm coming up for a couple of weeks to do the shutdown at Mount Piper, is there anywhere I can stay? And yet they're saying that they're going to hire locals. I've lost count of the amount of Facebook posts I have seen of out-of-towners looking for somewhere to stay where they do shut down at Mount Piper. Enough is enough. We are not a dumping ground. And I'm sorry, I don't give a damn if it becomes a state significant project. I will fight until I have no breath left. We are a mining town and until they get to a position where our miners are going to be taken care of, when they decide to shut the mines down, they can bite me.
Any further debate on the amendment?
I want to speak against amendment, of course.
Sure, and then councillor Marnie, were you going to speak after that? Okay.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I, I'm addressing Bobby councillor Evangelitis here because he, he talks, to me, you can't pick and choose which ones you want. They're either all in or all out. You can't pick and choose because of some, this issue or tweak that or tweak that. They're either all in or all out. You'd have to be living under a rock to appreciate what's going on in Oberon at the moment. Three hundred metre wind farm towers, they're, they're doing such a good job and the company's trying to do an even better job. Money, contracts, all that sort of stuff. I gave, I, I read that thing up from Hay Shire Council. The mayor's, you know, fantastic, you know, we're all going to get this money. I mean, this is, this is Springfield Monorail Part Two. I mean, this is, this is Lionel Huts coming in and promising you a monorail. I mean, this is rubbish. You've got to stop and think, we, the whole big picture. All of a sudden, what, in the last couple of months, we've got all these wind farms. They just didn't develop overnight. They've obviously been on the table for a couple of, a couple of years. And all of a sudden, they're coming in just before the election. If we don't stop it and say, no, 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 no hydro, no waste to energy, uh, no solar farms, none of this, none of that. I'm telling you now, go up to Wellington, there's no jobs up there. There's a wind, there's a solar farm that goes for miles. They're still doing some more. There's no jobs. There's more, there's more in the jail up there, opposite the solar farm. I mean, that's the reality. But if, if you don't stand on your deck and say, no, from day one, you give them an inch, you're going to give them yards to run with. We've got to stop it now. And what's next? Solar farms? State forests? I mean, yeah, you've got to do something about it now. The position is, we need to be nine zip on wind farms. If you want a waiver, good luck, but the reality is, you're gonna, you're gonna give them an inch. One person is an inch. They will take and, and run with it. And it's the same thing that's happening down at Oberon because the council's divided as well. Right? Are you looking after the residents? Are you look, you know, you, you can see them from the Blue Mountains. That's going to be the same thing here. You can see Lambie from the Blue Mountains. Are you going to let them do that sort of thing? You know, two hundred metres up through, who knows what they're going to put up? But there's no jobs. I, I can't believe that people think that there's jobs in this thing. There, there are build jobs, yeah, sure, but that's it. That's it. You need to be, if you, if we're going eight-one on the, um, uh, the hydro and we're nine zip on the waste to energy, I think, we need to be nine zip on this as well. Don't, don't give them an inch because they'll keep coming. They'll keep coming, they'll buy off some of the people. They're going to put it on state forest land, the state government's given them approval. We need to get amends, we need to get everywhere, we need to join with Oberon, we need to do everything else. And can I just say for the, for the public gallery mayor, there is an item here tonight where I'm proposing that we have community council organisations out there, in every, every town and village, you need to have one. We need to have a fourth tier of local government of you people telling us that you don't want these things and what you do need in your communities. It's an incorporated body process that allows you, your ten organisations, this council and every other community group needs to fight this. If you don't fight, from day one, you give them an inch, they're going to move. Let's put them down on the, um, they're just upgrading the M seven, parametarade, put them on the M seven, down in the middle of M seven. And let's see how they go down there.
Councillor Marnie?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the debates diverged into a whole commentary on renewables. Um, one of the reasons we're critical for energy generation, like the federal seat of Hume, Kalia are the best placed federal seats for putting energy into the grid. Um, we talk about energy storage systems as being part of a dumping ground. We, as a council, have voted for three of those items. There's three grid-sized batteries that are going in. They're going in at Greenspot, they're going in at Mount Piper, they're on the French Company. I don't want to get into who, who owns external to this country and who was born here and who was not. I probably should declare, I wasn't born here, I'm actually a migrant and I came to Australia on a boat in the sixties, but I'll just put that out there. Um, the storage systems are critical. How we generate energy is important as well. I'm not a supporter of a sequential transition. I actually don't like the term. What that suggests is coal finishes coal, something else starts afterwards. And at the moment, we have the federal opposition which are talking to nuclear. In amongst that is maybe one in three households in Australia are, are not participating in the necessary, these conversations. They're installing renewables as part of their energy. Um, I will be restored, uh, I only live five minutes down the road, but I'll be installing, uh, suitable solar so I can, in my retirement, I can reduce the impacts of energy bills. That's my decision forward. I've been a strong supporter when small communities and particularly on the fringes of our LGA come forward and want to voice their opposition to, um, proposals. I didn't support the pumped hydro after about three meetings I attended because I wasn't convinced of the merits of it. Um, I didn't support the waste incinerator. I attended a meeting that not one person in this room attended in the uniting church well in advance of when they arrived, the proposals. Um, I saw the health risks there and wasn't willing to support it. I've watched the, the two wind towers at Hampton over the last twenty-three years, I think it is, so they're due to be taken down very shortly. What I did here tonight, and, and I appreciate the time the community's put into this, and the young man who spoke here and spoke to the research they've done, I've also run people in, that I know in that area. I haven't got to everyone, so I'm not claiming that. Um, but the visual impact is a significant one. I, I thank councillor Evangelitis in his, whilst he has wanted to keep the dialogue open, he, he recognises that there are potential health impacts. Uh, the young man spoke to the fact that a wind tower would put in with a kilometre of a residential point. That is not a great designing, design and planning moment. I do, however, want to have an opportunity to look at whether they have a place in the LGA. I don't want to, I, I won't do a blanket ban across the LGA. Uh, but the points that have been raised, I am very happy to, to look at and support. Um, I think we need to, as a council, make sure as we have the conversations about other major developments, including the, the, uh, highway development in Hartley, we need to bring a proposal forward that's representative of our community. As councillors, we can't come here and run a four-weekly opinion piece. It's not about my view on renewables. I've got to make a decision on behalf of the community. I think the people with concerns, um, have made a very strong case around their concerns and that needs to be part of our submission. Um, I need to also listen to the voices that are supportive of the principle of wind farms. However, from what I've heard with some of the detail, this is, it's got some design problems in where it's been placed. I will support the amendment and I don't see it as being soft. Um, I need to fulfil my role as a councillor and all the other things that I've voted against, and I sometimes get characterised as someone who's against everything. I'd be lucky if I voted against half a dozen things over the last four years. But if they're, if they're, if they're not of merit, I won't support it. But I, I think we need to, the SEAs have been relea, released, so their initial planning stuff's coming out. It seems to have a lot of hairs on it. So, but I'd like an opportunity to have a look at it and then we put a proposal back into the system. And I don't know that it won't. back into the system. And I don't know that it won't necessarily move away from some of the positions of the councillors who have spoken strongly in opposition of it. But I, I'd like to be able to do that due diligence as a councillor and, um, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you councillor Martin. Hang on, have you spoken councillor Statham? No, let, on the amendment?
Uh, I certainly won't uh, go with the amendment. I think, uh, that's a lame way out. Not lane, lame way out. I think we have to make, we had to make these decisions previously over the years. And sometimes I never thought that we'd be here tonight talking about wind farms. I'm sure nobody in the audience thought we'd be talking about wind farms. I don't have a problem with wind farms, I want to tell you that, I really don't. What I have a problem with is where they're going to be located. Through the wonderful forests of Dark Corner, Sunny Corner, over near Mount Lambie. What's going to happen to all our timber for homes? What are all, all the people that are going to build new homes, new buildings, new furniture? Where are they going to get the timber? They can't find appropriate purchases at the moment, I believe. Now, four brothers at Oberon, I think they'd be quite clapping their hands because they've got bit wind, uh, forests of their own. But at the end of the day, I cannot understand uh, how anyone could think it was a great idea with all that, you've only got to read. You've only got to read, uh, what is truth and what is perhaps not truth. I think the major problem is with ears. I've spoken to many, many doctors over the last four weeks. They're telling me the worst thing that is happening at the moment all over New South Wales is children, children getting very bad ear problems and adults and no sleep. They said they're, they're actually, uh, providing scripts on a regular basis, even where people are within two kilometres of there. So we've got in Portland, they're just down the road. It's like going up in my driveway twice in certain patches. We can't let that happen. Over at Taranar, look at the amazing, and yes, my brother's got a property down there and yes, he's never spoken to me about it. But what are they going to do down there? I was told yesterday they're going to put this big substation on his land. He'd be horrified. So, and that's Karoo at Meadow Flat, that beautiful magnificent property. Property. So what about Mount Lambie? I mean, these people up in the audience, they purchased large, nice sized blocks of land to suit their, uh, their style of living and paid all this money out in prime areas down through Taranar. And now it's going to happen, we read all these things and getting information off the net, go home and look on Google and see what you can see about the health problems and most of all, the sleep deprivation. It is a pathetic disgrace. If they build them, I'm not talking about the one at Ben Bullen because I know some people out there agree that it's good, it's people that own property. Once he signs that pro, uh, concrete, uh, sorry, contract, he can never ever get out of it. And the money is poor. We heard it Oberon the other night. I couldn't believe the figures they gave. And I asked out at the one, I went with some friends to Portland and there were three questions I asked, which I've already talked about, the first one, and that is simply for decommissioning, especially for anyone's under sixty or under seventy. The other thing I asked them was simply, you know, tell me some, some of the bad things that you acknowledge about them. He said, there's none. I said goodbye. You know, there's none. Is he living in another land? If they're in an area where there's no prime agricultural area. In both situations with the Willie War at, and with Mount Lambie, there are wonderful farms out there. They can't sell now. Everything is dropping thirty percent. So as soon as they give something to council, I've spoken, spoken to three real estate agents, even in Bathurst, because Bathurst is part of this situation as well for those who don't know. Um, they're already thinking now of getting out into another business because they know all in, all, some will lose more than thirty percent, I've been told, and the ones right on the front line that won't be able to resell the house if they're all property if they want to reside, retire. So we have to put, we can't get any more information than that. All that information is the truth. So if a council ring to say wants more and more, so we're going to hold up the process so.
Point of order.
Can we, um.
Point of order.
Apologies councillor ring, no worries at all.
Councillor.
No, no, I've called a point of order.
Councillor Statham, I, I need to.
I have apologised, thank you mayor.
Yeah, let's move on.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Now, for instance, I know a very amazing barrister and there's people in this room that do too. His name is Peter Hennessy. And he did my husband's eulogy at his funeral. He's been trying to fight that one along the beautiful highway going into Bathurst. Do you all know about that? The massive big wind farm. But it was too late. He went to the High Court. He's, he's the first youngest barrister ever been in Australia and now he's in his late seventies. And he has all the biggest cases that there are in Sydney. So I, I absolutely beg you tonight to think about the lateness of our getting the ministers up here. Don't go to Sydney like I suggested six weeks ago. Bring them up here so all you people can see and go on a, go on a tour and give them a rating out of ten, what you think. And these wind farms also are not two hundred and forty metres. They are two sixty nine, uh, two seventy five, and then they put the big windmill on.
Councillor Statham, can I ask you to round up?
I certainly will round up. Thank you. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Councillor Goodwin?
Thanks Mayor Coleman. Um, I'm not going to battle too much with this, but I, I want to find out more about the proposal. Uh, I'm personally not a huge fan of the side of the windmills, but I want the ability to make an informed decision, um, as I have with the other proposals that I've, um, looked at. So I'll be voting for the, uh, the amendment.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. Changes were made in two thousand and twenty one to the New South Wales Forestry Act. These changes were part of ensuring the future of the New South Wales Forestry and provision of wind power in the soft wood forests, which was supported by the current state member of parliament when he was the deputy premier. Last week, the state member delivered a notice of motion in the New South Wales Parliament for debate to be held in regards to renewable projects popping up across regional New South Wales. This is the members of Bathurst lever of support in regards to the community. The lever for opposition for the council of support for opposition is the environmental impact statement. Lithgow City Council will have an opportunity to make a submission, taking the wider community feedback on board. The current state government has already sent a message with the New South Wales Environmental Protection Agency releasing the Energy from Waste Option paper, that this is the process that we have to follow. The research that the young man did earlier can be put into that submission. That's how we send a message to the state government. It, we send a message and it's not lame and it's not soft. So the environmental impact statement process, I will be supporting the amendment. Is there any further debate?
Uh, just a question mayor, I was wondering whether the, uh, councillor ring in his amendment, that the Lithgow City Council worked, worked with the committee uh, when an, uh, environmental impact statement, PIS, is submitted to the New South Wales Government to ensure that the views of all residents could be taken into consideration in the council submission. I was wondering whether the councillor ring and councillor Evangelitis might be interested in, in including a point two that the Lithgow City Council requests the incoming new federal government to hold an urgent, open and transparent royal commission into the uh, current electricity and gas systems and markets across Australia so as to ensure Australians in the future have access to affordable, secure and reliable energy, given the fact that this does not contradict what they're suggesting. So I don't see why it would not be a, um, a point two because it floats into the federal election that you brought up in your mayoral minute, uh, mayor, so that, uh, at least there is some opportunity uh, down the track when these might be separate here, but that might be a, a, a goer there.
Would you, councillor ring, would you consider that?
I, I have no problem with that.
Yep.
Um, I, I agree that the policies of both state and federal governments for the last ten, twenty years on power generation have been a disaster. We are now paying for it. I mean, I remember Alvin Neasey saying we're going to get two hundred and fifty dollars cheap electricity bills. That was, now that was an election promise. Didn't deliver, did he?
That's why I don't think.
Yeah, you've got, you've got to be careful.
You've got to be careful with election promises. Um, that banter is probably not appropriate. Anyway, councillor Evangelitis, are you happy with that?
Uh, absolutely. I mean, if there's a way we can stop being dumped upon, why wouldn't we take it? But I don't think it quite works like that. Um, but no, that's, that's absolutely fine.
All right. That, the amendment I will put, so all those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand. Those against, declare that carried. The amendment now becomes the motion, though you do have right to reply councillor Tysus.
Uh, thank you mayor, um, it's probably a, um, a workable option. But I do, I do go back to the fact that, um, uh, and I, I said it when we had waste, uh, waste to energy and the hydro, is that all our discussions in the first six months of this council, the main ones are the pumped hydro, waste to energy. We've now got the wind farms. No doubt we'll have the solar farms. We've got the batteries, we've got all, we've got all these things that to me are taking our attention off our prime job to look after local government. And the more of these things that come in, the more meetings we have packed with people from various areas that have all got to go home tonight to, into the, a lot of bush areas. Uh, but we're taking, um, you know, we, we, we're putting all the resources in trying to control these things that are coming in through no fault of our own. We didn't invite them in the door. They're just walking in the door and what, this is why we lose to me, in my mind, in my opinion, two million dollar grants because we're not focused on the core business of the council and neither are the staff. They're trying to do everything else to, I mean, we've got a, I think we've got a motion here later on for the next one, the waste to energy to, to put some options paper together by the eighth of April. I mean, the staff have got to put all that together and, you know, and then it's something else and then it'll be something on the wind farms and they'll be all separate in wind farms. So we've got to address each wind farm and then take our, our eye off the ball and away we go and wonder why you're making mistakes. I just put that back on the public record. We're, we're not focused on doing our job, which is local government, when we're trying to resist or facilitate. All these things are just walking in the door.
Thank you councillor Tysus. I'll put the amendment. All those in favour? Which the motion is, so the amendment comes to motion, we all, I put the motion, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. We move on. Thank you. Thank you. I move a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Martin, councillor Fredericks, councillor Tysus, councillor Coleman. The matter's been carried, we move on. Thank you for coming and enjoy your.
I hope you're suitable time for a ten minute break.
Can I have you move a ten minute amendment?
I move that way.
Can I have a second? A councillor Martin, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Please have a break.
That we go back into council?
Yeah.
Five point one eight. I'd like to move it with an amendment, thank you councillor, um, there's Tom. Yep.
Five point eight, thank you. And you're, what motion are you moving, what are you moving?
What I want to move, I want to move a new recommendation and that is. That is a precautionary principle council does not support. The inclusion of West Lithgow precinct as a location for energy from waste. Changes to the definition of thermal treatment. Changes to the exception relating to powering industrial manufacturing processes on site.
Is there a second of?
I'm sorry, could I get you to repeat that again?
I'll second it, I'm happy to second that. So I'll ask, can you please go over it again councillor Ring for the benefit of others?
Go over it again, Trinity will eventually get it up. So, Trinity's got it.
Trinity's got it.
Trinity's got it. I email at the Trinity. I'm not that silly, no maybe I am. Um, so. So we've got a second of, do you have a second, could I speak to it?
Yep, you go.
Look, i- i- in principle, people know that I, I am not necessarily opposed to energy from waste. However. Even in the options paper, there's still this on page two, clearly states. Energy from waste in New South Wales must point to. Adhere to the precautionary principle where there is a greater risk of harm to human health due to proximity to high population areas. And in areas where there are irregular exceedances to air quality standards from existing sources. Otherwise, they don't want it in Sydney. This is not a question of let them burn in Sydney, not here. The question really is, is it safe or isn't it? The chief scientist report of twenty twenty identifies clearly that there are eight out of ten standards that. They're not meeting, there are heavy chemicals and minerals coming through. There's new technology currently in Denmark which is dealing with a number of these issues. It has not been tabled by the government, they have not put the information out. Until such time as they can explain to me. Why it's not safe in Sydney, then I won't support it here. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the only reason they don't want it in Sydney is because they don't want to lose votes. Now, this, this document, this policy, it was brought in by the last government, this government's opinion is no different. Like everything, we need more information. But until they can provide us with an answer as why it's not safe in Sydney. And actually provide us with clear standards that they are going to apply. Then we don't want to touch it. That may at this point exclude some options. But at this point, I think we've got to take a stand on this. Regardless of the fact we're on, I do support. The, the concept, I will be sharing information on my webpage. I think at this point, this is the best and quickest option for the council. We could sit here and talk about it all night, but I think, let's just tell them no.
Thank you councillor Ring, I second this, I have real issues with waste. In regards to coming to our local government area. We are not a dumping ground for Sydney. We shouldn't be a dumping ground for Sydney and we should never be a dumping ground for Sydney. I do have issues in regards to the health concerns of our residents, I have concerns in regards to. How much they're going to truck or train over the mountain. And no one, no one can convince me that this science or this technology is actually safe. And no one can convince me that the product going in. Product coming out is going to be safe. My understanding, you put red rubbish in, you get r- red rubbish out. That's the issue I have and I don't support this and I think this is a good. Motion to be forward. Any further debate? Councillor Fredericks?
Well, I'm pretty much on the same side as councillor Ring here. In theory, waste to energy does seem like a good idea. But it's the unexplained or conveniently left out effects of it. That didn't really have me too happy about it. I think a lot more in the community might have been more open to it if it was doing our own waste. But as many people have said, they're saying that all the waste from Sydney is going to come by train. We all know how shoddy our rail system is. If it's not going down once a month, it's going down once a week. So it's going to add more pressure onto the Bells Line Road, it's going to add more pressure onto the Great Western Highway. And frankly, if Sydney wants to burn their rubbish, put it in a tail or grain left of it.
Any further debate councillor Evangelitis?
It was interesting, uh, when we all had that information session about the gasification process for dealing with waste and how much cleaner and better it was than the. Latest and greatest forms of incineration. Like gasification would be an Australian first or was it world first, I'm not sure. As it deals with organic rate waste, not red bin rubbish and it's totally self-contained, much, much lower emissions than incineration, sounds like a smarter choice. The only reason they're choosing incineration is money, they achieve it to build. And they're not interested in cleaner, smarter alternatives, they want to provide a fast return on investments. Now, I would happily consider alternatives, but at the end of the day, it still means bringing rubbish to Lithgow. Um. All these things that they want to dump on us in other countries, they're close to the source and I, I don't understand why. They're ignoring a fact like that, this model works when it's close to the source. And, um, so yeah, no, let's, let's just give them a hundred percent no. Um, and wait until, you know, the things come up.
Uh, councillors, oh sorry councillor Smith and then councillor Tassus.
I think there's been a history of, um, waste dumping on a number of projects that's come to Lithgow over the last number of years. There was even an attempt to burn the waste in Mount Piper. There was attempted to put waste up in the plateau for different projects, I don't know if it's four, four or five issues have come up. In probably the last number of years, quite a number of years. And I only see this as being another one, I agree.
Thank you councillor Tassus.
Uh, yeah, with the, with the mover, I was wondering whether, I think we need to put in. Uh, another point that, uh, council. Uh, reaffirm its, uh, previous resolution twenty four dash two O seven. That Lithgow city council opposes an energy from waste facility within our local government area. Clearly, they didn't get the message the first time and I think it's incumbent for us to, um. Uh, to either, this probably should be with this recommend, with the, what's on the screen, I'm happy to have that as a point two, but. I think our point one needs to be. Uh, reaffirming our previous resolution twenty four two O seven. That the council opposes because from memory that was nine zip. And then by all means, there's a point two, that is a precautionary principle, you don't support it, so. Uh, because we're still waiting on some sort of thing anyway, so.
No, it wasn't nine zip, it was seven two.
So I'll seven two.
I look on. So I'm not prepared to accept that in.
Oh, then I move an amendment then.
So you're going to move that as an amendment, okay, so you're moving as an amendment? Can we, can you repeat yourself please councillor Tassus, just for the minute taker?
That council, uh, reaffirm its decision. At the ordinary meeting of council held on the twenty eighth of October twenty four. Resolution twenty four dash two O seven. That Lithgow city council, it's actually in the report if you. Uh, resolve that Lithgow city council opposes an energy from waste facility within our local government area. I'll speak to the amendment.
Uh, is there a second of? Councillor, you, yep, councillor Evangelitis, yep. Just wait for Trinity if we could please, I think that's important. Just. If you don't mind waiting for a minute. I think it's important we look after the minute taker, she does the most of the work. You good June? No, just waiting, okay. While Trinity's doing that councillor Tassus, you've spoken to it, would you like to speak again, just briefly while we? Yeah, speak to it please.
Uh, thank you mayor, um, I think. I, I'm looking at the, the original motion and I'm going. Uh, here I am again having a fifty fifty bet and here I am giving them an inch and knowing they'll take a yard. You're either with it or you're not, you're, if you're against it, then you need to reaffirm our previous resolution. Uh, made, and this is the same term of council from day one where we said the council opposes an energy from waste. Uh, clearly, they're just trying to get back in the back door. And I think if we, if we, um, approve the motion, what we're doing is having a, a bet each way. You're given, you know, honestly, that's probably why they came back, because they thought they could get back in the door. And I, I think you need to reaffirm our position and that's it. We're not going to tolerate it, we're not going to do it. Uh, and then we're not, we're going to be able to move on without going into all the nonsense that they're trying to do. So that's the reason for the, uh, for the amendment. Just reaffirming our position that we're going to stay the way we were, we haven't changed our minds. Think.
Thank you, uh, councillor Evangelitis, you second that?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with councillor Tassus, we, we've already, um, I mean, it's so disappointing that. We've already been through all this and now they've thrown it upon us again, but, you know, it's not our fault, but, uh, yeah, we need to say a hundred percent no.
Any further debate on the amendment councillor Marley?
Uh, thank you mayor, um. Those that are tracking with me on this, I've had, I arrived at my decision. After a number of considerations about the impact of waste incinerators. I attended, as I said earlier, I attended a meeting that no one in this room attended in the uniting church except for yourself and thank you sir. Um. It was, it was, it was on the horizon and it was seen and. And at that stage, Sydney councils were working to. Explain why it wouldn't be a good idea in the Sydney basin. It made it wa- its way to here, um. The twenty two local government special conference. Had a motion go in front of the, all of the hundred and twenty seven councils in New South Wales. And they supported the motion. That with, with their concerns about, or the majority did, the adverse impacts of waste energy incinerators. And what I am firmly opposed to is incineration. The problem that gets caught up and I'm not going to nuance this because it's only going to complicate matters. Methane is released from waste which can be stored and used as biogas. So what we're also saying is that we don't support. The storage of biogas, so we will continue to flare it, which essentially means we'll put a pipe in there and we'll burn it. So that's to reduce the, um, some of the, uh. The more impactful, uh, chemicals in that, in that pathway. I do not support it because I, I don't support it because I think it's, it's symptomatic of a disconnect between successive state governments and. Where they're placing industry into regional areas, in particular the waste incinerator. My main concern here, aside from the risks it poses to other communities. Is that we're in a tablelands, we have inversion layers and we're sitting in a cup shaped valley in Waleiroang. Less than a kilometre to a primary school. It spends five days out of seven. At school for the tur- the series of their terms until they're ready to enter high school. That exposes to young people and the impacts of chemicals such as dioxins and furans. Uh, are significant. It's, it, it is established and I, I don't go home and have a make up science moment. Um, I'll use people like the Department of New South Wales Health as a reference point, they, they know a little bit about public health more than me. But these, the issues have been linked through various studies to. Particularly cancers, reproductive disorders and congenital disabilities. And particularly for people with respiratory problems, it continues to be a problem. Now, New South Wales Health oppose this proposed one in Eastern Creek. And they proposed it because it would represent a substantial health risk to Greater Western Sydney due to its proximity to residential areas. Now, I could assist the number of councils in the Sydney basin in finding a suitable parcel of crown land within a kilometre of a primary school. And nobody would stomach it. Um, I, I, I think the site that was chosen here was completely inappropriate. Uh, partly because of our climatic condition, but also because of. Um, its proximity to residential areas, we have a planning proposal that's making its way. Talking about increasing the population of Waleiroang and in close proximity to the site that it may be housed. I was particularly disappointed in the EPA. In, under the apparent guidance of the then. Member of parliament, Mr Paul Toolen, I'm not going to get political in this, but we were told that it's gone. But anyone that went on to the EPA website and pushed the dropdown box button. Found that the map can be redrawn at any occasion, it had never left us. I continued to campaign on this all the way through and I never took this smokescreen as an absolute. We now find that the dropdown box is now firmly displayed front and centre on the document. I think it's important that we, as a community, deal with waste. I actually think as a council. We should put our hands up and feel pretty good about what we've done, there are multiple metro, poll and councils. That have still not rolled out FOGA to reduce the amount of rubbish going into red bin waste. We save them on a ship to Lithgow to burn. So I, and, and I pick up on the, I think councillor Fredericks, I think councillor Evangelitis spoke to this issue. We've probably got the worst transport link between Sydney and the central west. And we're going to put waste trains, waste trucks into that already constrained environment to deliver it up to Waleiroang. And people are talking about, can we get rid of the goat track and all this? And whilst we're, we're saying, look, we'll take the red rubbish out of Sydney. So. I have arrived at a decision on this and I'll stand by my decisions once I arrive at them. Um, but I will interrogate the issue on the way to that decision. Um. My final view on waste is it's a traffic light for. Um, my final view on waste is it's a traffic light for me. The red yellow, the red bin, the yellow bin, the green bin. The red bin signals the stop, do not proceed, and I'm not proceeding with red rubbish bin, rubbish going into our, and incineration. Yellow around recycling, I'm not sure if people are aware that we have a company down in Donald Street that strips aluminium out of the waste stream and puts it back into, into production. So they're waste diversion. They're part of a circular economy. The green bin, which is the FOGA bin, which is going to come online in Sydney councils when they catch up with Lithgo, will need to have a disposal point. At the moment, there's a partnership between Australian Native Landscapes and Blaney, they're, they're based down there. Australian Native, that, like, native landscapes is not a philanthropic organisation. They take the waste, they get paid to take it, they process it. It ends up back in our landscape supplies and ends up in my garden. That's the circular economy. Cir- circular economies aren't linear. Bringing a train to, to Lithgo and
Councillor Marnie, your five minutes is nearly up, I'm sorry to
That's all right, I will wrap it up in keeping with everyone else. Um, it's, it's a, it's a linear economy. And, and I won't accept and I, and unfortunately it'll be communities like Galvin that will probably have it foisted upon them. Um, but we need to work more on waste diversion, rather than, uh, bringing it out to burn. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you councillor Marnie, on the amendment, yeah?
Uh, question, uh,
Uh, question?
I've got a question for you to councillor Marnie. Does he, does he support the amendment or not?
Yeah, because I wasn't, I was unclear. Councillor Marnie, are you supporting the amendment or no?
I will be clear on this. I think as council, we have arrived that at a point, and I respect what councillor Tassus has said, it's a no to this, to waste
Yeah, but will you be supporting the amendment?
I will be supporting the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
I won't be supporting the amendment because what we're being asked to document on and respond to covers more than just the West Lithgo precinct. It also includes um, definitions about, um, thermal treatment and about exceptions relating to powering industrial manufacturing processes on site. That excludes West Lithgo. And we, we, we need to actually target what we're being asked to respond to. This doesn't. What I put up can reference this, but this doesn't.
So are you prepared to reference it in your, um, can it be included in that sense?
Well, it could be included. I, I just assumed that it would have been taken as a given.
No, because it's not, because it's what you move is what's given, so perhaps it is an option that you could revisit.
Okay, well, we can revisit. I'm happy to slot that in if councillor
Councillor Tassus? Is gonna reference, reference what you've just reaffirmed, so you're referencing in the recommendations, but basically it's all in one.
Yep.
Two different things? No? Okay, so the amendment goes back. I'm just trying to find a pathway forward. Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just wondering. Anyway, councillor Goodwin's looking at me, would you like to speak?
Just quickly, yeah, I'm, I'm not against, totally against waste for energy, energy from waste. Um, I've been overseas recently, um, to a few countries and I, and I've spoken about it everywhere I've been. Um, I've spoken to locals there about it, um, and the locals have said nothing adverse to me about whether I've been speaking to the right locals or the wrong locals, I don't know. They haven't said anything bad about it, they work near them. Um, I, I hear on the grapevine whether this is true or not, the parks is, is absolutely stinging for this proposal to waste for energy. And I'd just say, how's, how's the waste gonna get to parks? It's gonna come through Lithgo via road and transport and, and rail. And we'll be standing here watching all the economic benefits go straight out to parks. We have, we have economic benefits that are coming, that are coming from this. Um, I'm not totally against it yet, I haven't seen a, um, a, a environmental impact statement. Um, I'd like to see that first before I make any full decisions, but, um, I'm not going to vote for this.
So you're not supporting the amendment, is that correct? Just making that clear? Thank you. Anyway, councillor, um, Fredericks?
Well, I've said it once before, so I'll say it again. If it's not good enough for Newcastle City and Wollongong, it's not good enough for Lithgo. It's just that simple. If they're not guts enough to burn their crap in their cities, why the hell should we stay open for it here? It's a, it, it's a legitimate question.
Thank you. I'll, um,
So could I just, I'd make a point of that. In the document, Newcastle is one of the locations that's been prepared.
Yeah, it's been, it's a new location actually. It's actually, yeah, it's a new location, councillor Fredericks.
I can guarantee it won't get approved.
Moving on from there, thank you. So this is the amendment that debating. I'm actually gonna support the amendment because I did actually vote for the original motion on the twenty fourth of October, so I'm gonna reconfirm my opposition to energy to waste, because that's my choice. Um, so I'm going to now put that to you. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Declare that carried. That now becomes part of the resolution. So that includes councillor Tassus, my understanding what councillor Ring has put forward, plus that amendment? So that's just that, all right. Well, I'm gonna for, I'm gonna put up another amendment then, which means I'm gonna move that the original motion that councillor Ring put forward, and that is added into that, because we need to have all that detail, as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, second that? Hang on, that was his opportunity to do that. He didn't, he said no.
Well, yeah, but I'm leaving it now. So I can do that. I can, I can put forward another amendment. As code of meeting practice, I can put forward another amendment. So I'm putting forward an amendment that includes what councillor Ring has put forward and what you have put forward.
But he didn't want to do it.
I know, but I do.
And then now he's gonna second it.
Well, then someone else can second it.
But you're putting him, you're putting him in a spot to second something.
Well, he doesn't have to second it councillor Tassus.
I'm sorry, am I, is there anything illegal being done?
No.
No, right, let's move on.
Because I believe that we need to have everything in the notice of motion. I believe we need to stipulate it. So I am moving, I am moving, because it's my prerogative, to move what councillor Ring has put and what councillor Tassus has put together. Can I have a second up? No. Councillor Evangelitis, right, that's what it's put forward. So, we've already had the debate. Do we want any further debate on it? I will put that to you. All those in favour? No? Then it's lost. Then that amendment was lost? So who's for the amendment? Who's against? The matter is lost. We go back to the original amendment, which now becomes the motion. I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. A division has been called. All those for? Division is councillor Statham, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Tassus and councillor Coleman. All those against? Councillor Goodwin and councillor Ring. The matter has been carried, we move on. Right, two point one, councillor Evangelitis, your notice of motion. Is there a second up? Please read your recommendation and speak to it. Is there a second up for this councillor Smith? Yes, your motion, you can do what you wish. So what's your motion? So can you read that again for me? Okay, thank you. And there's, so you, councillor Smith's second up? Your mic's not on.
Sorry.
Can you say that again?
Okay, um, I just want to include or individual in between hold any business accountable, so it's hold any business or individual accountable.
Okay. Although, okay, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I do, yeah. This is gonna be something completely different. Um, since Meta Facebook changed their privacy and freedom of speech policies at the start of the year, it's virtually impossible to have posts removed on Facebook. It lies totally with the page's admins and how they decide to control the page. But strangely, one creator of a local Facebook page seems to think that they are in some way protected by Facebook in the real world. And not only has allowed defamatory posts, but also engages actively in creating such content. Now, I'm gonna mention some of these posts, but this is just a snippet. It's been going on since I was elected, but I won't include any of the comments using profanities due to our prime time viewing slot, which is actually a late viewing slot now. All these comments are currently live and have been for some time. My requests to the admin for removal have all been ignored. Now, just for some context, I don't make any comments on this page. I don't contribute. I say absolutely nothing. I think the only thing I said was good luck when I started the page, because I actually think community pages focused on council are a good thing. Now, here are a few of the comments that have been allowed and are currently live. Number one, that I bought my way onto my council position. Number two, that councillor Mahoney writes my notice of motions, which is probably, it's probably more of an insult to him, given my poor writing skills. Um, number three, apparently I operate several illegal businesses from my home, yet somehow the police have never been called. That the new resident award was made up for me just to get on council. That I create false Facebook, Facebook accounts. That I threatened, bullied and intimidated the admin team of that page, causing, causing them to resign. I mean, I honestly can't wait for them to prove that one. I gained a council grant by unlawful deception. Comments like go back to where you came from and you are a filthy capitalist pig has seen one of these individuals banned on every local social media page, apart from this one, of course, where he's actually encouraged for this type of behaviour. You see, the admins on the other pages knew they had a responsibility and acted accordingly. In addition to those things I've mentioned, the admin took a private message and constructed a conversation online that never actually took place. A video of myself taken in this very room before I was a councillor, where they used AI to change the words that came out of my mouth, so the community would hate me. The admin of that page contacted the Daily Telegraph for the hope of a scandalous expose story on me. When I responded to the journalists, I actually encouraged them to do the story. Of course, once they learnt the truthful context, they didn't bother. Now, this isn't some hacker on the other side of the planet, these are locals, we know their names. One is a local business owner, the other an ex-political candidate. Not only have they ignored all my requests, but they've also ignored a request from the GM to remove the slanderous and false content. Just on this past weekend, an ex-councillor and two members of the community had this to say in regards to me being on the Women's Advisory Committee. He is a questionable human being. He abused a female councillor. There is no way he should be on this committee considering how he treats women. Now, nothing, and I mean nothing, could be further from the truth, but of course, this has nothing to do with the truth. It's simply a platform for abuse and lies. When they wrote to my partner and referred to my daughter in a comment, they crossed the line with me. I don't need anyone to pay for my legal choices, I'm more than capable. But what would happen if I wasn't? If I didn't have the funds or the ability to stop these people? If the legislation and our policy can't protect staff and councillors, it means the policy has failed and needs to be revised. All the government agencies that look after these matters all suggested litigation as the correct path forward. They were clear that this is a defamation case. I will cite the case of Wellington versus Metcalf from nineteen, from twenty twenty two, where a councillor was awarded a hundred thousand dollars in damages due to defamatory comments from a community member's social media page. This case was based on seven separate posts. I think I've got ten times that, maybe even, you know, or just a bit less. I'm more than happy for my role and actions on council to be scrutinised. I certainly did, it was a previous council. But never did I once call an elected representative a name, fabricated stories, gaslighted, or try to affect their business lives, and never did I ever contact or refer to their families. You can check that. I don't delete anything. Everyone, everything I focused on was on their council actions and nothing more. Now, not once during my elections page that I was the admin of did I receive a legal threat. I took my role as admin very seriously. I bear the responsibility of every comment on that page. I fully understood my legal obligations. Now, just in the past week, we have seen hacked or false private messages circulating involving our mayor and another councillor. They were both forced to make statements about these posts, won't even refer to legal action. These people won't stop unless they are aware and fearful of the consequences. When I had a problem, I didn't just post online, I stood over there and I spoke in the public gallery. Where are these people? Why have they never come to the public gallery? They're pathetic trolls and cowards. And by the way, I'm the only councillor that is treated like this on that page, almost on a daily basis. The reason for my notice of motion is I'm giving this council the opportunity to revise its policy in order to protect its staff and elected officials going into the future. You'll have councillors feel despondent whilst their name becomes mud under our watch. They will leave their role the second they feel their families are being targeted. And this council needs to consider the implications, both from a legal and moral standpoint. Dated policies will fail in this ever-changing landscape. We're not in Kansas anymore, toto. Inaction will be our failure. Now, to the councillors that say just get off social media, I don't use it. I'm sorry, but this is how people communicate now. I would not be sitting here if it wasn't for social media. I didn't knock on one person's door, by the way. I can just imagine back in the day someone saying, just stick to letter writing, that telephone is no good. Um, it, it can happen at any time. If, if, if a council staff member was brought up on a, a bad decision and someone from the community thought, well, I don't like that, I'm gonna make their life hell. What, what, what are they meant to do? We're, we're forced by a code of conduct, but people can say these things? My recommendation is that Lithgow City Council adopt a legal policy that enables them to take action where necessary in order to provide a safe working environment for their staff and councillors.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis. Councillor Smith?
I supported this motion basically because I think these, these problems on social media, whether it comes from that side or that side, or who's wrong or who's right, I think some of these issues should really be looked at. I personally don't use it. If I'm on there, if someone else has put me on there, if I had my way, I'd ban it. And the, as you see, the big tech giants at the moment, if they had their way, there'd be no controls whatsoever. I think it's bad enough when you see on the, on the television in the last few days where there's young kids as young as ten even picking up on pornography. I think some of it is actually quite disgraceful. So I support Tom, that we should have, we should be supporting each other as a council, because everybody does come under the scrutiny of some area. We're not always gonna be right, we're always gonna be attacked. And we do hear various councillors complaining of being attacked. So I believe whether we go through a financial policy on this and give financial assistance or any, well, purely that's up for everybody to vote on. But I do think everybody should be called in the line and start acting responsible as far as this social media rubbish goes.
Thank you councillor Smith. Any further debate? Councillor Fredericks and then councillor Ring?
I'll move an amendment there.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, move that the notice of motion and the management comment be noted.
Um, what's that? Can we have that?
I'm happy to second that.
The, all I had was that, 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 that the notice of motion been and management comment be noted.
Oh, okay, so you're having the both noted?
Just the whole lot be noted.
The whole lot be noted. Oh, okay. That means it's, uh, councillor Ring, you're seconding that, which means that there's no action on it. Yeah, so councillor Tassus?
Uh, thank you mayor. I, 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 uh, I'm with councillor Evangelitis and I appreciate all that's gone on here, but the reality is, in local government, there is nothing. There is nothing to protect you under this form of social media or media as it is. Uh, it's not like the old days when the newspapers and the radio and all that sort of thing, and you had a bit more to go with. Uh, it's not like the old days when the newspapers and the radio and all that sort of thing and you had a bit more to go with. Um, a lot of this stuff is controlled by overseas. A I and all that sort of things come into the fruition in the last twelve months. Um, the reality is that there's, uh, where we have adopted the, uh, Office of Local Government. Guidelines and, uh, it is what it is and, um. Um, as, uh, councillor Evangelitis indicated, there have been other cases where councillors and mayors have, uh. Taken defamation action and been successful and there's been other cases where they haven't been successful. Sadly, uh, depending on what the, who's making the comments, but in, in this case, there's, there's nothing we can do. Uh, it's up to the minister. The minister, I, I can tell you now, it's not gonna change it. He's in state government. He, he, uh, can get in Parliament House and, uh, say whatever he likes about anybody in the community. Uh, but, uh, if he walks out of the house, he gets caught. Uh, but there's nothing in the guidelines, as indicated in the management comment, where we're in a position to, um. Assist either councillor Evangelitis or, um, any other councillor for that matter, and I move the recommendation.
Uh, that's an amendment.
Yep.
Yeah, councillor Ring.
Um, just to go on from what councillor Tysoes was saying. Guidelines published by the Office of Local Government must be adhered to and taken into account by councils. Under section twenty-three A of the Act. We adopted, they've got guidelines for the payment of expenses and the provision of facilities for mayors and councillors in New South Wales. Specifically states that a councillor must not meet the legal cost of legal proceedings initiated by a councillor under any circumstance. If the motion was to get up, it would not be able to be legally enacted on. I understand the frustration. I've got some garbage over the years on Facebook, but councillor Tysoes is right, there is no protection. There is protection though for the people out there. If councillors are rude, offensive, aggressive, you can be held to account. And that's happening currently with a councillor Andrew Fowler of Snowy Narrow Council. He's actually had a performance improvement notice issued on him for his conduct. That would eventually, if he doesn't lift his game, he'll be suspended from council. But the whole issue of social media, regardless of what individuals in this room think of themselves. Forget the fact that you've got private accounts on Facebook, it doesn't matter. We're all councillors twenty-four seven. Any opinion you put up that relates to council is a councillor opinion. We've had councillors in here arguing on Facebook. And at one stage, arguing on the Lithgow City Council Facebook, it's not acceptable. Don't have to like each other. I don't give a hoot. I'm not here to be friends. I'm here to represent a specific segment of the community and the broader community. I'm here to, to follow my values, but we need to lift the game, ladies and gentlemen. And I do feel sorry for Tom that he's copying. Going after family or partners, that crosses the line. That's not acceptable. But unfortunately, Tom is a target. He's a target because when he ran his Facebook page, he was harsh. I'm not gonna say he's necessarily as bad as what these people were. I'm not gonna bring up anything that's happened in the past, but that created a target. The best thing to do when people are criticizing you on Facebook is to ignore them. And that can be hard. The option to every councillor in here is the E Safety Commissioner. That is the person who's got authority to act, or private legal. But we, we need as councillors maybe lift the game. And if someone wants to come and say a few harsh words to me, whatever, that's fine. Not a problem. I'm thick skin. But if you cross the line on Facebook, I'll block you. I'll delete you. If it's really offensive or defamatory, I've got no issue in referring it to a solicitor. But at the end of the day, just don't engage with them. Don't fight with each other on Facebook. We need to be better than that. That's what the community voted us in for. They want a change. They wanted a different council. They wanted us to be working together. We don't have to agree at all times. But we need to work together and at least have some basic decent humanity or respect for each other. Don't have to like the person or respect them, just we're all here trying to do our best. So, yeah, that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Any further debate on this matter? Councillor Mahoney?
Um, I'll just quickly make a comment. Anyone that's read any of my notices of motion, um. I'm often complained about being long-winded, overly technical. Um, I don't think, uh, anything I've written potentially Tom's put forward matches my writing style. Uh, the admin staff know how difficult it is to get my notices of motion through. So, um, I don't have time to write Tom Evangelitis, so I can. Put my hand on my heart and any other object that people think I should put it on. And declare that I've never written a notice of motion for Tom. Um, I support your, your, your thoughts, councillor Ring. I've always tried to value contributes. And I, and I will always try to acknowledge when another councillor brings something forward. We don't have to be disagreeable to disagree. And that principle, we're the nine best people our community thought should represent them. If anyone is seeing that some of the behaviour in the last month is the best behaviour our community is capable of. Well, I've, I've missed the memo. Um, I, I won't, the other thing is I won't criticize staff in public either. Um, that's, that's part of the power imbalance that, that I'll, I'll finish with this and I'll touch on something councillor Tysoe said. Our staff do not have a ri- right of replying to the public. People can put whatever they like up. And those people gotta wear it, their families gotta wear it. That's the work of Coward's Castle. That, that never washes with me. Um, so if anything comes on my page, and I've had comments come up that are completely inappropriate, I delete them. And I block them. So I'm, I'm happy to stand by that value. I think councillor Tysoe's talked appropriately about. Why state government isn't going to get involved, because there's parliamentary privilege at the other two levels. We don't have parliamentary privilege, so the power imbalance is turned on your local political representative and it's a free for all. Of what some of the things have been commented on, Tom, it depresses me. Doesn't make me angry. It depresses me that people behave like that. I know Tom's put himself out there in the social media world. I'm with Stephen Ring and I'm retreating pretty closely to councillor Smith that I just. Would like to disengage through social media. I think it has created a toxic mire which is distorting the public discourse and. I, I support you, Tom, in what you're trying to do, but I, I concur with the other councillors. We don't have the mechanism. Um, I've been subject to this stuff. I was involved in a community campaign, Your Rights of Work. I had my car window smashed. I had my house window smashed. I had threatening letters sent to me. I had kids who were, only came up to my hip at the time. And they'd explain why, why are people in our community doing this? And, and it's all about those inhabit the shadows of Coward's Castle. Who wanna criticize and pull people out and bully them. It's like being back in nineteen seventy-five behind the boys' toilets in primary school in Western Sydney. This stuff is rubbish. Um, people that think this is something that you applaud. And you give a thumbs up or a heart or whatever. I, I actually think it's, it's ruining public discourse and we, as councillor Ring said, we need to be better. We're the nine people that put at the helm of a significant body of public money that's been put in our trust. We need to get on with the, the, the fundamentals of council, get back to the basics and. Hopefully not spend a whole lot of time with all this diversionary stuff, but I'll leave it at that. But unfortunately, Tom. We, as an organisation, as a council, can't, as, as the two councillors are spoken to, provide. The financial support for what you are looking for.
Thank you, councillor Mahoney. Further debate on the amendment? No, I'll put the amendment, all those, oh, sorry, councillor Fredericks, I missed you. Sorry, I apologize.
Look, I can empathize with you. As you all knew, that I was a pretty big target to the point during the elections and even after becoming a councillor. I've been called pretty much everything under the sun, from neo-Nazi to fascist, you name it. It didn't just stop there. That actually bled into my kids' schooling. So I understand where you're coming from when it starts to affect your family. We all have our haters. I have one in particular that absolutely loves to rip everything apart that I do. But I'm grown up enough to not engage. I've actually blocked that person. I have nothing to do with that person. And I have a little bit of a giggle every time I know that they can't find my stuff. We can't expect council to do our legal costs. We can't expect council to have lawyers available for us. It, it's ju- it's just not possible, especially with everything we have going on. And like I said, I empathize with you. I really do. I've seen what's happened. I've been on the receiving end of it too. But, yeah, we've just gotta be the adults here and go, if you wanna be a keyboard warrior, go for it. You words have no effect because these are people that won't come up to you in the middle of the street and have a go at you. They have to do it behind their keyboard because that's the only time that they have power. So it's what I would say. Don't let them have power. I know it's easy to say, but it, it, it is.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. Is there any further debate? You have, you get to speak on the amendment? Yep.
I've got my.
Yeah, councillor Statham and then councillor Evangel- you can speak on the amendment and then councillor Statham. Councillor Statham, you go right, Tom. I mean, my evangelist speaks about what he's doing. Councillor Statham?
Uh, yes, unfortunately, in my twelve years of council, I've been sued four times. I'm about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars out of pocket. I've won all of those cases just because I told the truth. Got lots of experience about court and defamation and all kinds of things. I engaged. A very good barrister, Susan Chrysanthro, which you all know, of course, I'm sure, if you listen to any part of any T V. That somebody's getting sued, she's right at the front line. And I can honestly say it wrecked your life, but it's a great privilege to know that I wasn't found guilty. I believe that people have got out of hand on social media. I believe that it is totally out of hand and it's up to the general manager and senior executive staff. To actually send a cease and desist letter. Two warnings and there must be some way to actually stop the rot. I'm getting accused now of stealing the money from the government, buying a new car, going overseas. I've also been told that I'm corrupt. I take brown paper bags and councillor. Tom, I've gotta say that you go back and have a look what you've done to me, seriously. Yeah.
Councillor, councillor Statham and councillor Evangelitis, we won't have a debate across the chamber.
I'm not corrupt. I never have been, never will be, and I'll never send anything over a text message that could come back and bite you.
Thank you, councillor Evangelitis.
Okay, well, if I've never, ever called you corrupt, councillor Statham? I was very careful about everything I did.
Yeah, councillor Evangelitis, can we not have a commentary across each other? Just speak to the amendment that's, just speak to the matter.
Okay.
Yes, speak to the matter.
Um, I, it's, councillors have actually sent cease and desist letters. So I don't know what policy or what legislation they were working with, but they have done it. Um, I, I don't, I mean, my reason for bringing this notice of motion up was that this has to be. Out in the open, it has to be discussed. I, I know how council is gonna vote on this. I don't need anyone to pay for my legal things. I've, I've got it all sorted. I've already sought legal advice, but we needed to have this conversation. Because if someone from the community starts targeting us, forget a councillor, a staff member, how are they protected? Now, this may be this is bigger picture stuff, maybe in a few years' time, the government's gonna go, oh, actually, stuff's getting out of hand. We need to change that. Now, I've got a thick skin. I, I, um. I'm happy to be scrutinized and I'm sure me getting the towels in the wrong location will be, and that's fine. It'll make me a better councillor. I know exactly what I did in my efforts to get on council. And to hold the previous council all accountable for what I didn't like. I know that. I expect that. I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not fearful of that at all. I suppose the point, the reason I did it is I just wanted everyone to listen to what's been happening. Um, I, I, I agree with, um, councillor Statham is that. The sending of a cease and desist letter is a few hundred dollars. And that in itself is normally enough to stop people. Because they kind of go, oh, okay, serious now. Now, I can, I can send these out myself, but. You know, some people don't have the funds for that. And I'm just fearful that in the future, and it won't be me, no one's getting rid of me in the next four years. That another councillor or a staff member just will, will leave. And just think, well, and, and that gives these people power. Now, as far as ignoring things. Uh, you know, when you see a weed, you rip it out. Don't wait until it grows and grows and grows and grows. And, you know, people have to be held accountable. We're, we're in, this is the Wild West now. Ever since Matt had changed their rules. See, when I had the elections page. I was, I sat down for legal advice and they told me exactly what I can and can't do. And everyone goes, oh, you called people names? Go back. I never called any elected official a name, ever. Everything I did actually came out of their mouths. This stuff I wasn't agreeing with, but at no point. So I was, I was worried about being sued, so I was very careful. But these people now, they're not careful. And I'll, I'll deal with them. I'm not worried about that. I just really wanted this council to listen and have the conversation. And of course, I mean, you know, I don't want the, the rate paid to spend a cent on anything. But, um, you know, if these comments aren't removed and they don't stop, they're gonna have to deal with that. I really just wanted this council to listen to about what's been happening.
Thank you, Tom. Oh, councillor Evangelitis, I'll just skip the time. Look, being a councillor is not rainbows and unicorns, let's be honest. And in the reality, and the reality is that those who have different principles aren't always going to rub along. That's the reality. But I do believe that we are here, that, and we all want services to be delivered. And we're not employees. That's, that's one of the issues in regards to the mechanism. Council has employees. We're not an employee. We don't have a contract of employment. That's one of the, the problems we have and councils across this country are struggling with this issue. Like truly struggling with this issue. I believe that you need support in this space. We just don't have the mechanism to provide it. But I do wanna seek and gather advice on this. I will go out of my way to speak to the Office of Local Government and to any other council or. Representatives that I can talk to in regards to this issue, because I do wanna provide you with that support. So I think it's important that we all get support in this issue. I mean, social media has become bigger than been her. It is absolutely hectic and chaotic. And that's what it's providing, is chaos at the moment. So we do need to provide support in this space and as I said, I will find out. What more I can do for you, councillor Evangelitis. Is there any further debate on this? I'll put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Declare that. Carry, the amendment becomes the motion. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Declare that, carry. Thank you. We move on. Councillor Evangelitis, two point, uh, two. Do you have a second? Uh, councillor Mahoney seconding. Councillor Evangelitis.
Um, Lithgow Pottery holds a very important part of Lithgow's history. And pottery was one of the first industrial buildings in Lithgow and was recognised by the state before heritage listing in nineteen ninety-nine. Lithgow Pottery is known all over the world and is sought after by private collectors housing various collections, including S, our own Spank House and Sydney Powerhouse. I even understand the royal family have a few pieces in their collection. The building has also been used as a studio for talented and renowned local artists, including Bill Cunningham and Anthony Simmons. We have to take every advantage in promoting what's unique and special about Lithgow's heritage. Currently, there is no mention of the pottery on our Seven Valleys Tourism Site, which I see as a missed opportunity and quite neglectful. Whilst privately owned, the pottery has council land on two sides and actually, but almost three sides. Which can and should be kept in a fit state to attract tourists and pay respect to this wonderful historic attraction. We need attractive signage and information plaque and for council to maintain the surrounds in a pretty sustainable condition. I, I had a, um, quite a well-known Spanish photographer, um, come out to, so it's an artist I represent. Come out to, um, Lithgow just for the day and I took her around to all the attractions and. And then we went to the pottery and the kangaroos came down. It was absolutely fantastic, but it was a little bit embarrassing because the, it had been overgrown and. And, um, yeah, I, I just think that we need to sort of champion this site, um. At least have one of these information plaques and just clean up the grounds and, um, I see the management's comments and. At least have one of these information plaques and just clean up the grounds. And um I see the management's comments and. I suppose I would just like some sort of timeline of when this could happen, like I I, you know. If if we all vote in favour of having the pottery presented and and included in our tourism site. I just need some sort of timeline if that, you know.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis, can we get an answer to that, please?
Uh through yourself, uh Mayor Coleman. Uh yes, timeline wise, we're working through a redesign of the Seven Valleys. Um web page prior to the uh new rollout of marketing campaign. Uh and there are currently on the Seven Valleys uh web page. Are primarily uh members that have uh previously or currently paid up as members of the Seven Valleys. Uh uh tourism uh listed on on that page primarily as high profile sites. Uh there are some other options and also in regards to. Uh the interpretive or as you're referring to information signage. Uh as well, we are working through a programme for that, but those those that signage is probably later this year as well, cause it's been. Uh prioritised uh with existing interpretive uh signage, which is actually. At a number of other uh tourism destinations that is either perished, deteriorated. Is not actually readable due to U V and hasn't had any uh preparation, so. Uh that's under consideration as well, uh ensuring that our current signage. Is actually appropriate uh prior to the installation of new signage.
Does that satisfy councillor Evangelitis?
Uh yes, so it's at the, at the end of the year. Um and if we vote on it tonight, the pottery will be included in that um program.
Is that correct? Can we have that?
Uh it will be considered for inclusion in that program. As I said, there's only uh at the moment uh about eleven or. Just under eleven thousand dollars is allocated for uh replacement of interpretive signage. Across uh the whole L G A and uh that is quite a limited amount.
I I think maybe if we, that a hundred thousand dollars for the um the other signage that we've allocated. Maybe we can use some of that, perhaps.
Well, we'll have a look at that later, but let's get through this first. Have you finished councillor Evangelitis? Councillor Imani, you're seconding.
I'll speak briefly to this, just to support, this was a criti- or or a really important part of our. Industrial heritage, we've got just about nothing left of Lithgow pottery. Um it's on par with Bendigo pottery, it's it's probably two of the most prominent and sought after pottery in Australia. Um they make very simple pottery, but if you happen to have some of it in your. Your mother's kitchen cupboards and things, it's it's extremely valuable for um what was mass produced pottery. So I I thank councillor Evangelis for bringing it forward. Um I would note that. Some of the issues in the cleanup uh relate to our meeting our general biosecurity duty. With what was formerly known as noxious weeds, which are now priority weeds. There's also opportunities, I'll use that V word again, volunteers to help work on on council managed lands. Um but I I think we've just got to hang on to that last relic of what was a a really important industry in our town. So um yeah, I I thank you for bringing it forward, councillor Evangelitis.
Thank you councillor Imani, any further debate? Councillor Ring?
Question for you to management, please. Does the current staffing and work have capacity to go in and do some cleanup on this site now?
Can I have a um councillor, uh Mr Edgcombe?
Through you, Mayor Coleman, I would need to take this on notice. I'm not familiar with the amount of area that needs to be mown and trimmed and those sorts of things. I would think that we could likely do a one-off. But we struggle to maintain an acceptable level of service.
Okay.
For our strict fundages elsewhere in the L G A, this would just add to that workload, rather reduce the services provided elsewhere.
No, I appreciate that and your honesty. I'd actually like to move an amendment. I do support the intent.
What's the amendment?
Um, two points. Point one, that the management of council-owned lands adjacent to the Lithgow pottery. Are referred to the infrastructure committee for consideration. Point two, that the development of an interpretive sign for the pottery works is considered in the review of the location and status. Of current information on interpretive signage associated with council-owned visitor sites.
Is there a second up? I'll second it for the purpose of debate.
Thank you. As we've just been told, a one-off cleanup is not really gonna achieve anything. It's it's pointless. However, you've you've got the whole pottery site where you've got the art house or the coffee and the art. We've got land on either side of it. We need to look at other options and be smarter of how we manage that land. Is there capacity for a volunteer program there? Is there capacity to talk with the L S Es of the art house? To actually take on a nominal lease of that land to maintain. We need to look at some of those options for a long-term solution. We we need a long term, not not just a one-off. What, and. My concern is if we commit to doing this, something else won't get done, then we'll have some of those complaining, some will come back and want. Um it is an extremely important site. And in terms of the interpretive signage, there are other avenues available for grant funding that can be done that could put signage onto the land. That we are. And I think that any um project being undertaken by the staff should be looking at grant opportunities. Particularly for the New South Wales Heritage Office for heritage interpretive signs. So that that's basically why I put those amendments up.
Thank you councillor Ring. Uh hang, I've just seconded it, so I'd like to ask some questions if that's okay. So is there other options in regards to volunteers or another organisation cleaning it or. In regards to what councillor Ring is actually referring to? Can we get some advice on that, please? Yeah, as soon as I get this answer, then you can have your say.
Through you, Mayor Coleman, absolutely. Um we would need to deliver a. Scope of work so that we know what we're engaging the volunteers to do and conduct a risk assessment to make sure it's being done safely. But we also have an agreement with the Conal Correctional Facility, which could also be used to. Uh provide the service at no cost to the council.
Thank you . Thank you, councillor Statham.
I agree with um Mr Edgcombe. We can sign an M O U as we've done before with the Kirkconnell Prison Farm. We can also go to the jail and sign an M O U. I I absolutely condone um. Uh councillor Evangelist's um idea of first impressions, it's very important. Whether it's in the main area of town or whether it's on the end of the highway. First impressions are everything and I think there's a way out that uh we can possibly engage. One of those uh companies or businesses, it's probably not a business to jail, but. Engage them to come and do the work that our council staff are unable to do due to a heavy workload with lots of raining in Lithgow. I think I'd like to see councillor Ring add that to his, a councillor Ring that's put the amendment.
So you're supporting that amendment with that change? Councillor Ring, are you?
Yeah, I think volunteers as in the prison farm and.
I don't I don't care where they come from, volunteers .
Well, I think it's, they're all, they're already um have insurance, they don't have to sign. Or do any other thing but to turn up with their machinery. I think it'd be a great way out.
So that's, you're all right with council, that that's included. Councillor Statham, that's, you're happy with that?
Yes.
Any further debate on the amendment?
I've got a question.
Yes, councillor Tassus .
Can I just give clarification on what land we're talking about here? Because I understood that. The pottery estate was privately owned and the land around it is privately owned by someone else, which is a. If I'm staying correct.
Yeah, that's very good.
He's a former uh councillor.
Yes, yeah, that's a good question. Can we have that clarified, please?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. I'm I'm happy to take that on notice and get a map to the councillors as to.
With respect.
I can, I can answer it.
Can I just get some, let's just calm down? Could you please explain? So, Mr Elwood, can you just go through that, please?
Uh yes, through self, uh Mayor Coleman, there is is uh an aerial photograph. Uh in the attached in the business papers uh with that land that's in reference uh shaded out. Uh there is a council-owned uh section. Uh the dimensions uh I'd be guessing at uh based on scale, but. Uh let's say it's seven or eight metres out uh from the boundary fence on the uh. The southern and uh eastern uh boundaries of pottery.
Oh, it's up there, can you go ?
Here you go.
It's on your screen.
It's on, so this is from the business papers. Yeah, so it's that area sort of in a bit of an opaque um yellow light green as opposed to a dark green.
Okay, are you satisfied with that, councillor Tassus?
Well, I'm I'm not sure what we need to do with it. I mean, it's got nothing to do with the pottery from where I sit.
It's own land, is it land-owned? My understanding it's. It's own can, so it is actually owned by us, so, yeah. And that's what you're referring to, isn't it, councillor? Yeah, so. Could you please put your microphone on? Councillor Goodman, I can't hear you.
Sorry, it is council-owned land there and I've driven past it uh a week or so ago and it's um. It's totally overgrown at the front. Um it certainly needs to be cleaned up at some point.
Thank you, so it is counselling. Okay, any further debate on the amendment? Alright, I'm gonna put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Declare that carried, the amendment becomes the motion. All, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, we move on. Thank you.
Uh just quickly, ma'am, because of the late hour, I am willing for my nomination to be put into the next set of business papers. Just to try and cut down some time tonight.
That's fine, you can move back to your next. So what's your two point?
Two point seven.
Yeah, okay, we'll move that to the next meeting, so we'll defer that to the next meeting. Um I think the terminal on G is, do I need to move it for that? No, it's just deferred. Yeah, uh. Two point four is yours, councillor Tassus, I believe. Uh two point three, sorry, is councillor Evangelitis. Sorry, back to you.
Uh can I just make an amendment to the recommendation?
Point, two point three?
Two point three, yes.
Yep.
Says here um move person to another owned parcel of council-owned land or suggestive. Or suggested alternative, so um. To another council-owned parcel of land in between that or a suggested alternative.
So you're changing that?
Well, yeah, just adding a little bit there.
Okay, is there a second up? Councillor Fredericks, councillor Evangelitis?
Okay, so um. Well, we've had this illegal camper there for a long time. I went down there. We all got an email about an altercation and and um, you know, it's a beautiful facility down at the hockey. And I know that land next to it used to be a caravan park that was gifted to the council to be used for sporting, you know, related things. I I mean, this this has been going on a long time. This is, and I I I understand the the. The difficulty and the concerns of everything and how hard it is, but surely the responsibility has to lay with us. I mean, we're here, the state government isn't here. Um our rate payers are the ones dealing with it. I mean, the guy's got a dog there. I couldn't get close to it. Um we we just, we have to be strong with this type of matter because. Next minute, there's another ten people there and then twenty. Imagine trying to deal with moving them. Um I think we really need to take a direct course of action with this. Now, I've read all the management comments and, you know, I'm happy with everything. Once again, I just need to know a timeline because. I I don't want this to happen, take a year. Um the the problem is now. So um could I ask, like, is there a timeline on when these things might happen?
Yep, so we can have, yes, councillor Evangelitis, um.
Uh through yourself, uh Mayor Coleman. Uh yes, there is a timeline. Uh with there are requirements and notices that have been served and are being served on the in individual. At this stage, uh our first uh points of action are next week, where there's potential. For removal of the items and individual uh being required to to leave. Our main course of action at present is to work with the other agencies, such as Department of Community and Justice. Uh to try and uh where we can, look at alternative locations uh that are suitable. Uh for the individual to uh want to move to. Uh that is one of our main issues is forcing forcing them to move to another location. Uh we do have control and ability to manage uh items. Uh that are on council land, uh which is different to the individual themselves. So our current uh plans that we have in place uh for uh actions uh likely next week.
Thank you, Mr Eldred. Thank you, councillor Evangelitis, are you finished?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that's fantastic news, thank you.
Councillor Fredericks?
I understand the whole point to this. It was an argument that broke out in front of children. Children do frequent there. Frequent that area very often, especially during hockey seasons. Um, look, unfortunately, this is going to become commonplace. We are going to see an increase in homelessness and things like that. I think that we do need to be cautious on how we approach it. Cause we don't want to make it look like we just want to get rid of the problem. A- as long as we're going through the appropriate procedures and trying to get these people help. I'm all for it. It's just, I I don't want it to, uh. What happened to us is they threw them all on the train and we were the last stop. And that's how other electorates and that have handled the situation. I don't want us to do that.
Thank you councillor, councillor Ring?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but um I have been accused that this island brought out the socialists in me, so be it. But I I do have amendments to put up. Um amendment one is note the actions being undertaken by the administration to manage homeless persons. At Glenmire Park. Two, that council establish as a priority a homeless interagency working group. The other two points I'd like to put, if someone would like to second it.
Is there a second up?
I'll second that.
Um thank you councillor Fredericks, but. This is not a new issue. I I I understand the concerns of the parents. Homelessness is not a city is- issue. There are large numbers of people homeless who are living in our community and have been for a number of years now. They're people sleeping rough, under bridges, down at the shade ground, creeks, up in the bush. They're also camping in cars. A couple of years ago, I was aware of a woman and kids sleeping at Lake Wallace. Couch surfing was quite prevalent, still prevalent in our community with teenagers and other people. Too many families in one dwelling, that is a form of homelessness. And it particularly affects Indigenous community members in our community, where you may have four or five families living in one building. People travel the trains. They know at night they're safe on the train, there's a guard, they'll sleep. They'll come up here in the warmer months, some of them will disappear during winter. And there's a lot of reasons for it, mental health, domestic violence. And it's not easy to move a person on. There are New South Wales government protocols. For dealing with people in public places. They also have um implementation guidelines. It gives these people rights. Now, we had this experience, I wasn't on council at the time. Uh with the person who was squatting in Cook Street Plaza. He moved on eventually when he accepted. Accommodation. They eventually got him to accommodation. You can't force it. You've got to work with the agencies. At that time, there was an interagency committee. I don't know what happened to it, it just seemed to, cause I was on it with the chamber, it just sort of died off. I think we need to reinvigorate that, whether or not it's done through the Health Working Party or whatever, but we need to be proactive. And we we need to ensure that our staff act appropriately. It's no different for the police, the protocol for homeless people applies to the police. And they're gonna be respectful in their dealings with those people. If they commit crimes or they threaten people, then the police can be called. But with the person in Cook Street Plaza, there were a lot of threats allegedly made, police weren't called. So I I think we just need the staff are working on it. I mean, I understand councillor Fredericks, uh sorry, councillor Evangelitis. And uh community members wanting a timeline, but this is not a project we put a fine timeline on. We need to work through the process and the government protocols. That's why I think it's critical.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. You've spoken before, you nearly said the, do you wanna speak again? You have that right. Yeah, you basically said, yeah, 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 that's fine. Do you want, so you wanna speak against the amendment?
Um we can, we can do all of that later. I I think the community are just fed up now. Um I I I always put myself in other people's shoes. I I don't want my daughter going there and. Something, a dog attacking her. Like, you know, this, this could happen anytime, any day. So, I commend management on dealing with it next week, for the future, I definitely agree with, um, councillor Ring. But this particular problem has been going on for too long, we need to deal with it now, the community reached out to us. I went down there, we just have to anticipate that something bad, this guy's known to police, it's not like he's a, you know. A fun-loving sort of nature man or something like, this is a problem, it's an issue, um, we need to deal with this now. Then, for the future, yeah, go, go nuts, but I, I, I just want to encourage, I, I don't want to, um. Vote for this amendment, I want my original one to go forward, the council are on it, the management are on it, which I think is great.
Thank you, any further, councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, Mayor Coleman, I just wanted to ask firstly, um. That I don't, I, I don't think that this recommendation that councillor Evangelitis put up. Um, is actually legal, um, to reallocate homeless people, um, I think we can. Uh, deal with homeless people in another way other than.
Would you like it ma'am, sorry councillor Goodwin, would you like an answer on that?
I, I would, actually, if it's legal.
If that's okay, are you happy to, yeah, councillor?
Uh, through you Mayor Coleman, um, I considered the recommendation when as, as assessing. Notices and motion and the staff reports for the business paper, um. My, my thoughts in considering the legality of the recommendation is that councillor Evangelitis has put. The Lithgow City Council take every measure, so, um, that is rather broad, um. So I, I took that as, I, I have declared it to be a legal, um, motion.
But moving homeless is a different.
Yeah, uh, what I wanted to say about is, as police, our policy is not to approach homeless people with the sole purpose of moving them on. Um, we can, we can approach people, which we do in the community every day, uh, for community engagement. Um, and we can go and, and talk to homeless people, and talk to anybody if we want, um, if they want to talk back to us, they can, they don't have to, um. If police become aware that this person that's in the community is, is causing an offence or. Doing something illegal, we, we can or we may take action against that person, um. I see homelessness is a social issue that involves all of us, not just police, it involves, um. You know, all of the a- agencies that, that we rely on to, um, to help these people out. Who have somehow become homeless, um, so I think that's the way we need to deal with it through these committees, so. I, I'll support this, um, rather than moving them on, it might take just that little bit of time, but if we do it properly like we did. We come up with strategies that we could do, and I was on that committee, uh, with the, the homeless person in Main Street. We came up with strategies that we were able to, uh, coerce him to move. Um, but we weren't, we weren't actually moving him on, so maybe that might be a strategy, and I think that's the way we're going.
Yeah, so are you supporting the amendment councillor Goodwin, so what you're saying, sorry, yeah, clarification, councillor Statham?
Um, yes, it was my unfortunate position that I had to, uh, be one of the ones that decided what was going to occur. With the gentleman that was down near the plaza, or in the main street rather. Difficult decisions, what, how to sort of get around somebody that didn't really want to talk to you. A lot of the shop owners were really disgusted that we couldn't do anything, uh. In a manner that they thought they could, I think in the end, the police came a couple of times. Uh, he was challenged a couple of times, in the end, you have to be. Uh, able to ring those agencies and they have to come in and really take care of what is the easiest. Uh, way without people who care about other people saying we didn't do it properly, it's a very delicate situation, I might say.
Thank you, if there's, is there any further debate on the amendment, no, I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, the amendment becomes the motion, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Two point four?
Thank you mayor, I move the recommendation that council develop proposals and or business plans towards seeking either state or federal government grant funding. Through our respective state member for to, or the newly elected. Federal member for major building upgrades to Lithgow City Council's visitors information centre, also known on Google as. The Seven Valleys Visitors Information Centre Lithgow, and adjoining car park, including the possible addition of a mining themed. Major art mural surrounding the hole or the western side of the centre in a major upgrade. Uh, slash spruce up of the miners lamp, I move that recommendation.
Thank you, second up, is there a second up? Councillor Fredericks?
Thank you councillor Tassus.
Thank you, in moving the recommendation, I welcome the service review on our local tourism, uh, mentioned in the management comment, um. Because this visitor centre is nearly reaching twenty years, uh, from what I've been able to understand, I remember it going up when I was on council. Uh, but I think we need to be, as they say, shovel ready for any pending federal or state government grants that may come our way for either major or minor. Building and or traffic parking upgrades, including the, uh, a, a major art mural that. Might surround the hole or the western side of the centre, uh, it's more about being ready so that we don't have to go and do all this. When, uh, these grants come out, because the timeframe for getting something in is always very narrow. Uh, clearly, this is going to need a, uh, an upgrade of some sort, uh, on the highway there. And it's, uh, possible that we're ready to go in case something pops up. Where we can hand it to the state or federal member for any sort of grant funding that might be available.
Thank you councillor Tassus, councillor Fredericks, do you have any further to add, as the second up?
Well, uh, I've lost track of how many times someone's come into town and then they posted on, oh, I've stopped at the miners lamp. Why it didn't sell coffee, i- it's little things like that, they say something huge like that and they automatically think. There'd be a cafe or something near it, it could be, uh, um, what do you call it, a stop revive survive spatch. Like, there's a lot of things that we could do with that area, and if the grants become available, I say we jump out of it. We're, we're trying to push tourism.
Thank you, any further debate councillor Evangelitis, and I think councillor Statham and then councillor Goodwin, so who wants to go first? Councillor Evangelitis?
Um, yeah, no, we should definitely be ready for grants, I, I, I don't think having a mural on the western side is the way to go. Um, you'd have to render the wall, which would be very expensive, um, people use it for advertising their events, so. Having artwork behind would clash, I was actually thinking of a digital billboard there that we could use for, um. Any event in town and also, um, lease out for local businesses would be a better use of the space, so that way. There doesn't have to be, um, several banners, um, and that image can rotate. But yeah, apart from that, I mean, I, I think, yeah, we should definitely be ready, and if it needs a revamp, I personally don't think it needs a revamp, um. But I, I, yeah, I don't think doing a, a, a painting on that side, um, I think it'll look messy, I think the design. Um, it would alter the effect of the design, but definitely we should be ready, um, for any potential grants, yeah.
Thank you, uh, councillor Statham?
Um, I'm just wondering whether councillor Tassus would add a point, I believe that, uh, first impressions again are very important. And I think that the worst thing about the visitor centre without any doubt whatsoever is the way the signage is. Nobody can see it, I don't know how this been, not been dozens of accidents, they need to turn it so that people can see it as they go past. If you go and have a look at it, I've fought for this for ten years, it is very dangerous in the situation where it's placed. It's placed against, it needs to be turned out so both sides can see it, it's appalling.
You're talking about the, um, the neon sign?
Yeah, the sign to tell people what's on.
The black thing against the wall, that says what the show is.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, you can't see the thing.
No, no, it's very dangerous and I've asked, haven't I?
More reason to, more reason to have a mural.
Pardon?
Reason to have a mural.
I think the idea that, uh, councillor Vend- Vendelissis has suggested is also a great idea. In terms of a board with what is on, we're always going to put one in Cook Street Plaza, but, you know, there's always been things that have had priorities.
Councillor Statham, can I just ask, um, in regards to what you were saying in regards to the notice board? And you've raised this several times, can I get a answer to why that that's not able? Like, has that been brought to council, has it gone through a council committee, sorry to interrupt, but I want an answer.
Community development.
Can we find out, like, cause I want to understand where that actually hap- what happened with that?
I think it was the expense of changing the signage, can we get a response for that?
Through you Mayor Coleman, that was, that was the extent of it, when we started thinking about whether the sign was best placed. Where it is, we started thinking about whether the sign is as big as it needs to be, and whether it's displaying relevant information. Whether it's the right type of sign, whether it's bright enough, a whole bunch of different things, and we figured that. If we were going to go down this path, we would likely need to look at a completely different type of sign, something. Larger, something that's able to display multiple colours, that can be rented out, as councillor Evangelitis was mentioning a second ago, so. Um, I think that something can be done with that wall, um, but we need to think about what our strategy is, what we're trying to achieve, and what technology best suits the purpose.
Thank, I just wasn't sure, I wanted a background, I hope you didn't mind, um, are you, sorry, continue, sorry councillor Statham, were you finished or?
To your town, where, wherever it is, is so important, it determines whether people are going to stop or, or stay. Stop, s- you know, continue on their journey or stop, and I think what, um, councillor, um. Fredericks has suggested, you know, people can't even buy an ice cream there, they can't buy a cup of coffee. I don't understand that, I've never been to it, even out at, um, Gundigo, and that you go into the information session and buy. Even if it's cheap coffee, it doesn't matter, like, people have travelled a long way and if they've got a caravan on, they want to pull up there where it's an excellent area to pull up. And go in and get something to eat and then look at the maps, I think we've got to seriously think of how we can make more money, and the more money we can make, the. The better we can make that area look, because most people have got caravans, even big trucks going through. You know, they can't get across that road to go to McDonald's very easily because everybody else is doing the same thing, we need to make it more inviting without spending a lot of money.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin?
Um, I was wondering if, um, councillor Tassus would be up for a very minor change as an amendment. Um, just removing the word addition of a mining theme, just the removal of the word mining. And just leave it as, as themed, cause, uh, and the reason I ask that is because we've got lots of. Um, great things in Lithgow, flora fauna, to showcase our area, Hassan's Walls awkward. Copper tippling butterfly, glow worms, the wall my pine, we could incorporate any of that stuff into it, so. I, I think driving into a mining, everyone knows we're a mining town, I know that there's, the, the, the actual. Building looks like something out of a mine, but I don't want to go down the, the path of. Um, advertising our, our town as a dirty coal mine, if you know what I mean.
Are you happy to do that?
Quite happy with it, I'm, I'm only, um, uh, pushing that only on the basis of the, um. The miners lamp, and there is a miners', uh, memorial next, next to it if you, in the park there, so that's the reason for it.
Um, but you're happy to change it councillor Tassus?
Well, that, that's up to whatever the project is, I'll just take the word mining out.
Yeah, so can we take that out, please? Councillor Evangelitis, oh, hang on, you've spoken, I'm sorry, I'll have to, councillor Ring?
Yeah, um, I think it's very premature, we've got a service review being done. You've had a number of different ideas put up, I actually think we should wait till there's a service review. Um, the service review is going to look at the efficiency of the operation, what needs to change, things change, coffee, they've tried coffee there. You've got McDonald's, you've got Hungry Jacks, you've got K F C. Um, it's not actually bringing people into the town off the highway, we do get people from Bell's Line Road, but even that's problematic. They go down Mort Street and then straight out to the highway, they're not coming down Main Street. Um, so, I'm going to throw up an amendment that the proposal for a major mural upgrade of the miners lamp. Isn't, is deferred until the tourism service review is completed.
Is there a second up councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring?
Yeah, but I, I, I agree with councillor Tassus and Principal that we should be. Ready for projects coming up, but if we're doing a service review, we, we need to see the outcome of that. What's the best way to run the service centre, there are councils now that have gotten rid of them, it's all digital. I don't know if that's a good option, it's not a great location where it is, if any of us, if that was a vacant block now and any of us decided we wanted to build something there. You wouldn't get approval for it, it was a political decision over twenty years ago to build it. That's the reality, what we need to look at is how best use the limited resources we've got moving forward. And that includes having staff work on proposals that, once this service review is completed. Might say, no, we, we want to go in exactly a different op- direction. What do we want, do we want a mural, I like the idea of a mural, particularly what councillor Goodwin was talking about, signage. There are problems with signage, we're like, how well it's seen, size, R M S or Transport from New South Wales requirements, what are they? There are problems with caravans pulling off the highway, they go up there, they do go up there, I know that. Is the parking up there adequate, I'm not even sure we actually own the land up there for the parking, I believe. That's a lease for, um, transport from New South Wales, uh, Mr H Kim's chasing E Z, so we need to liaise with them as well. We've also got the, um, Astrid Railway Station there and the other building, I can't think of its name, it's late at night, um. They're not being utilised, can they be utilised within this as well, I don't know, but I think we need to have a clear understanding of where we're going moving forward.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Evangelitis?
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, ma- maybe can it come in front of the tourism committee? Like, I, I, I think we just need to.
Add that councillor Ring?
Look, I, I don't have a problem with going to the, the tourism committee.
Like, can we add another point?
I can go as another point, yeah.
Are you happy with that, any bit councillor Evangelitis?
Yes, yes.
Still continue speaking to it?
Um, yes, I'm happy with that.
Sorry, any further debate on the amendment?
You speak against the amendment.
Yep, and then councillor Tassus?
I'll go back to the original motion, the reality is, it's, it's, and the management comments are there, uh, so. It just follows the process that it goes through on the basis that we're just going to develop it as we go through with the service review, I, I mean. I don't need to put the word service review in there, uh, the reality is that, you know, it, yeah, moving forward, we're just going to develop proposals and things, so. Uh, uh, um, and or business plans towards it, now that will come out of the service review. Uh, the thing, I mean, otherwise, we're never going to get anything done, we're never going to be ready. And, um, we're going to wait for a review that, I don't know how long's a review, how long's a piece of string, it's going to be obviously years. Uh, by the time we get anything back to council, and then we've missed opportunities, so I mean, there could be a mural grant that comes up all of a sudden. But we need something in, ready to go if that happens, I mean, we've seen what the murals have done around town recently with the workmen's club and. And various other places, um, you've got to be ready, um. To me, I, I didn't know anything about the service review and we've got the Seven Valleys coming on, how long's that been going on? I mean, the reality is, we're, we're just going to wait and wait, we need to have a resolution to do something about something. And that's what this is doing, I, I, I don't see what the problem is, the review, the, your review's in the background, so be it. But we need to develop something to get it ready.
Councillor Amani, you wish to speak?
Uh, very briefly ma'am, um, I totally agree with the fairness. Um, approach that councillor Tassus is suggesting, um, so I support that. But we just need to be clear, the content is the, I think is the only point of difference. And, and how we use that precinct, so, um. I, I'm, I'm not going to offer any amendments or, or things, I'm, I'm happy to, to wait on the service review, but the principle. That councillor Tassus is putting forward is we need to be ready to take the opportunities, and yes, I agree. The, the, uh, street art has been a significant improvement in our town over recent time, so, um, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, I have a question, service review, when is that due, when are we doing that, so let's get some clarification on that, perhaps? Can someone answer me? Mr Eldred?
Uh, we, yes, through yourself, uh, Mayor Coleman, uh, we're currently finalising, uh, the role description. Uh, for a service review coordinator, uh, which will under, who will coordinate a range of service reviews, not just, uh. The tourism review, uh, for the services through council, so that's the first piece. Uh, the second one is, we can, uh, and are scheduling, uh, some service reviews to commence. Uh, without that role being appointed, because we are unsure when that'll happen, uh, and prioritising which of those will be, so we need to, we. Are unable at this stage to specifically give a timeframe, because we need to prioritise, uh, which are the, uh, service reviews that we'll be commencing with first off. So initially, uh, I'd say, once. So initially, uh, I'd say, once again, coming back to similar comment I made before. Um, probably within the next twelve months for the tourism service review, that's the intent.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Evangelis, you're asking a question? Are you speaking on the, or you've seconded, you've spoken? No, unfortunately, you can ask a question. Ask a question.
Can, can, uh, I'm, I'm happy to support councillor Tyhurst, but can you? Just defer the mural part? That's the only part I know is gonna be problematic. So that's my question. Can you? Ref, um, defer the mural part of your notice of motion? Just that part?
Uh, no, I don't think it needs to because it's just part of a, a business plan. It may form part of the business plan, it may not.
Okay.
It's, it's all in the, it's all in the mix. Uh, the car parts in the mix, this is in the mix. Um, if, if the mural doesn't work out, so be it, um, but we're not, we're not pushing for it, but if, if there was money for a mural. Okay, we've got a, we've got a site for it or we haven't, you know, and we can put it out and work out what we wanna do.
Thank you. Any further commentary? I'll put the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? The amendment's lost. We go back to the original motion. Happy for me to put it, councillor Tassus? I'll put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Two point six, is it? No, two point five, sorry.
Thank you, mayor. I, 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 um.
Is there a second to councillor Tassus? Councillor Fredericks, thank you. Please speak to your motion.
Thank you. I move the recommendation that council change their, uh, current fund rules for the, of the Lithgow City Council's Merrill Relief Fund. So as to assist, uh, on a non-judgmental basis, its fellow committee members, who as a result of. Uh, any other severe or tragic incident, local bushfire, flooding, house fire, serious medical, motor vehicle accident, an active god incident, et cetera. Find themselves in necessitous financial circumstances. Mayor, I've, I've indicated in the report on pages fifteen and sixteen. In fairly, um, big detail, um, that the proposed fund rules. Um, what they currently do and that sort of thing. I mean, we haven't had a bushfire since, so it's never been used. I mean, the, the reality is. Um, after the two thousand and nineteen, if I stand corrected, I think it took some time to get it. To get it back up and running into a different state. And then what happens is, you then lose the momentum. You have to have it available. When these things happen, otherwise, um, people wanna donate in the first week or two, but they certainly won't donate. Anytime thereafter that, so, uh, there, there are times when. And, and I really get quite annoyed with, uh, when I see a, a GoFund page that starts up within hours of. Uh, some sort of tragic incident or something like that. And we know that there are fees and we don't, we don't know who controls the GoFund page. Uh, we don't know where the money ends up with that sort of thing. And this is just a very simple way, uh, where it comes back to the mayor. Uh, to decide, uh, whether to enact it or not because it's her fund or it's the Merrill fund. And the reality is that, um, we can start straight away, um, whether it's a week or two, depending on the incident. Uh, the money goes in, it's passed, um, across to, uh, Savinsa De Paul or Salvos or. Another charity and it's up to them how they, how they disperse the, uh, how they disperse all the monies and so on. Uh, uh, that's. Uh, I, I don't wanna decide who gets what. I just want, I, I'm looking at the council just doing it and then providing that to. Uh, the charities to then work out where that goes and then they have control over it. Um, I note with the financial implications, the, uh. It's suggested that we'd need to advise council on service cuts required to implement any resolution. As I said, no fun, honestly, I don't, I don't know what financial things you're talking about because the staff are already at the front counter. The bank account's already open, um, and it goes in and goes out and it's shifted across back to. I, I, I'm not sure, that, that, there should not be a whole complicated system of what we wanna do. It should be very simple. To, to, to do this process where it's open for a week. They come into the front counter, they pay the money, they donate. Uh, a week later it's closed, see you later. Anything else after that, that's not our problem. It's just a very simple exercise. And a very urgent exercise where it can be initiated fairly well straight away, uh, and we can put it out there that it's done. Um, because the community demands it, um, and, and as, as I said, I've given circumstances where it is. Uh, I, and they're for charitable reasons anyway, but we're giving it to a charity to then look after whoever it might be, whether it's a family, an adult, a child. Um, uh, I remember, um, when I first got on council, when the, I think it was about two thousand and one, I think. There was the Bali, uh, bombing over in Bali and, uh, we proposed a three thousand dollar grant to, I, I think it was three thousand dollars. For the Bali appeal and so on and, but we need something local and, look, it, it's, it's gotta be simple, it's gotta be very basic. But it's, you know, it's only there for a week so that, a- after a week, no one really wants to donate, they fall off fairly quickly. But I, I really think we need to control who, where those GoFundMe pages go and we, you know, there, there would be times where. I think, um, as a mayor, you, you'd be making those decisions. And it's a generous thing for us to do for the community, I think. Because it's already there and whether it's a bushfire or a flood or something else, we can, uh, act straight away. It might be something down in some of the villages where we. We can't get down there and we need to do some sort of an appeal from the people from Lithgow to help out our fellow. Our fellow members of the public that have, uh, been inundated with something there. So, I, I move the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Fredericks?
But it is what it is. It's pretty self-explanatory of what they're trying, of what Martin's trying to aim to do. Sorry, I'm getting really tired.
We all are, but that's okay. We'll soldier on. Is there any further? Yes, I've got councillor Statham, sorry, and then councillor Ring. Councillor Statham?
Uh, yes, the Merrill Relief Fund was set up, uh, when I was mayor in two thousand and nineteen after the horrific bu- bushfires. Uh, the recommended motion would necess, uh, would have to be, it'll have to be rewritten. Uh, there's new rules with the taxation, the A T O. And many other factors that come into this. But I was actually asked on Australia Day, what happened to the five thousand dollars? A particular company from Hartley, where did that money go? I said, oh, I've forgotten all about it, I don't know. So I'd like you to look into that. I can tell you what company it was.
Would you like to send that through too?
Yes, I will, um, I will. So I think, you know, it's good to have some money for something that, uh, is a disaster. That people might need a, a accommodation overnight or something. I think there's got to be a fairly streamlined, um. And factual so that it's very clear that the public can get online and see how much is in that funding. I think it's a, a necessity in one way. We seem to be prone to disasters. And I remember very clearly in two thousand and nineteen that there were people that, there was too many people at the workmen's club. They wanted accommodation. They had to go out to Portland. So I think it's well worthwhile having something like this. Not, it won't get used very often, but it might only be a couple of thousand dollars that it keeps three of our families together at night.
Thank you. Um, councillor Ring?
Um, I'm not gonna support the motion. I have no amendments. Um, but at the end of the day, I was there when we established this, twenty nine and fires. There may have been something prior to that, but it was changed in twenty nineteen, twenty, so it could be a continuous. Account with, I think it may be, and with the, the charity numbers all set up so it could be activated during. A natural disaster, not after it, but as soon as a natural disaster is declared, we can do it. Um, on page sixteen of eighty-eight, um, councillor Tysest writes that he, he believes that it's serious. That the rule seriously restricts our generous rate pays from donating in a event of an emergency, it doesn't. This community is very generous. When there's a, a child that's sick, that's got a particular rare illness, this community bands together. But councillor Tysest is talking about applying this money to traffic accidents, house fires. I, I'm sorry, but the first thing that a lot of people are, what about their insurance? I'm s- I'm sorry, but no, I can't support it. We, we developed this for major disasters. I think it's. The best and most appropriate use. I don't believe that we should be raising money to hand over the charities. They're gonna be raising money. We shouldn't be doing the hard work, so they get the credit. And let's be honest, the twenty nine and fires was a major charity that withheld a lot of money. For quite a lot of time until they were embarrassed. So, no, I don't support it.
Thank you. Any further commentary on this or further debate? Councillor Amman?
Uh, I sort of sit somewhere, uh, along where, where councillor Ring is sitting. I, I s- support a perpetual fund. The perpetual fund, as long as we've got clear restricted. Assets and we can put it somewhere, um, it is very useful to have it to initiate if something happens. So, I know from personal experience, people were getting delivered generators and were getting delivered fresh water with. Where people have become isolated during the fires. Um, it gives council a, an emergency response capacity that may be. Useful, um. I am unclear at the parameters of where accident, so medical. Uh, things happen and, and how we determine that. So that, that's, that's probably the only part that I'm struggling with. Um, but I, I, I think it's a useful thing to have in place. And we are particularly prone to natural disasters. We live on the western edge of the Blue Mountains Plateau. People at Clarence Bell and Dargan, even though Bell's not in our area. Uh, are exposed to very high risks from fires. Um, the Lithgow Valley floor. Presents a whole lot of flooding issues for residents. So those natural disasters, when they are declared, section forty-four events and so on. Um, that's when we need to activate those funds to have a direct response to the people in need, um. It was interesting with funding being collected that I don't know whether everything went to the people that needed it when they needed it. Um, so I'd like to think that we can go into remote areas and immediately start when people have lost power. Get generators, get fuel, get water, all the things they need. I, my understanding was of the. Megalong landslide, there was a fund developed, we saw food helicoptered in because people couldn't get out, so. It was very ba- much about material responses to a disaster, so the, the only bit I'm, I'm struggling with is. The inclusion of medical and motor vehicle accidents and how we determine which. Where the threshold is and where, where it arrived and when we make those decisions. So, I can't support that, but I'm, I'm. Happy with the remainder of.
Thank you. Any further debate on this matter? I have issues with this. I think it's got too many hairs on it. Um, councillor Statham. Advised, you mentioned, um, the taxation department, we don't know where it sits with that. Um, we don't know, yeah, I, I have real issues with it. I think what we've got in place is, is acceptable. So I won't be voting for this either. Any further debate? Uh, all right. Write a reply, councillor Tassus?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I have to disagree with you. Um, this is, this is a Merrill Relief Fund that does nothing. It hasn't been used since nineteen. It does nothing. In respect of what councillor Ring was talking about, I've indicated in the recommendation a non-judgmental basis. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I don't know where, where we got on to the issues of, uh, generators and accommodation, all that sort of thing. This is a cash only, cash only, or money only, uh. Appeal. You don't, we're not asking for anyone to donate anything other than money. So that it can be done from bank accounts or at the front counter. Uh, and then it's, it's distributed to a charity to organise anyway. Um, the Blue Mountains Council, um, I think, I don't know whether it was nineteen, it might have been the one before that. It, it was ready to rock and roll with an appeal and it got over three and a half million dollars within, within a very short period of time. And I think at the same time, we were lucky to get sixty thousand dollars because we were, took too long. Uh, the whole thing was over and done with by the time we got A R S up and running, tried to get approvals and so on. Uh, what we have here, is, this is not a fund that, that, I mean, it's doing nothing. And all we're looking at is that when some situation comes up, um, in regards to, um. Uh, a tragic incident or, you know, a, a child that might need, uh, some, it needs an operation, for example, to, to do, to go somewhere. We see them all the time. They're on television and so on. That might be one of ours that we need to support. And what we're looking at here is that we can use this straight away. We don't have to do anything. There's no dodgy anything about it because we're the public entity that's going to do it. You get these GoFundMe pages and we've got people that have got, they've got control of the money, whoever said, whoever jumps in first gets control of the money. And people donating good faith, I want them to donate in good faith here, non-judgmental, money only. And we give it to the Salvos or Savinsa De Paul to give to them. That, once, that's it. We, we, we don't need to do anything with it. What they do with it, how they sort it out with the family is their business. So, the, you're gonna end up with a situation where something happens in this community. And this will not be able to be used for that particular purpose. And, and we have things, we have, we have children that, you know, need operations and. Need sixty or seventy thousand dollars and the community wants, and then someone comes up with a, a GoFundMe page where half of it goes missing or it doesn't get to the. desired person. You're gonna need this sooner or later. If you don't do it, that's fine, but. Somewhere along the track, you're gonna need it and we're ready to rock, we're, we're ready to put it into place. Straight away because an appeal's made to the mayor, to the council, public, here we go, let's do something about it. Non-judgmental. Non-judgmental and the money after a period, a short period of time goes to one of the major charities to help the family out. Can't do any more than that.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? That was write a reply. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We move on?
Uh, mayor, I'm gonna move that, uh, we defer the rest of the meeting to an extraordinary meeting.
Uh. That means another meeting.
And we could be here for another hour and a half to two hours.
I'm so, I'm gonna have to second that because it's eleven thirty. Uh, quite a few of you have to travel out of town. All right, so, uh, you don't need to debate it, it's just procedural. So you're moving that we move this on to, to an extraordinary meeting? All right.
We find out if there's anything urgent from the management?
We, yeah, so let's, I mean, that's probably the best thing to do. Two point six, well, that's, that's not urgent, I don't think, but. Uh, I, sorry, councillor Tassus, but we do need to do, ca- can we do some? We need to get the business of council done, which is on the bottom part of this. So we need to at least get some of that done, councillor Ring. So before we defer it, let's go and I'll come back to you. I need, we need to get some business of council done. So can we move some in exception? So, let's look at. Uh, let's look at, um. Where we go from, uh, the nominations of five point two, five point three, five point four. Five point five, five six, five ten, five eleven. Five thirteen, five fourteen.
Oh, five fourteen's been moved to.
Okay, so five fifteen. Six point one, six point two and six point three and seven point one. Can we do that in exception? Can someone?
Is it possible to mo- move a suggestion?
Sure, you can move what you like.
This is occurring. People are noticing, the public are wondering why they've got to sit up to eleven thirty to get the hold of the, and the media as well. So I think, you know, I'd like to move a motion if I can to say, as of moving into the future, that we stop. The business paper at ten thirty, we start at six thirty.
You can bring that to a council meeting, councillor Statham, bring that notice of motion.
And I also think the amount of things that, I mean, councils are laughing at. All that first page, first ten or twenty pages. Are all notices of motion, questions with notice. Other councils don't do this. Go on.
Councillor Statham might understand your views, but we, let's get back to the business of council and move some in exception, okay? Let's do that. So let's move, what, let's go through that and move, can I get someone to, unless there's. Any amendments on anything? The only amendment I'd like is on, um. The Community Development Committee, Joyce Smith was mi- um, missing. So can we add Joyce Smith onto the resolution?
And I was missing as well because I didn't, I was on and I cannot attend meetings on a Thursday as everybody else.
You're on. It's already there. We fixed that. That's fine. We need to add Joyce Smith. Um, but can, aside that one, can we move all those in exception? Can I have that moved, please?
Hmm, move it.
Steve Ring, councillor Ring, can I have a second for that? Councillor Evangelitis, if there's no opposition to that. Is there any opposition? No, that's carried. So can we go? That's all done? I've done, just go through, I've done a whole, all the, all, all exceptions. All exceptions, all by exception. Yeah, good. The general manager will come soon. Yeah. So two point six and, that's left two point six and.
Five point one four.
Five point one four. So there you go. So we've done all that by exception. So that's councillor Tassus, if you wish to go, you can do that. Yep, and by exception, by one recommendation. Well, what, yep, can you go, Trinity, please? Yeah, that's excluding, that's excluding. Sorry, we're just making sure we've got Trinity's, okay? That's important. I didn't move it. Councillor Ring moved it. And councillor Evangelitas seconded. Got it? Excellent. Means the whole lot's done. Yeah, and that's been deferred. So two point six, we're up to, so we've only got two to go now. So we've been by exception. So that's councillor Tassus, councillor, your motion, two point six.
Move the recommendation that council seek the establishment of, we requested up to ten new. Lithgow City Council linked Town and Village Community. Uh, Village Council Community Incorporated Association so that this council action. Um, will much better assist our local government area, towns and villages to take a more active and community role in the Lithgow City Council. On their local state and federal issues impacting their own towns and, uh, town and village communities. And I move that recommendation.
Yep, uh, seconder, I'll list councillor Fredericks. Yep, are you speaking?
Uh, I'm speaking, ma'am.
Councillor Tassus?
Uh, ma'am, uh, this is clearly just, I take in board what the, uh. What the, um, management comment is, which is only very short anyway from Mr Elwood. Um, it it should be noted, this is where we're requested, it's the community's choice, that we. It's not something where we were asking them to do anything they don't want to do. It'll be where they. Uh, are requested, uh, to participate. And I think if there was any indication. That there's a demand for this, that that was what we saw tonight at the council meeting in respect of people from, um. The villages and the outlying communities in regards to wind farm projects and other issues. We've got Tarranar with the road. They would have been in a better position to address the council had they had one of these committees set up. Rather than just having different people and different groups from out of there. We need to have a link to the villages and communities, whether they're large or small. And it's, um, it it becomes a a a way of us of finding out what they actually need, what they want. And I noticed in the, uh, business paper tonight, we were talking about, um, uh, there was, uh, having meetings elsewhere. Um, uh, council meetings or visits out there. This, this is something that we would, we would meet with these community organisations and so on. Uh, I I I'm interested in setting up new groups rather than the progress associations, this sort of thing, because they're fairly. Set in their ways. Uh, there's a lot of new residents that have come into the areas. It'd be nice to get everyone involved from old and new. And I'm only expecting them to meet quarterly. Um, the funding source, uh, is Mr Elwood's indicated. Uh, is to be determined. It's it's very, very minor in the scheme of things for what we can achieve. Uh, through all these different community groups, all going well, where we get them all done. And I I. Ask that the communities really have a look at what they're doing because this is where they're going to, um. Be able to get a a voice on this council through their community organisations.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks.
But it's just pretty much, it's, it's working smarter, not harder. If we can get these committees and these kind of groups to actually approach us or ask go and speak with them. We're getting what that little village or that community needs out of them a lot quicker and we're able to do our jobs a lot quicker. I I think it might be worth even just trialling.
Thank you. Um, Mr Gurney has a comment on this, if that's okay. He wanted to just, yeah, add some context.
Uh, through you, ma'am. Uh, since the management comment was added. Uh, a couple of concerns regarding legalities with, particularly with the methodology that's proposed. Have been raised, for example, um, how council would provide a thousand dollars to assist with sitting up, setting up the. Incorporated associations. If council was a facilitator, that that may be able to work. And also regarding the, uh. The insurances being provided initially and annually by the council. So. We would, if the recommendation was, um, endorsed by council. Then, uh, we would probably need to get some advice on a couple of points. And further advise, advise council on tho- those, uh, parts of the methodology or the procedure.
Councillor Tassus, are you open to changing some of that?
I think i- if, um, it's been, it's late, uh, I think, uh.
We need to work through it. Can we defer that and come back?
No, because I think we can get rid of it. I think you were indicating, was that the one that you were talking about putting a change in? Can you tell me what the change was?
Facilitate.
Ah, thank you. That's the word I'm looking for. Thank you.
So facilitate?
Facilitate, that was the word I'm looking for. Instead of seeking, uh, facilitate.
So if we can change that word?
Yeah, thank you.
Does that, does that solve a lot of problems?
There, there may still be legal issues with some of the methodology that's set out in the notice of motion. All I'm really saying is we just need to advise council. On that, um, we need to seek some advice just to how that would work in practice. Um, and find a way to to make it work.
Okay, so instead of the council seek the establishment, it's facilitate. Is that correct councillor Tassus? Okay, councillor Fredericks, you've spoken, I understand. Councillor Ring, then, oh, sorry, councillor Marnie first, then councillor Ring.
Uh, just, just a quick one for councillor Tassus to consider. Um, we've made a condition that. Including the objects of association, uh, links to Lithgow City Council have minimum membership of twelve. Or more, or members being current Lithgow City Council rate payers and or residents. The only issue that comes up for me is you get someone like A B C D. Inc, which is covering Clarence and Dargan, but socially they've associated with Bell. Who are Blue Mountains residents, but that's their, that's their committee structure. In in the Megalong, the southwestern portion of the portion of the Megalong in our council area. Uh, tie into the social connection of the Megalong associations. So if we could have some flexibility around that rule, um, that, that, that could be helpful.
I don't see that as a problem. I I think the, it'll be up to the, the association could change that themselves. In, in, you know, the.
Yeah, as I, I I'm just concerned as long as we don't create a rule that excludes.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, it can work. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Any further? Uh, councillor Ring.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, Caperty, Cullen Bullen, Hartley, Wellerwelling, Weller, Lidsdale. Glenn Davis, Glenn Ellis, Riddell, Tarraner. All are progress associations. I don't know what they're supposedly doing wrong. They represent the communities, they work for them for years. They're already out, they're already doing it. Council doesn't need to be involved in trying to create artificial groups. These sort of groups, if they're effective, have to be generated at grassroots levels. They can go for these existing organisations. There was only probably two, three weeks ago, the request of Glenn Davis, Glenn Ellis and the Caperty Progress Associations. That I organised a meeting with the mayor, the general manager and three of the senior staff. With their presidents to discuss a number of their concerns. That was an effective meeting. They were given a commitment for more meetings going forward. You wanna know what the rural people think of the outlying areas? Simple, go and have a cup of coffee. Go and meet them, go talk to them. Go down to the the cafe at Glenn Ellis, put it out on the Facebook page, that you're there. They'll come and talk. You're same at Tarraner. Go over on a Thursday night and talk to the people. That's where you're gonna get it. Not by an artificially created or stimulated group. Um, with the belief that they're all opposed to certain things that's in this paper. I'm sorry, but no, I can't support it. And it's more money being thrown out. For something, I'm sorry, ten thousand here, twenty thousand there, it all adds up. So no, I can't support it.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Evangelitas.
Yeah, I I mean, I personally think they should have absolutely nothing to do with council. I mean, they're, they, they, they could be challenging council. How can you challenge something and why are you accepting money from them? And there's also a lot of groups that aren't sort of locale specific. In other words, like the anti-incinerator group and that, and and their voice should be as important as anyone else's. So. I just, I just think we have a system and, I mean, people can contact me anytime. I'll, I'll go anywhere. And I just think it complicates it a little bit. Um, I don't think it's necessary. As as councillor Ring said, the the committees are there. They've been there for a while. If nuance form, fantastic, but I honestly don't believe that we should have anything to do with them. Um, because they, their goals may conflict with what we are doing.
Thank you. Um, any further debate? Councillor Statham?
Uh, yes, look, I commend councillor Ticehurst for, uh, bringing this forward. However. I've, uh, done some homework on this and I agree with what, um, councillor Ring has said. And I've just written this down, like, not after councillor Ring, um, said what he said. But this Glenn Davis Hampton, the A B C, Megalong, Tarranar, Hartley. I'm not sure of Lithgow, Portland, Capery, Glen Ellis, Wellerwang, Lidsdale, Riddell and, uh. Possibly even one starting at Meadow Flat. So I really think what I've noticed is that somebody from those, every one of those have contacted probably every councillor at times. I've con- they've all contacted me for many, many years. I'm not sure about Cullen Bullen. That's the only one that I think. Uh, aging population, you know, and aging. Uh, very much, you know, the people that has been running that now are in their mid eighties. I think that, uh, is something that we've got to take into consideration. However, most of the others have got quite young enthusiastic people on there. And I believe if we wrote to every individual company that's incorporated, of course, and said, once every three months, can you provide a, um. Can you provide a short, brief summary of your priorities, uh, and your bigger issues? And then bring that back to the meetings and put it in the agenda.
Thank.
So we can look at what they, you know, they're out in regional areas where they're not getting the downtown traffic and things like that. So. There might be things that they actually want that we can help them with, whether it's new seats or something. But I I do believe that it's, uh, going to be like another ten thousand for sure. And I, it's not that I don't respect what you've got in mind, uh, councillor Tassus, but I really think, look, I know for instance Glenn Davis, Glenn Ellis. Definitely, definitely at Hampton. They're flat out getting people to a progress meeting or an evening event or anything now. People have changed what they're doing. They just want simplicity. They don't want to have to get this to this meeting. Uh, they don't want to have to get to a progress meeting. They don't want to have to get to a, you know, whatever that meeting is. I think that we need to be able to service them, but through their associations.
Thank you councillor Statham. I concur. Is there any further debate? Otherwise, it's write a reply councillor Tassus.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. I think you're missing the whole point because reality is, none of those groups, none of them have anything to do with the council. No, they don't. No, they don't. They have no voice on the council. They're gonna have all these issues with wind farms and everything else. And no one's gonna listen to a progress association. They've got new people moving into the areas. Uh, these committees have been going, going, going. That's why no one joins them because the same old hardheads are in the same organisations. And not going anywhere. This is our opportunity to, if you wanna resist all these other things coming into town. We've got ten other groups that can do it. This is where we're requested. It's a voluntary thing. We're not asking them to do anything. But a new group in a new area, uh, that might be able to get up and do things. And we saw, I think I saw that tonight. A lot of these people have been out there all their lives, but they've come in, they've come in and and shown up what to do. But, you know, opportunity missed in regards to where you wanna bring this, uh, town. Tarranar would never have happened. They did, no, the progress didn't do anything out there. Uh, they they had to have a meeting out there sooner or later when all the roads were gone too bad. I mean, that's the reality. They can bring them in each quarter. Anyway.
I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that lost. We've only got one item, which is five point fifteen, which is, count.
Five one four.
Five point four, sorry.
One four.
One four, sorry, yep.
Emerging Economy Committee meeting. I'd like to to move it, amend. With an amendment, and that is to delete points three, four, five, six and seven.
Okay, and is there a seconder? Councillor Marnie?
Okay. Basically, um, point seven was not discussed. It was the third at the meeting. It's inappropriate for the staff to bring it back in this. This is supposed to be a report on the minutes. That's it. In future, I would expect that the minutes from this committee would come back in the same format as all other committee meetings. Um, this is an important committee, one point two million, one sixth of O S R V is in this project. And we need to review everything moving forward. Um, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Councillor Marnie? No further? Any debate on that? Now, I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. We're at business grade urgency. I know councillor Marnie, you had something? Oh, hang on councillor Marnie, uh, we've missed one, sorry. Uh, two point now and I missed your notice of motion, I apologise. Councillor Marnie, you've got a notice of motion that I missed, I apologise.
Um, okay, look, I I appreciate it's late, so you'll find me in my most succinct form. Um, setting up schedules, uh, and panels for local contractors is important to stimulate.
So who, sorry, can I just?
Oh, yes, my apologies.
A second up, that's all.
Second up.
Councill, oh, councillor Goodwin wanted a second it actually, if you're okay with that. Councillor Marnie?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll be brief, but but it is an important issue. Um. Creating panels for aggregated work, basically compounding work where you go over tender level. Using local contracts, needs to come in front of the council, needs to go through a request for tender. But it can be a multi-skilled workforce. So it can be individual. Earth movers, operators, it can be concreters, it can be plumbers, it can be electricians, it can be a whole lot of things. It can go across a whole lot of the service areas. Um, what I'm asking for in the recommendations, that a report be brought. Back to the infrastructure and in turn to council. So councils will have an opportunity to comment in more detail on this. Uh, but what this does, and I I don't wanna be talking about myself too much, but all of my. Tendering and contracting work I've done in the public sector has involved. Small businesses largely as the only provider, and that's gone on for nearly thirty years. Um, there is pathways under the Local Government Act and under all the procurement policy. It gives us an opportunity, and I think all of us as councillors hear from our residents. We want our local people doing some of the local work. And part of the problem was, we need to run workshops to assist those very competent. Contractors to actually be able to fill in tender forms. And so what typically will happen in a process like this, it'll be a Saturday morning workshop, we put on morning tea and. And lunch for all of the civil construction contractors. They come in. They get advice. If they need additional support, they'll get support. Because some people will just look at the document and go, there's no way I'm filling that in, even though they're quite capable. Um, I've just completed a, a free year request for tender for all the services in my area. We've taken up both the annual options. Um, it's a really effective way to get. Owner operators through to small businesses of less than probably fifteen employees engaged in doing business with council. I know the council webpage, and I'm not being rude or disrespectful, that's a passive way of engaging with them. You s- you say to your local contractor, have a look at the website and they look at it and they go, oh, jeez, it's right. Um, what we need to be is active and we need to be out there with our contractors. So I'll leave it at that, given tonight. So thank you.
Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up. Um, I was also, uh, in the throes of trying to, uh, put something together in relation to this. Spoken to plenty of, um, local businesses in relation to, um. Working out how to tender for jobs and and how to be involved in in the tendering process. So. Um, I'll definitely be supporting this, um. Yeah, agreed.
Any further debate?
Move the motion, be put, unless there is someone opposed to it.
Any person opposed to this?
Uh, I'd still like to speak to it.
Yes, absolutely. Councillor Statham?
I met somebody during the week that, uh, told me a story about. I met somebody during the week that uh told me a story about their major companies in Lithgow. And they're saying, I I haven't, I have seen it, I tried to bring it up on my phone then, that they have not been getting any work, nor have several other builders been getting any work. And the tender paneling, the tender situation is at a critical lever where a lot of things are going outside our local government area. They're concerned, they're not happy, there's second rate jobs getting done. I'm only telling what I've heard and it's on my phone, so I'm quite happy to pass that over tomorrow because I can't get it up just at the moment. Um and then apparently that person came into council and spent some time with one of the staff. I don't know what his name was. Uh and he was quite horrified when he actually looked into the process and found that the preferred list of tenderers, I don't think it's like that now, they've changed it, were all from out of town. And then the other group, you had to find your way through to find what is available for local people, which was very, very poor. Now, I'm only repeating what I've been told. Um I would not like to think that's the truth, but this, these people have been in business for a long time. And apparently some of them have lost their positions in workforce because they're not getting any concrete in, they're not getting any a a lot of work that can be done done by local people. So I was actually asked to bring this forward tonight. And I should have actually had that written out to give you a copy of it. But I think it'd be a good idea if you look into that. Uh and maybe that's been uh tidied up because I think that the gentleman was very uh very uh disturbed was the word that I was told.
Would, are you happy to work with Mr. Edgecam on that issue? Like, we'll just leave that?
Well, I think Mr. Edgecam should work with the person that gave me the uh information.
Yeah, you have a meeting tomorrow, don't you, councillor Statham? Could you bring it to that meeting? Yep, great, thank you. If there's no further debate on that? Yep, I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. I, there is business of great urgency. I know councillor Marnie had something from earlier.
Krefan, yes, thank you. Uh six consecutive neighbours who have got raw sewage in their yards or in their house. People may well, whilst they don't travel into Facebook mu- much, might remember a young woman in one of the houses whose entire possessions got got covered in raw sewage. She had to throw the whole lot out and go into a.
Councillor Marnie, just to save time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I declare that a a matter of great urgency because of the the issue.
The problem, uh Mayor, is that I don't think we have a clear position as a council. Uh I'm spending Friday evening out with people or talking to people and the weekend looking at raw sewage in people's properties. This is a a serious public health issue. I'm not convinced that the evidence tells me that this is not a former council asset. Um I understand the council is moving to prepare it, and I'll I'll wrap up very quickly. Uh because they're all, they're all literally, and excuse the language, in the ship tonight. And so we need to make sure we can make timely decisions. They're all preparing to get connections. Um some of them are ready to proceed with that, and I understand uh Mr. Trapp is working with his staff to get that ready. But for the young fellow Sheldon who spoke to that tonight, he's the bottom end of the system. And they wanna come to him with the bills to let everyone else's sewer out the door.
I need to do procedural stuff, so I've declared it a a matter of great urgency, but I need to put it to the council as well. So I put, I'll move that.
Sorry.
Councillor Marnie will second it, if that's okay. I'll put it to you. If you consider it all great urgency, you'll agree. Yeah, that's big pass. Have you got a recommendation that you wish to put through?
I would like council to consider its position as an interim arrangement where I don't think these are common, the common law means. So can we allow a transition period where we support these residents in good faith and with our clear evidence that it's not our asset until they can establish the connections?
So you're moving that to? I need a second.
I'll I'll second it. Um can we simplify it just to the, the council continues its past practice of maintaining common lines until a formal position is developed by the infrastructure committee?
Is that better? That's better?
Yeah.
That's better. You're happy with that? Thank you.
Don't ask me to repeat it.
You'll need to repeat it because the minute taker will need it.
Oh, God, Trinity, I'm devastated.
Well, the the meeting only went for about four and a half hours. If you start and listen carefully till you get to the end, you'll pick it up.
Alright, so we'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Good night. Thank you. Trade, travel safely.